All right, thank you ladies and gentlemen for joining us. Today is, I don't even have my, sorry, it's the July 9th regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Somebody's, is that me? Hang on. Is it you? All right, today is the July 9th, 2024 regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dun.
Present.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Canston.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Hassan Saab.
Present.
And Winston.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Uh, next up, we have the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna be done by our honorable treasurer, Mrs. Hicks.
The pledge of allegiance of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Treasurer, thank you. Before we move forward with this meeting, a couple of just housekeeping rules, just remember, everybody, we're gonna stay respectful. You know, we wanna make sure that there's nothing from the audience, no laughing, no chatter, no hand movements, no charades, none of that happening from the audience. I also wanna keep in mind that, remember guys, everybody that's up here, anybody that's in this attendance in this meeting here, is here because we all have the same feeling, we want what's best for the community, what's best for our city. So what you may believe you perceive one way, another person may perceive a different way, but I think the ultimate goal is everybody wants to see what's the best for the city of Dearborn Heights. With that said, I promise councilman once though, the floor for about three minutes and 34 seconds, so the clock has started, councilman.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair.
Yep.
This Saturday, July 13th, we're holding our first annual Family Fun Field Day at Swatka Park on the south end of Dearborn Heights. This is the family fund, this is our official logo, and what we're having there is we're having the Jason McCowsky Memorial Softball Game between our Dearborn Heights firefighters and our Dearborn Heights Police Department. That'll be at the end of our day at 8:00 PM on Saturday, July 13th. Uh, to start the day, we're having at 8:00 PM, at 8:00 AM, we're having a farmer's market, and at 10:00 AM, we're having our Young Entrepreneurs Fair, where um, young people from around the city who set up tables and they can sell their ware, demonstrate different projects they're working on. At noon, we have the fire department coming in doing the firefighters hose down, where they hose down all the kids. And we have a golf clinic, which is sponsored by Revive Golf, Warren Valley Golf Course. Um, we have a movie night, we have softball game fundraisers, we have raffles, we have make your own sundaes, bounce houses, snow cones, water slides, DJ, face painting, dunk tank, rock painting, rain garden, cotton candy, and much more. And the best thing, everything is free. Especially our, at 12:00 noon to 4:00, 4:00 PM, is our picnic barbecue, where we're having hot dogs, hamburgers, and chicken, barbecued with side dishes, everything is free. Um, all we're asking for is a non-perishable food donation, and we're still looking for some sponsors, raffle items, uh, baked goods, and some volunteers. So you can go, you can go on my Facebook page, there's all the information there, or give me a call, everybody's got my number. Thank you, Council Chair.
Hey, thank you very much, give me one second.
Thank you, everybody, hope to see everyone there, young and old alike.
We'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is Cooper here? I didn't know if it was in the back, I didn't wanna, listen, Mr. Cooper, can you take a look at this? Cooper, you've been summoned. Uh, next up, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we are going to be having a small presentation from our fire department. Uh, it's gonna be about the health and safety and the conditions of our fire department. Um, I ask that we stay respectful, council members, I ask that we hold our questions to the very end. If you have a question, I ask that you write down your question, uh, and then at the end, you can go ahead and ask the gentleman from the fire department, who's gonna go through. I've went through this meeting already, uh, and it's gonna be really eye-opening. Uh, I ask that you guys please tune in. Mitch, do you need to have access to the screen or anything? Okay, so do you need, do you have a laptop or anything? Perfect. Mariana, can you give them the access? Okay, go ahead, Mitch. Uh, you know, worst case scenario, we have our IT director here, so.
What's that? Um.
Just put it in here, right, Ange?
Okay.
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 That should turn white, once it turns white, you can hit it, and then.
Okay.
Sometimes it takes a bit longer.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Almost.
Could you actually minimize that?
Yeah.
If you want to, H2, um, try the little arrow up there.
Okay.
I'm gonna unplug it, plug it back in.
There we go. Right, okay. Click that?
Yeah, try to click that.
Click share, body end.
So let's exit.
Probably gonna be towards. Okay.
I don't know why it's not doing it, try to fold her.
Uh, that's not something. Okay, ready, sure.
All right, now we're good.
Okay, I think we're there.
All right.
Okay.
Mitch, if you want, you can just, you know, kind of speak about who you are first and what you're bringing before this body, and obviously to the viewers at home that are watching, the floor is yours. Again, council members, if you have any questions, stand up for the end, let him finish the presentation, write down your questions, because he might answer your question, and you don't have to ask that anymore. Uh, so go ahead, Mitch, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you for inviting me and thank you for your time. Um, my name is Mike Metz, um, I'm a firefighter with the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, local 1355. Um, I am part of the Health and Safety Committee, uh, which consists of myself, Captain Mike Beer, and firefighter Trent Walter. Um, the purpose of our committee is to listen to our union members and the employees of the fire department for any concerns that they have for their health and safety as an employee. If you're unaware of our fire department's schedule, we work 24-hour shifts, um, so essentially, we, we live at these city-owned buildings. We eat there, we sleep there, we shower there, we work there, and respond to calls from there. So we've had a number of concerns that have brought, been brought up to us over the years, and what we have been doing is keeping track of any of the repair requests. And our concern isn't the repairs in general, it's the repairs, um, that have an effect on our firefighters' health and safety. So we've been doing this since about 2019, and tracking for both our headquarters station and south end station, um, what the major repairs are. So the big ones of note are the water leaks, especially in our headquarters station. Uh, forty-five, uh, forty-four percent of what we've recorded in the past five years have been water leaks. Um, another, let's see, uh, forty-eight, three requests have been for HVAC repairs, which is gonna be our heating and cooling systems. With the water leaks, six of the 45 repair requests have included the discovery of mold in direct relation to those leaks. Um, and I have some, some pictures and other kind of statements that will be in regards to that. Um, 25 of the 43 HVAC repair requests are for having no heat in our living quarters during the winter months. DHFD had to purchase space heaters, um, in the living quarters. For example, this past winter, um, our heat went down for about two and a half weeks. We had to purchase our own space heaters, and with the space heaters on full blast, um, it was only about 53 degrees in our bunk room, which is the spaces that we sleep in. Station one is a south end station at 4500 at Telegraph. From 2019, the major repair requests have been dealing with, uh, the HVAC systems, and then with the plumbing. HVAC, our issues have been with either it not operating properly, or the cleanliness of the HVAC system. The plumbing concerns have been plumbing backups in the kitchen, bathroom, and apparatus bay areas, um, which we have some other pictures of that coming up. Again, we, this is, this is our second home for all of the firefighters, we're working 24-hour shifts there. Um, we sleep in these buildings, uh, we eat, and, um, we, as a organization, um, we, we wanna have that a healthy place to, to stay and work. The ceiling leaks, as I said before, six out of the 45 leak repair requests includes, included the discovery of mold in direct relation to the leaks. Water, the water leaks lead to mold. If water damage is not cleaned up in about 24 to 48 hours, mold has the potential to grow. Uh, we have multiple occasions where we have had leaks, and it has been months or years until they are fixed. The effects of having the mold in the HVAC systems, in the ceilings, in the places that we sleep and live, um, are generally around like allergic reactions are very common. Uh, skin rash, difficulty breathing, irritation in the eyes, skin, nose, throat. Um, and this can happen to people who are allergic to mold and people who are not allergic to mold. Um, we've had multiple concerns and reports from our union members who live in these city-owned buildings of very similar symptoms, um, from just either being off of work and coming back and sleeping at the station and having these symptoms. Right now, we are down six full-time firefighters, so this is an increased need for, um, overtime. So we are spending more time in stations than we normally would to fill out these, um, these overtime spots, so we can appropriately respond to the residents.
Which means more exposure to the mold and everything, and the bed condition.
Absolutely. Um, for mold remediation, um, I have a chart here that is, uh, it's from the EPA. The biggest thing that I wanna highlight in this is there's two things that everything in this chart leads to, and it's to check for return of moisture and mold, and to fix the water or moisture problems. Um, a lot of times when we do report these, um, we have kind of Band-Aids fixed. Either ceiling tiles are replaced that are showing water damage. Uh, we have had, um, some spot fixes on the roof in the headquarters station, um, which then shortly after, we have more leaks. And we have more and more leaks that we are reporting pretty much on a weekly, monthly basis. So the big thing that I wanna make sure that happens, um, is that not only are we checking for the return, uh, or fixing the problem, but we're checking for, um, that the problem is fixed and is not gonna come back. After this slide, um, I have a bunch of examples I'd like to show you, oh, everybody. But I wanna go over some resolutions that we would like to see within the department. It's gonna be impossible in a commercial-sized building to stop all of the mold instances, the leak instances, it's a very big operation. But there are a lot of steps that we can do to protect the health and safety of our firefighters and the people who live in these, live and work in these buildings. There have been multiple instances in recent years in other cities such as Dearborn, Southfield, and Pittsfield, where they have had to close down fire stations because of mold issues that were not taken care of. Dearborn has even had an incident where they had to close the station down and their firefighters were sleeping in their trucks, uh, so I do, while they were on duty. So I do not wanna see that happen with, um, our fire department and our city. We want to see permanent leak fixes, especially to the, uh, north end headquarters station, which is a major issue. Um, there, there has to be a solution other than spot fixes after these problems arise. We are able to report the problems that we see, but there's a lot of stuff in the ceiling tiles that we will catch way too late, that's well past the 24, 48-hour mark. We have less leaks in the south end station, but they're still there, and we like to keep, keep an eye on them. For station deep cleans, this usually happens about once a year. Um, it needs to be at tw- at least twice or quarterly, where we're getting the, uh, the carpet steam cleaned, uh, the tiles cleaned, because we have, we bring a lot of contaminants into the building based on all of the medical and fire runs. There's a lot of carcinogens that we bring in from going on these runs, so we wanna make sure that these buildings are clean and safe to live in. Another thing is having air quality tests at least once a year. From what I was just told, um, from having this meeting, uh, we did recently just have an air quality test done on the two stations, and I was just told earlier this, this evening that, um, no mold was found in the south end station. However, in the north end station, there were traces of mold found, um, and those were in our sleeping quarters. So the amount of time that we spend, um, uh, sleeping, like the majority, when we're not on runs, are gonna be in these living quarters, where we're sleeping, so that's exactly where the mold was found, and this is, it's a, it's a huge concern to hear this. The last thing is the HVAC repairs and cleaning. This past winter, we went over two weeks without heat, and it was like, it was in the zeros, if not negative, temperatures outside. We had guys sleeping with like three coats on, a bunch of blankets, and it was still, it was 53 degrees in our bunk room. Um, this is also the same bunk room that had the mold in it, um, but we had, uh, three heaters going on, um, at full blast, and it was still 50 degrees in there. Um, this was all last winter, and that was over a period of about two and a half weeks. And I have some other pictures in here that I would like to share with you, um, about the cleaning of the HVAC system. From everyone that I have talked to, um, nobody seems to have any recollection of the HVAC systems being cleaned. And this should be at least a once-a-year procedure that's done, and I'll show you some of the vents and things like that, which will kind of make more sense. So this is our headquarters station. Um, this hap, this was an incident that happened on May 1st of 23. It was actually accidentally found, somebody noticed some of the wallpaper peeling away, and when they removed some of it, we started removing more and more and more, this entire hallway was filled with black mold. So that was reported on the 1st, um, of May of 2023. So on the left here is, um, kind of where we found it, and some close-ups on, on the right of the black mold. So on the left here is a picture of how that hallway stood for, it was, it seemed to be about a month or two months from the recollection of the individuals who were there, um, of how the hallway was, um, quarantined off. If you look in the back, there's a tarp to make sure nobody goes through there, um, but it's coming down, and we only had a caution tape, tape on the one side, which does not really contain black mold that well. In the far back, you'll notice a lot of missing ceiling tiles. Uh, the ceiling tiles were gone in previous incidents because of roof, of roof leaks that created water stains and mold that we just ended up throwing the ceiling tiles away, so we didn't have to look at the mold. On the right side here is another close-up of a corner in the hallway. I also wanna say that, um, this hallway is directly next to the bunk room that our firefighters sleep in, um, which today was also found to have mold in it. When it was remediated about two months later, uh, the picture on the left is kind of what it looks, it should look like to be properly sealed off. However, on the right side, um, you have it tarped off, um, but there's still a lot of missing ceiling tiles. So when you cut the mold out of that drywall, you're putting all that mold into the air. All of the ceiling tiles were still, are still there, um, from when this incident happened. So none of those tiles that got exposed were thrown away, um, and we still have an open cavity that leads into the sleeping quarters, which again, has mold in it as of today. Um, and to give everyone an idea, um, when you put a, um, a mark on a piece of paper with a pen, that would represent tens of thousands of mold spores, so that's kind of the idea if you look at some of these other pictures of how much mold is actually there. And we have actually never, since this incident a year ago, um, we never had an air quality test done after the remediation until, um, this started being brought up as, uh, a couple of weeks ago. In the headquarters station, this picture on the left is the vent in the bathroom. The vent cover was not taken off, that's actually was, it's just not there anymore. Um, and if you can kind of tell, that is all just years of dirt and grime, and, um, that is an indication of what a lot of the other vents look like, um, not only just in the bathroom, but the other HVAC vents in the building, uh, that we live in. On the right side, you'll see this is one of our bunks that, uh, we sleep in, we spend a lot of our time in, and, and, uh, the missing ceiling tiles are gone because of water leaks, and then, uh, the wa- uh, the water leaks, um, again, kept coming, and then they started dripping onto the bed, um, so the firefighter who's sleeping there, we had to relocate him to another spot, um, because of the water that was coming onto his bed. Uh, this is also the same bunk room that they found mold in today. Um, this is the apparatus, the ceiling of the apparatus bay in our headquarters station. And what you're looking at in the upper left and lower left is, uh, two of our battalion chiefs were, were talking in the bay, and about a foot-long chunk of the metal came off of the roof and fell and almost hit, uh, hit them while they were talking. Um, and the right is a zoomed-out picture of that entire area, which is starting to kind of rust and rot out. This first picture on the left is the hallway that also connects into our bunk room. Um, you notice on the floor, there's a very large puddle, um, and I have, we also have videos of this. There is water, uh, pouring down on that, um, which was actually also an issue with the HVAC system, uh, in the middle of the winter. Uh, so we've had that issue. Um, on the other, we didn't, I have a video of that, but I don't have a picture of it. Um, and, uh, Council Chair Badun was there the one day when it was raining. The, in the apparatus bay, the left side of this wall, um, it was, it's basically a waterfall. Uh, and we have had multiple si- times since then when it's getting worse. And that wall is also shared with our lieutenants' living quarters, so, um, it's, it's getting pretty bad. The middle picture and the picture on the right are our main locker room and bathrooms. You can see the water stains, um, of the ceiling in the middle, and then on the right, again, that was that first vent picture that I showed you. And again, I wanna reiterate, like, the vent cover has just been missing, um, and there's huge water leaks all around there. It's very, it's a little hard to see in these pictures, but if you look on the wall, there's kind of a sheen on both, both sides of that wall. And there'll be a close-up here, and we're not really sure what that is. It's kind of an unidentified mineral growth that has been going on in that wall. It's right next, it's in the bathroom stall and on the urinal. Um, that has been going on, uh, for quite some time, it's been painted over, but not removed. The middle picture is a picture of our workout room, um, those are water streaks coming down. Uh, and again, any picture where you see missing tiles, it's because, um, we just went a la- took a ladder and removed them, so they wouldn't start molding up. And the picture on the right is our thermostat in the middle of the winter, that was 54 degrees in our living quarters. This picture on the left, uh, was sent to me by our, uh, fire chief Brogan, uh, this is in his office, and this section right here is just an extremely, that's just a mold growth, um, along with the water stain. That tile has since been removed, um, but not replaced, and as far as I know, leak has not been fixed there. And it's the same story moving down all these pictures, it's water stains, um, water stains and mold, where the tiles get either replaced, and then, and we have spot fixes on the roof. This is our station one, um, this is in the bathroom, so we have very large mold stains, water stains. The picture on the left has since been removed and replaced, and some of the ones on the right side have been removed and replaced. Uh, however, there has not been fixed to the problem. Um, so when I showed you that chart earlier, that yes, you need to fix it, but you, or yes, you need to, to fix and mediate the mold, but it's not gonna go away if we don't fix the problem, uh, which is the roof. We do have, um, uh, we have secured money coming in for new station, which some people have been talking about. Um, however, um, that's still gonna be a very long time, um, until we would move into a new station if that happens. So we can't, we can't wait until a new building. Uh, so these cost money, I know that, but it needs to be fixed. And, uh, just a few more, our last few examples. Uh, on the left is one of the vents in the south end station on Annapolis, um, that is covered in grime. Yes, you can clean the outside, but that's coming from somewhere, and it's from the HVAC system. The middle picture, if you look at the ceiling tiles, you can see kind of like, uh, black all around the, all three tiles there, and then black all over the, uh, the vent cover itself. Every single one of the vents in the station looks like that or worse, because we have never had the HVAC system cleaned out. And then I mentioned earlier too, we've had problems with, uh, the drainage in the south end station. So this is just one of the floor drains that are just kind of filled to the top even after cleaning it out. But, uh, I really appreciate, uh, the invitation and then everyone's time for coming to hear, uh, what we've got. So, does anybody have any questions about any of this?
Mitch, I, I have a couple of questions for you.
Absolutely.
Uh, my first question to you is, thank you so much for coming out here, I know this wasn't easy. Uh, I've been through this, I've actually toured the station, uh, I did the headquarters, I did not do the south end station yet, but my question to you is, you know, I know this isn't something that's happened one year ago, two years ago, or even five years ago. How often are you guys reporting this?
We are reporting it, it, it gets to a point where you report the same thing over and over. It's, it's hard to get individuals to re, keep reporting the same thing over and over, um, but.
Who are you reporting it to?
So what we do is, we have a, uh, a Google Act system, and it's just a form, and you fill out the form of the station, the incident, and time. Um, that's all recorded, and then that gets sent out to, um, uh, as a maintenance request from there. And again, a lot, a lot of times, those maintenance requests are fixed and fulfilled, but none of the overarching problems are fixed. Uh, we, the, we will have spot fixes on the roof, um, but there's still, as you saw when you were there, we've got a waterfall coming down of the roof, and I, I mean, forty percent of our ceiling tiles are either go, are gone or are water stained.
So would you say right now, I think the most important thing that you guys need, uh, would be a reaspr- a sealer over the roof? And then you would probably need, um, you know, a fully cleaned-out HVAC.
Yes.
And then, you know, remedies of the air quality, I'm assuming it has to do with mold.
Yes, um, so the roof needs to be resealed in the headquarters station. I wanna go back to these four points. Where are we at? Too far. There you go. Yeah. So permanent leak fixes is gonna be that roof, it needs to be fully resealed. Um, and again, I know there is a potential of a new station, but we can't live like that. It takes 24 to 48 hours, uh, for mold to start to grow. And, uh, a permanent roof fix, um, we need HVAC, we have to have HVAC cleaning. Um, everybody I have talked to of our union members, none of them remember a time where the HVAC system was, was, was cleaned out. And the more it's, it, it's pretty gross, um, just to kind of put it, put it frank, um, in both stations. There are leak wa- roof leak-wise, there are a lot more in the north end station than there are in the south end. But the HVAC concerns are at both stations. And again, we've had, we just had an air quality test done, um, in these past couple of weeks, but that's the, that's the first time. And we didn't even have one when we had that, that very large, uh, black mold growth in the hallway. There was no air quality test done after the remediation, um, until now, which is over a year later.
Well, so you can say, uh, the, the roof's. So you can say the roof sealing at the north station? And the complete HVAC cleaner at both stations?
Yes.
Anything else that you'd say sits at the top? And then obviously a deep cleaning, you'd like to see being done quarterly, maybe something as soon as the ceiling is sealed and the HVAC is cleaned out, maybe some deep cleaning?
Yeah, those, those are our main concerns. And, and again, we, this is our, a home to us. We work 24 hour shifts. A lot of, a lot of our union members are working even up to 72, 72 hours in a row because we are short. And we need, our, our firefighters are willing to be here for the residents, but we also want to be safe while we're staying in the station.
Any other questions to Councilman Saab?
So the HVAC system was down, is it back up and running?
It is. It took about two and a half weeks for that to get back up in the middle of winter.
Both firehouses, they're both working AC and heat?
As far as I know, yeah.
Mold, do you know who mitigated the mold? Because whoever did that, that was not professional, I'll be honest with you. Do you know the company name that did the mold?
I do not.
No? The problem is, is that with, going back to Councilman Badun, Chair, Council Chair Badun's comments to seal the roof, you can't seal that roof if it's wet because there's insulation under it and that insulation molds itself. It's encapsulated between the metal ceiling it has, so it's a problem of its own. And as for the plumbing, has the plumbing issue been fixed about the drains?
The drains are a on and off issue that we, we pretty much deal with monthly.
The sinking of the building, right?
What's that?
Is it at the north end because of the sinking of the building or?
We have a bigger problem with the drains backing up in the south end, actually.
South?
You think like, have you guys had them snaked out?
We have. So a lot of times, I was working yesterday and the kitchen drains were, were draining normally. But prior to that, about a month ago, they would back up and we have to run the garbage spills every single time we use the sink. But, and again, we, we try to have our members write these things up as they come. And there's a lot of things that we, by the time we write it up, it's been a problem for a bit, by the time it kind of shows itself. Because a lot of stuff is in the walls and by the time we see it in the, the water leaks in the ceiling and stuff like that. So we're doing our best.
Next question is, I'm sorry, last question actually. Any update on the new fire station or anything about it?
That's kind of above, above my pay grade, so.
Anything on the fire station, the new one?
Still talking to the council chair, council chair?
Yep, go ahead, Mayor.
As you can see, there was an email that was sent to, you guys were included. Going to have a meeting trying to discuss that location that we're trying to get from the county. So that meeting is going to be scheduled the next week or two.
Yep.
To go over that potential location. That's the key, is the location first.
So how long is the location going to take?
Well, there's a, there's a, the commissioner, Kenesek, sent out an email to try to find, figure out a location. He's collaborating with myself, the mayor, and I believe the deputy county executive and then just the DPS director as well.
Chief Brogan also.
And Chief Brogan.
Council chair?
Any other questions?
Council chair? I would respectfully let Councilman Saab know that there is a 175 page report on that station that he may want to look at. It was prepared in February 2022. I reviewed it, a few other attorneys reviewed it for other issues, litigation issues. But you should be able to look at it and see the full analysis of the station and the sinking and why it's sinking. Going back to 2003, going back to 1998, 1999, when it was first built.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
Thank you. The, some of the areas have been abated already, obviously, pictures of what you said. Have all the areas been abated?
No.
Okay, now, right now it's rainy. It's supposed to rain pretty heavy. Is the roof going to leak today?
Absolutely.
And what, what do you think we should do about, I mean, if water's going to come down again and we're going to, if it's not dried up quickly or something, we'll have another mold issue. I mean, what's your suggestion we do as a short term?
So as, as a firefighter of Dearborn Heights, and I know everybody that I work with will do the same thing. We show up to work and we respond to our calls and we move stuff out of the way. If water's pouring down, we move out of the way. We'll change the bed, we'll try to put buckets out. But our main concern is really responding to the calls. And then we've just been trying to deal the best we can because, I mean, quite frankly, we're not here to like rebuild the station. We're just trying to like do our best with, with what we can so we can best protect the residents of the city.
So obviously you got fixed the leaky roof. Is it all just a roof or is it plumbing leaks or is it just a leaky roof?
So we have the leaky roof. We've had the one picture that I showed you with the, the water coming down the hallway. That was a, I think that was an HVAC issue where there was a water line that broke in regards to the HVAC. So it's handful of issues.
Is that taken care of?
That one is, yeah, that was this past winter.
Well, that, is that, Mayor, does that fall under building and maintenance, these issues or, I mean, is that who you send your request to, building and maintenance, or you send it to the mayor's office?
We, I, so our form will just be a maintenance request and it'll go to building and maintenance. And again, we, we do our best to report things as much as we can and as we find them.
Has building and maintenance requested funding to repair these roofs?
Council chair?
Yep, Mayor.
Okay, right now I haven't seen anything requested for the roof other than what we're going to do for the station. So can I give you an update, council chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So yesterday we said, there was another company that came in and they actually did another quality test. And as the firefighter mentioned, they did find mold in the birthing area, which is, and so we got to get the report. So they got to go tomorrow at eight o'clock. But one of the things that we need, the council permission to, if they do, to start remediation as soon as possible. So that's something I can't go up to the next agenda. So I need you guys' approval, you know, do an emergency remediation, starting tomorrow eight o'clock, tomorrow eight AM. The company, it's a local company is going to go in there. They're the ones that found the mold. They did the quality test and they do, they do do remediation.
Nothing from the audience, please.
In several cities. So that's the first thing, tomorrow eight AM, somebody will be on site at the station on Beach Daily.
What's the name of the company?
ServiceMaster.
Where they located?
On Warren. So they, they've done that work before. That's, that's their job.
Is it in the city of Dearborn Heights?
Yes, just right on Warren, east of Beach Daily. Yeah, yes.
ServiceMasters.
ServiceMasters. Also, they do also do duct cleaning. So they're going to reassess the whole thing to see what, what they can do to improve the quality and also do remediation for the, for the mold. And the roofing, we can, we have to go out and try to find a roofing company to come in and see what they need to do for the, for the roof. And again, you know, we might need, you know, I can contact the chair, the council chair to let you know, if we do, obviously we're going to need funding. And you can go out for emergency repairs, you know, we can either do the emergency repairs or we have to go wait, you know, the two weeks to go through and ask for permission to go out for beds and all that stuff. So it's up to the council body. But as of right now, the top priority is mold. You know, we got, we got to remediate that as soon as possible. And that's going to, they're going to start doing that first thing tomorrow morning.
Council chair?
Excuse me.
Sorry. Council chair?
Hang on one second, Council, let him finish.
I know, I thought you-
For the south station, we met about a month and a half ago. We did a complete tour of the south station and the chief was there, obviously. He gave us a tour and our state rep was with us. So that's for the next funding. So we got the 10 million for the, the north station. For this, I was asked to see what funding we need, you know, this year to go on the agenda for the state. So we did ask also for the south station to get some funding as well. And so we put a big shopping list for the south station. And as of right now, it's, it's on their agenda, you know, to go through the process. But we asked for complete makeover of the south station, including to give them a new birthing area and possibly add a second floor, but the birthing area will be on second floor. So that way, instead of replacing the roof, you know, you add another level to the station on the south side of town. And then you have obviously a new roof and a new area upstairs. So there's a lot of things that we put on the shopping list for the state, you know, for state funding. You know, I know some of the issues, you know, they had female firefighters, you know, the bathrooms, you know, so we put that also on, on the list for funding. So I can share, you know, we can try to get that list and I can share, I'm sure Chief Brogan can give you an update on what was requested. But we put at least $2 to $3 million in repairs for the south station. So for, for right now, once we're done with the north station, we can shift to the south station for the, there's mold, you know, they can also do the same thing. But again, you know, we need the council approval. You know, obviously you can't vote right now at this second, but if you guys can put something, you know, or give me authorization to do emergency repairs, get somebody going there and start doing the work as soon as tomorrow morning.
Mayor, thank you so much for that. I mean, obviously I can't make that decision saying, yes, you have that. Obviously there's, there's several other council members here that have to also vote on that. Maybe we can figure that out or we can give you a number. I can't just tell you spend, you know, freely as you wish. And there has to be a number that we can say, okay, hey, you know, you can spend X amount of dollars and when that's done, you'd have to come before the council. I, I, I can't just tell you, here's a blank check and do what you want.
Council chair?
Yeah.
No, my recommendation is let me find out the cost first.
Okay.
I will send an email to you or get ahold of you tomorrow, first thing, you and the council, the pro temp. Then you guys, obviously it's just trying to avoid the open meeting violation. Then you guys can call, talk to among each other if we have to call for a special session. But I'll let you know, we'll go through different phases to see what the cost and I'll let you guys know.
I'm going to hear from Councilman Wenzel. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Is Director Blackburn on Zoom?
Director, direct-
Director Conrad.
Not a director.
Oh, I, okay, well, I'm on, okay. I mean, a question, I got a couple of questions and then a statement, please. Has there been any requests given to the building maintenance department to maintain this roof or repair the roof?
Bob Conrad, Director DPW. Yes. I will say that the fire department is one of the best at requesting service. They have a form that they fill out. They send it to me, Mike and Chris. You know, we do our best to address every issue that they send us. You know, when it comes to things like the roof, we can only patch it. I mean, that's the limit of our capabilities is to go up and patch it. We have on occasion had to, you know, get a contractor to, out there to do some more extensive seam sealing. But, I mean, we do the best that we can with what we have to work with and the roof that's there. I mean, like they say, I mean, it, you know, probably the building's 20 some years old.
Building 99.
So, I mean, it, it probably needs a new roof. I mean, that is the life expectancy of a roof. It's just, you know, is that where you, we want to spend our money? I, I guess I haven't been given that direction to find a new roof yet.
Well, who would give you that direction to put a new roof on?
Think the fire department would have to put that into their budget.
Okay. Obviously this has been going on for probably years, I'm assuming. And the requests have been made, you know, leaky roof, leaky roof. We're jeopardizing the health of several of our firefighters, if not all of them. This issue, when it, when it came up and you're talking black mold, this should have been taken care of two years ago. And this is not an issue where it's an emergency repair. It just wasn't found out today. But at today's meeting, it's brought up, so now we're going to have an emergency repair. No time to get out and take bids. We got to get this done. But this issue has been going on for years. I didn't, I don't know who to, who to blame or I don't want to blame anyone. We got to take care of this immediately. Go out, get bids for a new roof, because it's going to be, like the mayor said, it's going to be a long time before we do anything with the south station. And in the north station, they're going to be in there for another year at least. What, what do you, what kind of price you put on a person's life and their health? I mean, I, I say we, we vote on something tonight, let's get these roofs repaired, replaced, both roofs immediately. Yeah, have them go out for bids, let's get these things taken care of right now because these pictures are devastating. It's ridiculous that these guys and girls have to work in these conditions. I mean, if that was your home or your home, you wouldn't live in there, Mayor, you wouldn't live in conditions like this. And I don't know if you knew about it, I don't know if you knew about it. If I known about this, and maybe it's my fault for not going in and looking at these things all the time, and I'll take the blame for this. But these things have got to be taken care of immediately. Start getting, taking bids tomorrow for this. We need, we need to take care of this right away. I mean, this is ridiculous to have put these, these guys and girls in jeopardy.
Councilman? Remember our conversation? When I said, you know, you asked me about the fire station and I said, I have something for you on Tuesday and you're going to be angry? I, I warned you. But I want you to know that I went and I got a contact from the, from, I actually received a letter in my mailbox saying, we want you to come down to the station, we want to have a meeting with you, we want to give you a presentation. I got the presentation from the Health and Safety Committee. And immediately I said, this has to be known to the rest of the council members, like I can't make this final decision. And so I want you to know, right now we can go around and saying, you know, I blame myself for not checking on this. I mean, you don't just one day wake up and say, I want to know if there's mold inside this building. Like that just doesn't really cross your mind, right? I think ultimately here, you're right. And I know Mayor wants to kind of jump on this and tackle on the issue. I think the right thing to do here is to say, hang on, they've been dealing with this issue. I think another two, three weeks is not going to kill anybody, you know, immediately. I think what we could do is, we can go out, we can, we can get some bids and we can do this the right way. You know, if we're just going to come out there and spray out some mold and, and, you know, put out some bleach and say, hey, we killed out the mold, I don't think that's the answer. I think the right answer is you need to fix the issue. Like you said, we can fix the mold issue, but the next time it rains, you're going to have mold again. So I agree with the Councilman on that. I think, you know, we can even make a vote tonight. I mean, to basically say to the administration, I know Chief of Staff sent us something like, we had some extra money from last year's budget. Whatever that extra money is, let's, let's, you know, let's figure out this roof situation.
Council chair? You know, this is something, you can't wait another day. I mean, I appreciate your enthusiasm on this. This is something where we've got to really look into this. We've got to maybe look into some trailers that they could live in outside, right outside the fire station or something, you know, I mean, this is, no one would live in, none of any of you, any of you would live in these conditions. And these guys and girls out there doing it to, to, to serve our residents. And that's the main thing they're doing. They're, they come to work because they're, they swore to serve the residents of Dearborn Heights. And for the, for us not to drop everything right now and take care of this problem is a shame. And I want to do something, I want to do something tonight. Let's start, you know, let's get bids on the roof repaired, not, not just a Band-Aid. If it's a whole roof, it's a whole roof, you know? I know a lot of fire stations from different cities. I've talked to them. They put shingle roof, they don't put flat roofs on them anymore where pitches, the water doesn't sit on them. And that's, we should look, in our new fire station, we should look into that. But, you know, let's look in, if, if, if they think it's a good thing, separate housing outside in, in a trailer or, you know, motor home or something for these guys and girls to, to sleep in and cook in or something, but I wouldn't go one more day, I mean, living in there. I, I'd sub tents outside, call the news, say, hey, look, this is what we're doing. We're sleeping in tents outside in the parking lot. Because we'll show you our conditions, what we're living in. It's a shame these, these guys and girls risk their lives every day and this is how we treat them. You know, I'm ashamed of myself for not taking, looking into this earlier. And we got to do something tonight.
Nice, what would you like to do, Councilman? We have my full support.
Well, I mean, first of all, to start taking bids, bids on this roof tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, let's give it, let's give it-
Mayor, are we okay with that? There you go, the mayor agrees.
Let's, let's, I mean, let's not just talk about it, let's do it. I mean, this-
I just, hang on one second, Councilman, let the Councilman Wenzel finish. I like his energy right now.
I'm good for now.
Well, I like the energy, keep it fit, just finish off strong.
I did finish strong. I mean, we just do something right now.
I'm ready.
Council chair?
Well, Councilman Saab is first, then Councilman Amman.
Council chair, just want to make, just for the roof issues, we, I, I'd really like to go out to a actual roofing company, not a contractor that has a subcontractor to an actual professional commercial roofing company. So that would be one, that would be the most important thing, how to bid this out. We're not, we're not going to patch it or put an overlay on it or do a temporary- We're not, we're not gonna patch it or put an overlay on it or do a temporary patch. If you're gonna fix it correctly, you gotta go out to a commercial company that specializes in flat roofs. Not somebody that knows somebody named Joe. It's gotta go to a company. And also for the mold company, um, no, no, nothing against Service Masters, but there's a, actually, there's a company in the south side of Dearborn Heights called Global Green Services. This company's been around for decades and they specialize, they are experts in mold. I know I would not reach out to them, I use them all the time. Almost every single insurance company in the state uses them. And they're right here on Power Street in Dearborn Heights. And I honestly would reach out to them, get an opinion on them too, because they are experts. And that's the only thing they specialize in, is mold.
Okay, uh, Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair, I do agree from all council members, this is, needs to be taken care of right away. Uh, Director Conrad, how fast can you get a bid for the roof? Any idea?
No, I mean, you, you would need a spec. I mean, we should have a spec, so I mean, we should have an architect put something together so that, you know, we get the right product. Um, I mean, yeah, I could probably call a bunch of roofing contractors and have them give us recommendations. But I mean, you know, based on what Councilman Sob's saying, I mean, to do it right, you should go with a roofing specialty. Then you need a spec. You need something that everybody's going to follow and bid on, so you have a good comparative bid, not just somebody saying, I'll do this, I'll do that, and, you know, you're not comparing the same thing. So short of having a spec, I mean, you know, that would take a little bit of time to put together, but that's gonna be the right way to do it.
I agree.
Guys, hang on a year ago. Councilman Wanso, hang on please. Councilman Constant. Uh, the councilman just wanted one thing, do you mind if he goes before you or do you?
Uh, Mr. Conrad, just, uh, if it's okay with, with the council administration. I can literally get somebody out there to put a, do a board test on the roof tomorrow and tell you the specs. It's, if it's, it's that urgent, we're willing to do it. It's, it's not hard to get somebody out there to do a spec of what's under, what's under the, the rubber and what insulation it has, or if there's any boards or anything under it. Recovery boards or anything, that's the specs you're looking for. Those are gonna take two, three weeks. I can get you somebody out there tomorrow to do it.
Okay, Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, I think it does need to be taken care of, but especially.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, remediating the mold.
So the, the administration mentioned, um, there's something in the works. Do we want to authorize an amount not to exceed? You know, I have no idea about the about 50,000 or to, to, uh, start Service Master or, or, you know, a company to remediate the mold that's there. I would think that would be prudent.
Thank you, and I think ultimately here, uh, Councilwoman, go ahead, I'll let you.
Um.
Councilwoman.
I think we should.
I did, I said Councilwoman, Councilman.
Sure.
Um, I think we need to go out for bids for everything, including the cleaning service. In all fairness to everyone, we're not just gonna pick one company and have them come out and give them an open checkbook, even if there is a certain dollar amount. Sorry, but our charter says it must go out for bids if it goes over a certain dollar amount, which I'm sure it will.
I, I agree with the Councilwoman, which I said, Councilwoman, early on, Councilman.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay, but that's like the couple of times you've done this, I'd ask you to please stop doing it when it's kind of insinuating that I've called her a Councilman, but I've called her Councilwoman every time. So respectfully, I'm asking you not to do that anymore. But I agree with the Councilwoman. Um, please, I do believe we do need to go out for bids. Um, this is something that I think, you know, I've heard about two weeks ago, they were supposed to come to our last meeting. But unfortunately, uh, you know, with the holidays and, and I believe Mitch, you were out of town as well. It was an anniversary celebration or something. Congratulations on your anniversary as well.
Thank you.
Um, you know, ultimately, anything over 1,500 dollars, we need to go out for bids. I think it's extremely important. I know, I believe FEMA also could potentially offer trailers for emergencies as well. Uh, so we can even figure that out, we can look into certain things like that. I agree with Councilman Wanso. Um, I don't think any of us in here would be sitting or sleeping inside our homes that's dripping right before us. It's, it's embarrassing and it shouldn't be happening.
It needed to finish up. I see that Tim Emery on there from TIFA. Could some of the TIFA funds used to help offset the cost?
And we, I, I was gonna get to him.
I'm just waiting on the rest of the council members to see if they have anything else that they want to add on, Councilwoman.
Just a possibility.
Yep.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
Um, when are, when are we gonna take?
Nothing from the audience, please.
When are we going to, uh, take care of that later? Are we gonna put it under nine?
I, I've, I've had the clerk, uh, nodding her head and smiling at me, we're gonna figure it out.
You can add it?
Yep, because we haven't approved the agenda yet. So we're, we're stone presentation.
All right.
Yes, like 9K.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, so, okay, 9K.
So, and then I see that Tim does have his hand up. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please go ahead and unmute him, please? Go ahead.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
We have always worked with the south end fire department whenever they needed anything. We just redid the floor in there. So all we have to do is they have to talk with us and make sure that, you know, let us know what they need.
Thank you, Tim.
And, uh, also, my last job that I had before I retired, you must take care of the leaks before you take care of the mold.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Tim.
No problem, anytime.
Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
Well, as far as the remediation that's, you know, possibly gonna start tomorrow, do, do we want to take any action on that?
I think we're gonna have to hold off on that, Councilman.
Council Chair.
Yep, Councilwoman.
I think we ought to get some, some kind of place that they can stay in while some of this stuff is being checked out. Can't, can't we vote on getting that right away this week?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I, I believe.
Trailers of some kind.
I think that's, you know, extremely important. You agree, uh?
I, I think a very, uh, a timely, thoughtful process is important. Um, I, if it comes to that and that is the most appropriate choice, then we're willing to do that. Um, I do want to see all of our firefighters, uh, having that taken care of quickly. Um, so we're not stuck in a loop of where we're responding from trailers in the back of the station. Um, and again, it is a thin line of, that is the safest way to, to, to do things. Um, but I don't want to see us living in trailers for the next year. Um, that is a big concern. Um, so I think a, that mixed with a timely response would be appropriate. Um, but again, I, uh, I don't think for the, um, response times and firefighter well-being, if we are kind of stuck in trailers for a long time, um, that wouldn't be as appropriate. But, um, if we can have a short-term solution, then that would be great.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, guys, I think we're gonna go ahead and move forward with this meeting. Uh, Mitch, thank you so much if you want to stick around. If not, no need, but we are gonna potentially be adding something on the agenda. Um, and, and I'm sorry, I really, from the bottom of my heart, I'm, I'm sorry to you. I'm sorry to all the men and women that serve our fire department that this is happening. Um, but I can assure you right now, if you can see the fire lit up behind every single council member and the mayor and the administration, uh, something I hope and I know will be done very, very soon.
I, I appreciate the invitation and everybody's attention, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitch, also, if you don't mind, can you email that to all the council members?
Absolutely.
That that's something that we have.
Yeah, I can send that, and then I have all the pictures and videos I shared with you, I can set that up.
I have the hard drive as well that you sent.
Yes, yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, before we move over to the agenda approval, um, you want to remove that off the screen, Madam Clerk? There you go.
There you go.
Before we do the agenda approval, you said 9K is available.
9K.
Okay, before we add nine, before we go to agenda approval, do we want to at least have some type of recommendation, um, from any of the council members to, you know, state basically, uh, that we move effective immediately for a new, uh, full rim, you know, full roof repair at the both stations?
Council Chair.
Or re, you know.
Council Chair, for the, I'd like to put one for the roof.
Well, hang on, let me hear from the Councilman Wanso since he spoke first.
Yeah.
I said, Councilman Wanso.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. I, I'd like to make a motion that we add, uh, 9K to the agenda pertaining to the, uh, situation with the water leaking and mold at the both fire stations.
What, what do you want to add to that?
Discussion on that, so when, once we get to that, we can talk about it.
Emergency?
Emergency repair, emergency.
Remediation, like the mayor mentioned.
There you go. Emergency remediation.
Dearborn Heights Fire Department Buildings Emergency.
Or maybe just instruct the administration to go out for bids ASAP.
Well, we can talk about it when we get to it.
Well, we can talk about it when we get to it.
Yeah, but we, I, I need 9K to be something, Madam Clerk, so I want to write this down.
Dearborn Heights Fire, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Dearborn Heights Fire Department Buildings, because there's plural, Emergency Remediation.
Emergency.
Then at least get you.
And repairs.
Remediation and repair, I like that.
So you're gonna add, add when you approve the agenda.
So when you, uh, when you approve the agenda, uh, whoever's gonna read it, also keep in mind that we're adding 9K to the agenda to remediation of the fire department, uh, both, both stations for repairs and remediation. Uh, so next up is the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
Yes, I'd like to reintroduce motion 24249, uh, which would authorize the mayor and controller clerk to sign necessary warrants, treasured issue payment of $30,106, uh, to IB Electric, Inc. They've done the work, they deserve to be paid.
We're, we're agenda approval, Madam, uh.
I want it added.
Okay, you can add it. What would you like?
She's adding another motion.
Another one, so we're gonna do.
L?
9L, JK, L, yeah.
Okay, yeah, 9L. Uh, so you want to add IB Electric?
Yes, please.
Uh, so I just want you to keep in mind, Councilwoman, I've emailed the mayor, uh, I've spoken with the attorney on this one as well. Uh, we also got to make sure that if this is approved or if it's not, all we're trying to do is make sure we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, because at one point there was litigation against, against the city of Dearborn Heights and one of our employees, so we want to make sure that we are being fully protected on it. So, uh, we can add this on here, but this is something that I'm gonna speak for myself, that I still would like to, uh, prefer to speak with the attorney to make sure that the city is completely protected. But we will go ahead and move forward and with adding 9L. Mariana? Before, before you do that, let us go through the agenda when we get to 9L, because it's gonna be added, you can then speak.
It's about the agenda items. Sorry, it's about the removal of an agenda item before you approve? Okay, I just wanted to verify that 8A was removed and the correction to the bid award as well.
Yes, it was already removed for.
Thank you, sorry.
8A was removed for the fiscal year budget amendment. Thank you. Okay, so now whoever reads this, uh, agenda approval, just remember there's 9K, 9L, okay? Council Chair.
Don't you have a second for a motion to be added?
Well, no, she's adding on, and she's adding it, the agenda hasn't been approved. We're amending this, this, uh, agenda.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Are you saying that 8A is removed?
Right.
Okay, and I had, I had an issue with something in the budget, so how, how do I bring that up?
Well, it's removed, so it's not even, not even being approved by us.
I know, but something that wasn't in there, that we need to talk about, the, uh, CDBG department and the raises that we haven't got, I was gonna bring that up in the, uh, on the 9, on 8A.
You can add another motion.
Council Chair, that wasn't, that wasn't the budget, that was budget amendment from last.
For last year's remaining money.
That's what 8A was.
That was the remaining money that was left over for last year's budget.
Yeah, that's where I, the budget was what I was talking about. The budget's on the amend, on the agenda, so I was gonna bring that up under the budget.
Well, we can, we can, you know, this is a long meeting, but.
What's after, oh.
Double A.
I mean, you want me to add a 9M? I mean.
I mean, I, it's something that we have to address.
Well, I, I, I agree, Council Chair, I think this is something we need to address. Can we add 9M? I, I support Councilman Wanso.
Okay.
And we're gonna be here late today anyway, so.
All right, so, uh, CDBG raises. This wouldn't be the first time we had a long meeting or spoken about the CDBG raises. So we're adding 9K, L and M. George, I know I said I wasn't lying, walking on, today I'm getting strong-armed. Okay, whoever's reading the agenda approval, who's gonna read the agenda approval?
I can read it, Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, just remember, 9K is the Dearborn Heights Fire Department Emergency Remediation and Repairs?
Yeah, I don't think we, I need to read the whole, just the numbers. Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of July 9th, 2024, as submitted with the removal of item 8A and adding, uh, 8K, I mean, 9K, 9L and 9M as submitted.
Second.
All right, hang on, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Yes.
Can they, can you give the topic for either one of them?
Yes, okay, the Dearborn Heights Fire Department Emergency Remediation and Repairs. 9L is the IB Electric, uh, bill to be paid.
And 9M is CDBG.
And 9M is CDBG raises.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, Councilman, any discussion on that? Councilman Saab.
Council, uh, Council Chair, 9H, Director Cooper. Director Cooper, we asked for a BSNA access and you implemented the computer, but it's a restricted access. It's not full access.
It's view-only access?
But we asked for full access.
Yes, we did.
We, I want full access to everything the administration has.
Hang on, Mayor.
So I'd like to remove, uh, 9H until that's actually implemented. And I sent an email to you and I said there was, go back, look at the meeting. And we did not ask for restricted or view only, we asked for full access. I'd like this to be, uh, either removed.
You can either leave it or you can leave it for discussion when 9H comes around, or the Councilman Ahmad and Councilwoman Breyer have to agree to amend their motion.
We can discuss it on table.
Council Chair.
Hang, hang on, please. Okay, so it's gonna stay on, it'll be a discussion. Mariana, please, hang on. The, we're, we're at agenda me, approval right here and we're still going back and forth. I, I need this to kind of speed up. When we get to 9H, uh, I will let the IT director go ahead and give his point on that. The mayor can give his point on that, the councilman can give his point on that. Uh, but guys, keep in mind, this is gonna be a very long meeting. It's already 7:00 PM, uh, so I ask that, you know, we, we limit our, uh, comments on some of these things, please. Any other discussion? Hearing none, um, to removing 8A, adding 9K, L and M. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of June 25th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, minutes from the regular meeting of June 25th, 2024.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of June 25th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 4C minutes of the special meeting of June 28th, 2024.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of June 28th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
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 All right, we're going to try that one again, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have four D, minutes of the special meeting of July second, twenty-twenty-four.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of July second, twenty-twenty-four, as submitted.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
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 Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries, next up on the agenda is six, fund transfers.
No, no, no.
I am so sorry. Next up on the agenda is public hearing and comments on agenda items only. Just want you to keep in mind, this is on agenda items only, if you have anything outside of agenda items, you're more than welcome to speak at the end of the meeting. Okay, first up, I'm going to go to Zoom first, since we usually go to in-person first, sorry, gentlemen. Please forgive me, I know Dana Parrish has had his hand up, I think since the beginning of the meeting, he's been a little excited. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys, you know, I always go in-person first, we're going to go to Zoom first today. Dana, you see what you started?
I do.
All right, please state your name, and I said it, the street you live on, and the city you reside in, you've got two minutes, this is on agenda items only, actually, I believe you asked for an extra minute, so.
That was at the end, sir, that was at the end.
Okay, so that's your public comments?
Right, right.
Okay.
So, Council Chair, I asked the council members, Mayor, good evening, I ask your indulgence, Council Chair, for, I haven't been available for meetings. I had a point of order regarding June twenty-fourth meeting, sir. Something was done that was highly disrespectful to the residents, and it was a flagrant abuse of power and possible Open Meetings Act violation. This was suggested by special counsel at one hour fifty-one minutes and nine seconds of the meeting. The irony of this is that the special counsel is formerly the Corporation Counsel for the City of Dearborn Heights with approximately twenty-five years of experience in the city. There's no excuse for this violation, he knows better. Council Chair knows or should know better, our city clerk is versed in Robert's Rules of Order, he opens Meeting Act and is a parliamentarian, she should also know better. All these people let the residents of the City of Dearborn Heights down. They are all culpable, they all participated in a closed-door recess or meeting. They have much more than an apology for their actions. We'll never know what was discussed, what decisions were made or contemplated, and who else may have been contacted while they were in recess. This was an open meeting, and the public was entitled to view and hear everything. This didn't qualify as a closed meeting under the Open Meetings Act, nor was it even voted on, and the other members of council who were excluded out of hand. I can only imagine the degree of trust that has been lost by those members towards their colleagues. Congratulations, you did pass the budget, but at what cost? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Council Chair.
You're very welcome, thank you so much. I know this is behind us, but I know I had this conversation with Mr. Parrish, I do want you to keep in mind, this was a recommendation made actually by the Chief of Staff, and I believe the Special Legal Counsel agreed to do it as well. But it was the Chief of Staff that needed the recess to step down and break down the numbers, I will say, since I wasn't there, and I do take responsibility, nothing was discussed, it was really me standing next to our Chief of Staff as she was typing in the numbers that we had given her during the meeting. We just calculated the numbers, we added them up, and we came out, that's what happened during that meeting, but Mr. Parrish is absolutely correct, because it should have happened right here in front of the audience while everybody was watching, so I do take responsibility on that, I apologize to the clerk, I apologize to the special counsel. Again, I apologize to my colleagues who were also not in attendance. But it was also, I believe our, you know, Roger was also in the room there, and he was overseeing that as well.
Council Chair, I did not authorize any special counsel, it is not legal under the charter to have any special counsel doing any of these duties, and I don't think the Chief of Staff would ask the special counsel when the council is here, again.
Yeah.
He's right, they did go into the meeting, and there is a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Well, there wasn't three council members, you were in there, and this was recommended by the Chief of Staff, it was the Chief of Staff's recommendation, she's not going to hide.
No, she didn't recommend Mr.
No, no, she did, she said, can we break down and go break this down, she did.
According to the mayor.
No.
And there's no reason that would be violating the charter, there's only one Corporation Counsel.
All right, this is on agenda items anyways, but I wanted Mr. Parrish to be able to speak his mind, and he's correct, he's entitled to that. Next up, we have Brian S. Brian S., please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Madam Clerk, can you unmute him? Okay, maybe we can skip Brian S. and go over to memory.
Hi.
Hey, Tim.
In memory?
Yep.
Eaton, Dearborn Heights. I don't know if this is the right, proper time, but I have a problem with the, we got notice at the school district that the school resource officers were being pulled.
Tim, I'm so sorry, this is on agenda items only, you have to save that towards the end of the meeting, I'm so sorry.
This was part of the budget, so.
Well, no, that was separate than the budget, because the budget never cut off the school resource officers, but there will be a comment on that towards the end that could potentially answer that.
I'll be waiting.
Thank you, Tim, I'm sorry about that, Tim, you know how I feel, I much respect your knowledge and your wisdom, but this is to be held towards the end. Brian, we are going to give you one more shot at this, Brian. There you go, he just raised his hand. Okay, you can put to memory his hand down. And then put Brian's hand down, and Brian, if you can hear me, put the Brian S. hand down for me real quick, Madam Clerk. Brian, if you can hear me, raise your hand again. Okay, so he can hear me. He could, because I asked him to raise his hand up again if he can hear me.
So he needs to unmute himself, though?
Yeah, he has.
Yes, I mute, yeah.
So, can you clear on that?
Mute him. Thanks, Tim.
Unmute Brian different ways.
Well, you can keep trying to unmute him, in the meantime, let's unmute the National Public Act.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on, sir.
Well, Dearborn, Michigan, Hassan U. National Public Act. At this time, you guys went into a closed session, you guys said we're going to recess, and you guys said it specifically, we're going to go do the numbers, am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. How many people were in the place, was the door open or closed? Can people hear you?
It was closed.
By, the door was closed.
Closed.
So nobody could come in and out, right?
No, yeah, they could, the door was not locked.
Hold on, here's a closed session, a closed session where there has to be all city council members, they close it, and they sit there and say we're going into closed session, did you tell the public you're going into closed session, yes or no?
No, because we didn't really go.
Okay, because there was no violation at all, because not, there was only two council members in there, and you told the public that you guys are going to go sit there and do the math, and then come back, and you're going to vote on it, correct? Did that happen during the meeting, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then that's not a violation, I don't understand why people say it's a violation, I'm the one that knows what a violation is. When you go to recess and all seven city council members go inside, and you guys close that door, it's a closed session now. Now, when other city council members are outside, that means you guys did not want to violate the Open Meetings Act, that's why all seven members were not invited inside the room, am I correct?
Correct.
So that answers the public's question, is it a violation of the Open Meetings Act? No, it's that simple. You have to go take recess, seven people of the members have to be in the discussion, and that's when it's a violation. So, we're on the same page?
We're on the same page, National Act.
On the same page, National Act. If you are, I can send you the paper of the violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you.
I read every little paragraph, Mr. Maydun.
Thank you. Mr. Maydun.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you later, thank you, guys, bye.
Thank you, I'm muting. I'm speaking out, and I can hear myself.
Because he's in the car.
Oh, okay, okay, then you can unmute Brian's iPhone, I'm assuming Brian's iPhone is Brian S.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me now?
Yeah, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on, you've got two minutes, and this is on agenda items only, correct?
Yes, Council Chair.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Sneer, and I'm the president of the Dearborn Heights Police Officers Association. I apologize for my voice tonight, I've been battling a cold for a few days now, I just have a comment in regard to agenda items eleven D and eleven E. For eleven D, I would like to ask that council discusses and determines if anything proposed in this resolution will inhibit the Chief of Police's ability to post and fill any and all programs or units that are contractually provided within our collective bargaining agreement. Because on its face, at this point, this resolution is not clear on if this poses a potential contractual violation or not. For eleven E, this resolution has written poses a potential safety concern if GPS tracking is installed on all vehicles, more specifically undercover vehicles, that are used within the police department by officers in an undercover capacity. I would ask for this resolution that council puts this resolution to a study session in order to further discuss what vehicles need to be tracked and ones that don't. I want to thank you all for your time and your due diligence on this, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Brian, hope you feel better, thank you for your services, sir. Now we're going to go over to the public. Please, if you have on agenda items only, please stop right up. Sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on, and keep in mind, this is on agenda items only, you've got two minutes.
My name's Virgil Montgomery, I live in Valparaiso, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of Murphy Pipeline, and I'm here with Mark D. Michelle to talk about the bid for the water main replacement.
Okay.
Okay, we have the letter, you've got a letter that's out there, recommendation, we were not recommended, first of all, thank you for allowing us to talk, I appreciate that. At the beginning of the conversation today, you said you're interested in doing what's best for the community, that's what we're all about. My client came in. What's that?
Talk into the mic.
My apologies, my client came in and with the lowest qualified bid for this work. That would be what's best for the community from our perspective. Murphy's a Michigan company. They are, again, the lowest qualified bidder, not awarding to the lowest qualified bidder actually hurts the competitive bidding process, particularly in this case where there's no real justification for not awarding it to my client. If companies that have the low bid do not get the work, then it's going to chill people's abilities to bid. We were told that there was an emergency response that we failed to respond to. I just want to say that this company has responded to fifty-two emergency responses, this was one, and it was because of logistics, they couldn't make it. So, you know, using that as an excuse doesn't hold water from my perspective.
You said there was, I'm sorry, did you say that there was an emergency response that you needed to respond immediately?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, as part of the recommendation letter that was drafted.
Speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
As part of the recommendation letter that was drafted by your consultant, Wade Trim, one of the considerations in the award of us not being awarded the project, that we did not respond to an emergency water main repair request. And we did not, we were unable to. Prior to that, over a period of ten years, we responded to over fifty-two water main repairs, right here. So, we're being penalized for, you know, two percent non-response for something that was not even a contractual requirement, it was something we were doing as a favor to the City of Dearborn Heights. We've done over the past ten years, close to fifteen million dollars' worth of water main work for the city successfully. We're a low bidder on this project, we supplied references to the consultant that all checked out, they were a great company, we do good work, got a good relationship with Bob and with Vaughn, your two people, they both know me for a long time. So, we're very disappointed.
Well, look what I'm going to do.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up.
Okay.
I am going to let you speak when it comes to the discussion-wise, if any of the council members have any questions for you, we can do that.
Thank you.
I myself have some questions for you, I'm not aware of any of this, or like, I wish you would have kind of emailed us prior to coming to this meeting, so maybe we could have.
We did.
You emailed me?
We emailed everybody, everybody on the council, got a letter from us yesterday.
Yesterday, yes, stated that you would be here.
No, it explains our position as well. I have a copy of it here if you'd like.
We are, I am.
Okay. But we can wait, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is on agenda items only, ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
I'm your worst nightmare. Rose Trepepi, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm ashamed of every one of you, and I'm terrible, it hurts me to say this, the administration and you guys, these people here are what run the city, the fire department, the police, and DPW, the rest can be eliminated and replaced, they can't. If you guys don't do something today, I'm ashamed, I went on a tour five years ago with the Italian Club for Me, and we knew then that that building was no good, five years ago, and I know it was worse before that, why hasn't something been done? Are we all stupid, we keep hearing the same over and over, Ali, close your ears, over and over and over, this year's not going to be that way. Don't promise things and don't say you're going to do things, those people need to raise, give it to them, the ones that need something done, do it, thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Hi, my name is John Bitigary II, I live in Livonia, Michigan, and we are the, for the water main replacement job, we were the, recommended by both the city engineer and the consultant engineer. The difference in price for the low bid was point one-two percent on a five-point-six-million-dollar job, it's only six-thousand-dollar difference. And as they mentioned, they did have a very good connection with the city, they did fifty-two emergency repairs in the past ten years, and we now employ all of those employees in our company. And we are also the company that recently responded to the emergency water main repairs, we picked up at eleven o'clock at night, and we were, it was this week and last week as well. So, thank you, council members.
Thank you, one second. Yeah, let you save it for that discussion, I mean, we don't want to make this.
Are you sticking around or?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Council Chair, what was the name of the company again?
Bitigary.
Bitigary Contractors.
Thanks, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I saw you standing up and then sitting down, true gentleman, giving up his time. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Zahir Abdalha, Dearborn Heights, good evening, everyone, I just want to talk about the bond which you're going to have thirteen million and some dollars. I just want the city council to know how much money we have left from the twenty-five-million-dollar bond, which was supposed to have nine million dollars to replace the water meters in the city. And if we have seven-point-four million dollars left, as I heard before, from the Controller of the city, and we're going to spend around six million dollars from the city as a part of the matching, that gives you around thirteen million dollars, so you don't have to go and bond for anything and, you know, burden the taxpayers with thirteen million dollars, or six, or seven million dollars, which is the match. The second thing, I want you to look at all these contracts which are in front of you, do we have the money for them? Because I see the word tentatively, we go into a word, that doesn't work, you do not do something tentatively to award the contract to somebody. Either you have the money for it, and you're going to approve it, or you don't have the money, and when the money comes to the Treasury Department in the city, then you go ahead and award those contracts, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much, sir. And you announced on agenda items only, seeing none, next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and ACH wire transfers six dash one through six dash thirty-nine, six dash forty-one through six dash forty-three, and six dash forty-six through six dash sixty-one, as submitted.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
Why did we remove six dash forty, six dash forty-four, and six dash forty-five?
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I responded to the mayor on this one as well, I believe the last three times we brought up fund transfers and current claims, Councilman Saab has had his discussion with some of the council members about wanting some information, he specifically responded saying he would like it in his mailbox, I believe Roger put it in his mailbox today. I hope this is going to finally put this to rest, and we can find this at the next meeting to be able to just vote on and pay all, you know, the forty, forty-four, and forty-five. You know, I know, you know, this has been a back and forth, I removed it because I'm tired of spending forty-five minutes on fund transfers and current claims at every single meeting. So, seeing that the councilman and Roger seem like they've been able to put their differences aside, the councilman received what he wants, Roger was able to give him what he needed, but it was, I believe it was earlier today, and so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll be able to go ahead and vote on these things.
And Council Chair, with all due respect, it was sent four times by email, but I did put it in the mailbox and hand-delivered it.
Thank you, Roger, for that, for being the good faith approach there that you did, any other discussion?
Council Chair, I did send for clarification from Director Conrad and Chief of Staff for claim three and four, seems like that's the same invoice, but it's a different invoice number.
number for two different times that this contractor did cut the city property lawn. So, I'm not sure if we need to maybe make sure that they change the date on them, or are we okay just to approve it?
You know, I mean, did they, are they the same exact dates?
Same exact date, but each one has a different invoice number. Same amount, though.
With the different invoice number, and they did the same work, and they've been doing the same work, you're probably gonna see the same amount. And that's what I had just assumed.
Correct, yeah. It's, I mean, it's a, I mean, he told me it's a different time, but I mean, do we need to change the date? Or are you guys okay with it? Director, can we have the date corrected somehow, or?
So, that's just the date he developed the invoices.
Can we have the date of service for each one?
He's going to be adding that from, it was on the first one. For some reason, he omitted it from these. But I had discussion with him today, and he's going to make sure that that's on every additional one. The pictures verify that those, it was the first, the one, the earliest invoice was the first week of June, and the pictures verify that the second invoice was for the third week of June. So, I mean, well, it doesn't have that right on the invoice in the description like he normally puts. The pictures that he's been supplying do verify that those are the invoices for those two cuts.
Thank you for that clarification. To be honest, I did have calls from residents asking about these two invoices, because this seems like the same invoice. But in the past, he used to have a list of all the properties-
That's not mine. That's the properties that he cuts for-
The ordinance department?
For ordinance department, right. Mine are the same cuts, the same fifty-two locations every other week. You know, it's our right-of-ways that we, you know, so that's-
Okay, gotcha.
Different invoice, different contract.
All right, thank you very much.
Would you like to do, Councilman?
I'm okay paying it, but if you guys wanna wait and change the date, that's up to you guys. I just wanna clarify-
Councilmembers?
Are you okay?
With, now, if, I'm sorry, you're just Councilor?
Yeah.
Are we gonna, is this gonna be brought up later?
No.
No?
No.
Either we pay it, or have, or we can have, ask them to change the date and bring-
I think, I mean, I think, they're doing it in good faith. They've been doing a lot of work for the city. I think we should, we should go ahead and pay it.
I'm fine. We'll just go ahead.
Any other council members?
I just wanted to clarify it to everybody.
Any other council members? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That's a record time since January ninth, first meeting on fund transfers and current claims. Thank you, council members. Next up, we have consideration of bids. Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deeb bid award lead pipe replacement.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize a resolution awarding the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the DWSRF, twenty-twenty-four Lead Service Line Replacement Project to LGC Global Inc. is outlined in seven A.
Second motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I'd honestly like to move all the bids with the water lead and meters and, you know, to a study session. When we have the engineer here and everybody here, just, we got this information so late, and there's really nobody to really answer questions for. I'd like it to be tabled, so we can have a serious discussion. This is a lot of money. And again, I don't believe we received the money yet, so it's in no rush.
So, Councilman, a couple of things that I wanna respond to. The mayor actually brought it up to us because he had just received it. He asked me, this is, I think, the first time I allowed him to walk something on, because he said this is extremely important for the city. I do want, not wanna get into the trenches with this, but Mr. Deeb is on a family emergency. I was able to speak with Mr. Deeb and the mayor regarding that. So, you know, I am asking, I don't know how long Mr. Deeb is gonna be gone for, but he's definitely, you know, my heart is out with him and his family right now, and he's spending time with his family currently. But I know the Chief of Staff said she had something. We have Vaughn here. Maybe we can hear from him first. And if we did wanna table all of them, you'd have to go one by one, Councilman. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. So, these three projects are part of the DWSRF veil that we've all been, the city council and staff, we've all been working hard for since, since February of twenty-twenty-three. That's when it first came before you to vote. You voted to allow us to proceed with procuring, attempting to procure funds. We created a project plan for all three of these projects, submitted it through Eagle, went through the process, came back. We were successful in, in, in being considered for this. We came back before you in May, May twenty-third of twenty-twenty-three, again, with a budget to work around. At that time, it was, it was thirty-four, a little bit over thirty-four million dollars for these three projects. Again, it was approved for, for Waitrim and, and the city staff to move forward with, with the next step. We, so then we submitted the project plan. We, in November of that year, November twenty-three, we received word back that some of the funding was, was successful. Then again, in December, additional funds were made available. And then, again, in February, additional funds were made available.
And this was the thing that we voted on. I believe the vote was five-two. I believe myself and Councilman Oncea voted no. This was going to be increasing our water bills. This would be using seven million dollars of our ARPA fund to match, be able to do these three projects. Is that correct?
So, in April of this year-
Yes.
It came before you, two options that Mr. Deeb presented. You chose option two. You voted on option two, five-two approved. And the way that that funding broke down, it, three different entities. For the first project, the lead pipe replacement, it was going to be funded through a bond, bond sale. There was a cap to that, a bond ceiling that was approved at that time as well. It was thirteen million, eight-hundred, five thousand was approved, half of which is, is forgiven by the state. And then, for the water meter project, that project, half of it is gonna be given, again, funded through the state ARPA grant money and forgiven. The other half was to be funded from the remaining bond funds from the twenty-twenty-one sales. And then, the water meter, or the water replacement project, those funds, half of it is to be funded through the grant and forgiven. The other half was through the city ARPA funds, which, which is gonna equate to three million or less for that. So, those, that is what was put on the table in early April. That's what the body voted on and approved, and, which has led to, led to us, during, during this whole process, we've been working and hitting the dates that are required by Eagle. The reason we're here before you, the bids, they dictated when we had to have the bids received, actually, when the bids, the projects were submitted, which was May twenty-sixth. We had to have those out to bid. We had to receive bids, June twenty-seventh. We have to be before you tonight, June ninth. The Part III application for this DWSRF was due yesterday. We submitted that. And the remaining components to go to the next step are approved resolutions from this governing body for these three projects. If, if, if they, if we don't receive those, the, we don't, we lose the opportunity for the funding for these projects, which is, it's, you know, seventeen million dollars in the balance.
Thank you, Councilor. So, you're saying we need to approve this, so we can get the money from the state?
In order for you to be, so yes, in order to stay in this quarter, which is the fourth quarter through the, the DWSRF program, which everybody has to abide by the same rules, the same guidelines, you have to, it has to be, in order to stay in this quarter and be eligible for the funding, you have to approve-
So, if we approve this, and for some reason, we don't get the money, what happens?
So, so then you have the, you have, if you approve this and you don't receive the funding, then the project, you don't have to proceed this. It's contingent upon, and the state understands this, it's contingent upon them approving the project.
So, we're not gonna come back and say, hey, you know, you guys weren't approved, so we're gonna go off our bonds?
Yeah, if I may. Pat McGow, I'm here as the city's bond attorney. So, this is a complicated process at the state. So, let me just kinda give a quick overview to answer some of the questions about the timing of what's here tonight and the funding. So, as Vaughn mentioned, the city was part of a hundred some-odd communities that applied for funding. There's a list, and there's about sixty communities that got funded for drinking water. Forty of those are going through this quarter program. This is the biggest program because it's the last quarter of the state's fiscal year. And the state mandates certain dates, and you've seen that schedule. They call them the milestone schedules. But basically, the key dates, once the bids were received, is yesterday, the application that says, here's what the costs are. And so, the bids came in, in late June. It's a very tight turnaround, especially with the Fourth of July. It's a ridiculous schedule. The state sets it, and all forty communities in that quarter have to abide by that. So, the, the forms went in to say, here's the bids received, here's the projects. The action item before you tonight is called a tentative contract award. And the reason, and this is not anything that the city or the engineers prepared. This is the state's form. And they call it that because the state, Eagle, and the Michigan Finance Authority wanna know that the city's gonna move forward with the project. Tentatively approving the contract means you're not obligated to the contractor. You're basically saying, we're moving forward with this contractor, this dollar amount for the project. So, then the state can put all the numbers together over the next month to come through with the financing. So, that's why this is coming before you tonight, and well, it's called a tentative contract award. If approved by you tonight, then the Eagle people are gonna work with the engineers to fine-tune all of the numbers and finalize the loan amounts. We know generally the categories of the funding. We've got a thirteen-point-eight-million-dollar bond paying for part of the lead service lines. There's state grant money, there's city ARPA money, and there's leftover bond proceeds from twenty-twenty-one. That's all gonna get fine-tuned over the next several weeks. In early August, they will finalize the numbers, and then, it's actually not until August sixteenth, that Eagle formally awards the loan and the grant funds. You don't receive them then, that's when they issue their order, but it's gonna be based upon all the work that's gonna happen over the next month. And, and, and I'm almost done. And then, the city doesn't sign to borrow the money until later in August. The day after the Eagle order is when the city signs the contract to say, we're gonna issue the thirteen-point-eight million dollars in bonds. The state's got the documents for the grant. And then, September sixth is when the loan closes. So, you're actually not gonna receive the money until after the loan and the grants close, and you start drawing funds. So, the way this financing works, they're not gonna wire you all the money upfront. As you draw funds, there's forms to file, and then you get reimbursed that way. So, this is the same rules that every forty communities are abiding by. It is a ridiculous time schedule, especially with the holidays and the bids just coming in. But unfortunately, that's, that's the way this particular calendar quarter works.
I just got a quick question for you. I'm sorry, you said your name was?
Oh, Pat McGow.
Pat, thank you, Pat. And I see you here at some of the meetings. Anytime Vaughn is here. My question to you, Pat, is, you know, you know, this was thrown at us at last second, and I can understand you gotta end late June, which was, I'm assuming, June twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay, we received it June twenty-seventh. You know, could we have been made aware, like, hey, guys, we received this. We're gonna be putting this before you guys. We're gonna be, you know, because really, we didn't get the information until yesterday or today. And so, to us, it's like, you know, moving forward, if something's gonna come before us, or the council's gonna have to make a decision on making a vote on something, I know the Chief of Staff did ask for a study session beforehand, and I can't reach out to the body and say, a day before, saying, everybody show up at five-thirty. Now, we're gonna all come in a half hour ready to have this discussion, because it was given to us on such short notice. Obviously, I mean, you know, you're not in control of it, like you said. It's the state that came in and did this. So, to me, I'm okay with it. I mean, overall, I'm not okay with charging the taxpayers more on their water. That's why I voted no. But I would say the majority voted yes. But now, here's, here's where we stand, and we have this right before us. So, I mean, I, I would hope that the body now would just, you guys moved forward in the past, let's move forward with it now.
Councilor?
Yep, Councilman Constant.
Quickly, the other communities face these same short deadlines, correct?
Yes. I mean, some people got their bids June twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, but the reality is, most of the bids came in in the last week of June. The engineers were fine-tuning the numbers over, unfortunately, the Fourth of July week, and they're going to councils for approval either early July or, you know, the second week of July. I can tell you that I've had a number of council meetings, special meetings or regular meetings, where these contracts have been approved or going and dealing with the issues of the funding and the numbers.
Thank you for that insight, Pat. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Pat. Next up, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez, City Engineer Deeb, bid award water main replacement.
Councilor Chair?
Councilwoman Breyer?
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize a resolution awarding the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, twenty-twenty-four Water Main Replacement Project to Bidigiri Contractors, Inc. is outlined in the updated backup of Item Seven B.
Second motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I actually have a comment real quick. Vaughn, I know Chief of Staff, the two gentlemen did speak earlier. I see here, we went with Bidigiri. Vaughn, is there a reason why you feel that the administration went with somebody that we haven't used, but we've used a company for X amount of years? I mean, I'm just- Mayor, anybody?
Well, I'll, I will state facts only here. So, I have worked with, with Mark quite a bit over the past few years. He, he owned a company named DND Water, which did a lot of work, as he stated, within the, within the city. And that company, he was sold to Murphy, and Murphy Contracting is now represented by Mark in this, in this region. I've worked with, and so, I called all their references, and they checked. They do, you know, they do fine work. Everything is, you know, they, they are qualified to do the work. I, I checked the references of Bidigiri. They also, I know them well from, from working with them for a number of years. So, I know both companies well, both qualified. In discussions with, with the city staff, it was determined that they would prefer to, to work with Bidigiri. The, in the differential in the bid, six-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-seven dollars or something thereabouts was, was, was considered, you know, a small amount, considering it's against a five-point-three-million-dollar job. So, that's the, 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 the preference there is based on, is based on, it's a local company. Bidigiri is a hundred percent local company, as I understand it. And the city staff has had good experience with them as of late. And so, that's, that's the reason that we made the recommendations that we did.
Councilor?
Councilor?
Hang on one second, please. Councilman Ahmad? Thank you, sir. Vince, I saw, I'm sorry, Vaughn, I'm sorry, sir. Vince is right there. I still, you didn't give me like a good explanation. I mean, I, I thought they're a local company too. They're implement. And you said, you just had a discussion with the administration, and the administration just said, go with the other company. And, I mean, you're not giving me a good reason. I mean, we have a, a company that have a lower bid. Doesn't matter even if it's a fat dollar. But now, you're telling me because somebody in the administration told you to go with the other one, and now we have a proposal or a recommendation to go with a company. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with both companies. I don't know any of them, but-
I'm, I'm, so in that, in that, you know, I'm supporting the cities, the city and the city staff. They had, recently had some water main experiences with breaks, and they had a good, good response. And so, as I said, the both contractors are qualified. I don't have an issue with either one of them. I got feedback from, from the city staff, and that's, it was supported by Mr. Ali Deeb as well. He was involved in all of this before he left. And the decision was that they wanted to move, that the city wanted to move forward with, with Bidigiri. And, and so, it's my job to support and, and do what is best for, what I feel is best for the, the city. And in this case, supporting them in their wishes, it was warranted.
Thank you, Vaughn. Director, would you want to say something?
Sure. I'll just speak on behalf of myself and my staff. We've had a great relationship with DND, although we don't feel that the company's the same since it was converted to Murphy. We had occasions this past year, or since it's been purchased by Murphy, where we've needed emergency repairs, and they were actually unresponsive on the phone call even. So, I mean, they are, as Vaughn says, both great contractors. So, I mean, they are, as Vaughn says, both great contractors. It just, you know, were a little, you know, tentative based on, you know, we're not sure we have the same relationship we had when they were D and D. I could be wrong, my staff could be wrong, but it, you know, we've been challenged to better vet our contractors, and I think that's what we're doing. And again, like Vaughn says, it's a very small amount that the difference is, so.
Thank you, Director.
Council Chair, I had one more question for the gentleman, do you mind? I know when you were talking earlier, you said you have all the employees now from the other company?
Yes, so during the sale.
What's your name, sir, again?
Oh, sorry, John Bidagere, and I'm with Bidagere Contract, John Bidagere the second with Bidagere Contractors. The relations that the DPW had was with our foreman, who was at D and D Contractors before, and during the sale, he left Murphy Pipeline, which is located in Florida now. That's where their headquarters are, we're the contractor from Plymouth.
I agree from Plymouth.
Yes, Bidagere's the contractor, the local contractor from Plymouth. And we, he came over with his entire crew, and we hired the foreman. So that's who the relationship is.
How many, how many people in that crew?
I believe it's eleven now. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Thank you, Council.
I got one. Second, I got one from Roger first. Go ahead, Roger. Council Chair, under the advertisement for the bids such in zero zero one 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 three, it says the city of Dearborn Heights reserves the right to accept or reject any or all bids and to waive any informality in any bids should it consider same to be in its best interest. Providing the award of the contract and the language when they do the bid, it's up to the city to make the final decision. I'm responding to the letter that I did receive from the other company that said it felt unfairly treated. I didn't see any evidence of such, but again, the city, the decision was made in the best interest of the city, and we have that power, we have that authority to make that decision legally.
Okay, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Do we get an opportunity?
Yeah, I'm going to give you an opportunity. I'm going to, we're going in order here, though.
No, no problem.
Yeah, and this, I got to make this something clear, this is not going to be a debate, this isn't going to go back and forth between two of you guys, who, you know, who's got more employees, who's more local, who's not. Look, at the end of the day, we want what's just best for our communities. That's the only thing that I care about today. Councilman Saab.
Hey, John, how many employees does your company have?
We are now in the mid nineties.
Nineties?
Yes.
Have you done any such work before municipal wise?
We actually have a full letter of recommendations that my coworker brought from all of the municipalities in southeast Michigan, if he can hand it to you.
It'd have to go to the clerk.
Okay, yes, if they can hand, sorry about that.
That's it for me?
You have the council members. I allow, I'm going to allow you thirty seconds to just be able to speak real quick. You said you had something that you want to state.
Yeah, it's, I'm not here to disparage the other contractor.
We've got over a hundred employees.
I really do. We have over a hundred employees currently in Michigan. We have probably five, six hundred employees nationwide. So we're more than capable to do this project locally with our employees. They're a good company too, they can do the job too, and as Vaughn said, we're both qualified. We were the low bid. You guys were talking about getting bids for your fire stations. Same thing, doesn't matter if we're a dollar low or a million dollars low, we're the low bid. We're qualified, we have references that were checked out, and we should be awarded the job. The response to the water main repairs has nothing to do with this contract. It's, nothing in the specifications for this bid says that we have to respond to water main breaks. We were doing that out of the goodness of our heart before. There's nothing in the contract that says we have to do that to get water main work. So we think that that being a criteria that's in the recommendation letter is unfair. It's not part of the bidding documents.
If I may, I'll just add, the way I understand it, the way Eagle works, you're going to be coming out of pocket several thousand dollars, six thousand plus, because Eagle is only going to fund basically the low bid. And so you're going to have to come out of pocket to pay for the rest of.
Sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, your taxpayers are paying that.
Councilwoman.
I guess the reason we have a bidding process is to bring in the lowest bid, and the lowest bid seems to have the most experience out of any of the bidders that were involved, in my eyes. You know, they know the city, they've been around a while, and the water main leak or whatever they're talking about was not really even what they were contracted to do. They just did it because they were trying to help.
You know, I will say, I will say my part, kind of like Council, former Council Chairman Abdullah used to say, the lowest bidder is the best bidder always. But I can say that I, something about you gentlemen here, I don't know, I feel like you guys seem genuine, you guys seem sincere. I don't know why the administration didn't choose you guys. We as a council either concur or don't concur, and if the majority concurs with what the administration says, you know, moves forward. But obviously, my feelings are not going to change the fact that, you know, it seems like Director Conrad and maybe the administration and mayor chose to go with a different company. And again, I don't know either one of you guys, and it doesn't really matter, but I can see how genuine you gentlemen seem, and that really means a lot to me. But at the end of the day, there's going to be a vote here, and if the majority says, hey, we're just ready to move forward, and we're ready to move forward, and it seems like from what Pat told us, we're time limited. So like, if we were to say today, no, because we don't want this company, and then we'd have to go back out to bids, and then we'd have to, you know, wait for the bid process, get the bids again, open them up, let the administration choose them, we might be able to be losing this funding on this as well.
We've done it in the past.
What is it?
We have tried, we have changed it in the past.
Yeah, but you.
You don't have to go for a bidding process, we already did that.
We can pick any company.
The vote is just going to choose who we go forward with. And if we prefer to go forward with one company over.
Give it to Mike, please, Councilwoman.
If we prefer to go forward with one company over another, we can do that, their bid process has already been completed, we have the numbers in front of us.
And in all sincerity, we're the low bidder, and the criteria that was used in the letter to say you guys didn't do X wasn't a part of the bid, as Mark said. That wasn't even part of the criteria.
Well, the mayor's asked to speak first, and then I go to Councilman Constance. Go ahead.
Council Chair.
Yep.
The statement that was made earlier, you know, we always go by the lowest bidder, that's not true. You know, when I was on council, we've had several companies that Councilwoman was on it as well, that we had to go through a company that was a lot higher than what the low was bidder because of the kind of work, the quality of work that we received. I don't want to mention the company's name, but there was two, three companies that we went through in 2018 and 2019, so the lowest bidder, no, it's not a true statement. And I have to respect and rely on our city engineer with over thirty years' experience that he's actually, he's done his due diligence. And as you know, obviously, he can't be here today, but he did brief the staff and let us know that he did all his due diligence to make sure the city made the right choice, and they made the right recommendation to that council to get the company that is put in front of you. And again, you know, this is in the best interest of this city, and everybody's done their due diligence with the contractors and also our city engineer.
If I may, one more point from me.
The Councilman wants to have his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No idea. Just a debate? Is there somebody?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Councilman Constance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Director Conrad and the gentleman from Wade Trim, do you feel that the Brigadier, the local company, is better suited for this project than the company we've used before that's been bought out by a bigger company, correct? Is that a fair statement? No, no, I'm asking the director, our DPW Director, Robert Conrad.
They're both good companies. We would be blessed to have either one of them. It's just our recommendation, you know, that we try Bidagere. So your decision, I'll be fine with whatever your decision is, I guess.
Councilor, there's no question. Our director.
If I may.
He's got one more question for the director, then I'll let you.
The director, Vaughn, when did we start using this company in the city?
The first time we started using them was sometime in December. We had a major water main break on Inkster Road, south of Warren. A service, it's a twelve inch service. D and D has done repairs on that line in the past for us. The line is too deep for us to reach with our equipment, so we have to go to a, you know, larger contractor that has the proper equipment to do these type of repairs. They responded to us within three hours and started working immediately. I think it was like eleven o'clock at night, too. You know, so, you know, normally, we, you know, for, as long as I've been here and for long before I was here, D and D was our go-to person every time we had a bad break.
What has changed?
It was the Murphy Pipeline. As soon as they got bought by Murphy Pipeline, I mean, you know, our first, I shouldn't say as soon as, but the first time we needed an emergency service, after they were purchased by Murphy Pipeline, we got crickets. And, you know, we made the next call to Bidagere. They were recommended by a bunch of other municipalities that, hey, give these guys a call, they'll help you out right away, I can guarantee it. Sure enough, they were right there on the spot for us, and.
So you were satisfied with the work they did, the emergency calls? What about the follow-up work, you know, landscaping, streets, and that?
Good, I mean, you know, we still have to replace the concrete at the location, but I mean, our concrete contractor's coming on board this month. I mean, if you see, he's been salt cutting around. So, I mean, the remaining work is on us to do, you know, the concrete restoration, but other than that, I mean, yes, restoration was great.
Thank you.
Councilor. Guys, this is, we're. I'll make it real quick. To be honest, I do agree with the director. I mean, it's a relationship at the end of the day. I would say the administration, our engineer, they're the one who are going to be working with the company. And I do respect, like you said, gentlemen, coming over here, they do sound genuine, but at the end of the day, it's a two-way street. You know what I mean? I mean, I know it's not a part of the scope, but it's something I would, I mean, I thought maybe for doing all that work over the years, they should have been there for us. I would just recommend to take this to a vote so we can move on. Thank you, Councilor.
Any other council members?
Councilman? The one call that they didn't make, though, my understanding is that was not the scope of work they were hired for. That was something they were doing out of the goodness of their heart and above and beyond what they were hired to do. So like, you really can't fault them for that. That's what I put it, I mean.
I have mixed feelings, just like you, Councilwoman.
I know, I know.
I swear, you guys got me torn apart right now, but I did.
He said he could work with either one, so I guess it's up to us.
Yeah.
And that, at the end of the day, is what the administration.
Well, let's take it to a vote, if it doesn't pass.
The gentleman.
One last, one last thing. First of all, this is D and D, this is Murphy right here, he's here, and he lives here. It couldn't be more local, so. The other thing is, imagine that this was, instead of six thousand, it was sixty thousand that we were low. It's low, it's a low bid. That's what you want for your constituents, is you want them to not have to pay so much. You were talking about the water bills and things, so anyway, so I'll sit down, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Seeing all the discussions. All in favor, please stay at aye. Aye. Those opposed? No. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell?
No.
Tom Winslow?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Canston?
Yes.
Moby Doom?
Yes.
Hassan's up.
Yes.
The Murphys, guys, I'm sorry, but I think Councilman Ahmad kind of swayed me at the end there when he said it's ultimately the administration who's going to be working alongside these companies. I wish you guys the best, and I hope that in the near future we'll be seeing you guys continue your services here in Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is seven, no, I'm sorry, it did seven B. Next up is seven C. Chief of Staff Hernandez, City Engineer Dib, bid award water meter replacement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Moved up to Dearborn Heights City Council authorized a resolution awarding the drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF two thousand twenty-four water meter replacement project to Ferguson Water Works, as outlined in seven C.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Vaughn, I do have mine, you know, this is something that's very near and dear to my heart. This will be probably the sixth or seventh thing that we've seen about water meters, water meters, water meters, water meters. We were at Riverside Middle School back in 2021 when this beautiful chambers was being worked on, and we heard new water meters are coming, new water meters are coming, we're going to get lower water prices, water things are going down. Then we had the old comptroller that was from Mr. Saputo, oh, we're going to give you this bond for water meters, water meters, water meters. We still have no water meters. Everybody still has high water rates, I'm still getting phone calls about these broken water meters. I have a resident that calls me at the owners, the gas station on Ford Road in Gully every single day, telling me about, hey, when are they going to place my water meter in my house? I don't have an answer. Are you telling me right now that in 2024, we're going to have water meters?
Not 2024.
Anyway, there we goes another year.
No, no, so, based on, based on the schedule, bless you, so based on the schedule, the notice to proceed can be issued in October, and that's all dictated by Eagle. And so, which would allow for work to begin, which is in the contract on December first for water meter replacement. In this contract, every water meter that you have an address for is included. It's over twenty-five thousand water meters, so it's citywide, and it's, they have two years, it's a two-year effort to replace it.
Vaughn, you know what they sold me on? To pass the bond in 2021, I believe Councilman Abdul Heck was on the council, one of the, you know, one of the, several times that he was on the council. It was, you pass this bond, we're getting new water meters. Here comes Councilman Musket, Councilman Abdullah, myself, Councilman Abdul Heck, we're all excited, yes, we all voted yes, we put a burden on the taxpayers, and we said, we're getting new water meters. And we started hearing about this project, oh, this project cost a little bit more money, so we have to take money from the water meters, we're going to fix this project, we have to fix this L forty-one, we have to fix this L forty-two, and I mean, and then we ran out of money. So now I'm noticing that we have all these projects that it kind of, you know, maybe it's just coming down like this, but we're voting on our water meters last again. Does that mean we're going to be doing these two projects with the money that we're receiving, and then we're going to come up here and say, oh my God, we don't have any money left? Because that's what happened the last three times you guys told us we're getting water meters.
No, no.
So what changed from the last two times?
So this is independent, well, not entirely independent, but this has gone through the DWSRF process. You have, it's fifty percent forgiven, like you have a grant that's applied to this, so you, so the thirteen million dollars is part of this contract, seven and a half is free money through the grant program. The other seven and a half, or six and a half, the other six and a half is through.
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds.
And taxpayers' water bills.
Or the bond sales that have already been from 2021.
Yeah.
Councilor.
So you can see clearly here on the record, the residents of Dearborn Heights are getting new water meters.
If it's, if you approve this tonight, and the state does their end in terms of approving their component, yes.
If the state does their part, so. There can be a potential to come back in eight months, like, well, the state did it to their part.
So it would, it would be very unlikely at this point for you not to get approval through the state process under this veil. I can't guarantee it because it's out of my control. However, that's why we're here, we've done a lot of work to get here, and we're on the verge of, I mean, these three projects, seventeen million dollars of free money for the state or for the city, and that's a great thing. And in that veil are these water meters, which everybody's been waiting for.
Seventeen million, you're saying we're spending thirteen million of it just on water Seventeen million, you're saying we're spending 13 million of it just on water meters? I hope so. Councilman Sob.
So, Von, a couple of questions. This is restricted funds to water meters only, right? Or are you going to come back in six months, say, or a year and say that, well, we needed more money for the CSO project, like you guys did before?
This is entirely independent of that.
It's restricted funds to water meters, right?
These, you're setting, the state is, is, that's their whole process. They are verifying that all your funds are on your side, are there to support this. It's, they will distribute the funds accordingly.
But is it restricted funds to the water meters only?
In this, yes. So, these three projects are three separate entities under the same veil. The dollars set aside for each project is three buckets. The money that's in buckets, in the bucket for water meters applies to the water meters only.
So what I'm saying, what I'm asking is the question is, this money cannot be used towards any other project except water meters?
That's correct.
He answered it twice, yeah.
All right.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. Like Counselor Chair Von, well, Counselor Chair has stated, it's a very sensitive subject for all of us, especially when this project was brought to us, it was 100% from the state. And a month later, or was it a couple of months later?
Like a week later.
Like a week, no, I think it was like a month later. It jumped from 100% financing from the state into 50%. So it's like.
So I believe that there was a misunderstanding there in how the funding applied. What ended up, this is my, this is what I think happened there. What we learned was that only, you could only apply the grant money to 50% of any one project. So, that's where, that's where all three of these, that's why they have 50% funding versus one having 100%.
My question is here, are you 100% sure we're going to get 50% from the state, or are you going to come back and tell us, you know what, there was a misunderstanding, and now the city has to pay for the full project?
For the audience, please.
It will not happen under the DWSF. The project is either, either dead in the water, or the, or it will be funded by half, by the state.
I'm smiling at Pat because he was in the meeting when Mr. Deeb said, we're getting 100% of the funding, and he kind of like stuttered a little bit, like, whoa, what are you talking about? So, I'm glad that Pat is not stuttering right now, and I'm sure he knows that then we are getting this 50%.
I'm glad he's supporting me from the back here.
Yeah, nodding his head, he's got a straight face. We're okay.
We're okay. Councilman?
Thank you. The bid is, you know, 12,500,000 plus a little bit. Now, is, their bid, is it guaranteed for the length of the suspect, the anticipated contract, two years?
They have two years to complete the work. It's dictated clearly with dates in the contract documents and, and, you know, the, so, the proposal includes all of the pay items and quantities per pay item.
Now, what's, okay, they're going to start in October, I mean, December 1st theoretically, they can start December 1st. What happens if, oh, the price of copper or whatever these meters, I mean, goes up 50%?
They're held to those numbers.
They're held to those numbers.
They're held to the numbers that are in the bid, which, which part of the, part of your packet included the bid tabs, and it shows the unit price per item.
Right.
They're held to those numbers.
You remember what they were in 2021? Because I do. 9.5 million, now we're spending 13 million, crazy. We would have just did it back then, we would have saved a lot of millions.
Yeah, that's true.
We would have used, yeah.
In the event that, I mean, they're going to come, I mean, I'll bet you, they're going to come, or someone's going to come to us for an increase on this. Because, oh, we didn't anticipate this. Oh, you know what, there's rocks in all these houses and dirt, we had to remove, remove rocks or something like that. Now, just say theoretically, if they do increase it by, you know, just say 10%, is the state going to give us 50% of that 10% that's increased? Or is it 50% of this one bid?
So, they, they have, there's a 6% contingency factored in that the state applies across the board on all three projects. And so that contingency accounts for things like change orders. Yeah.
Like boulders. Remember when you guys did work on Beach Daily in Evondale, and we're like, a million dollars, then we're like, oh, my God, we're running into boulders?
Yes.
Just like the CSO bonds, and it's just, you gotta remember somewhere scarred, you know?
I understand. It's, these things aren't cheap, and there's a lot of.
And you know who always warned us about it? Councilman Winslow. And really, and we were very passive with them, and now we're all saying the things that he was saying two years ago.
Thank you.
But we have a vote before us.
Yes.
So, we're going to take this to a vote. Hopefully, this is going to be the third time we vote on water meters and we come through with water meters.
Third time's the charm.
You know, third time's the charm, Councilman Ahmad said. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Honorable Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Dearborn Heights, we're getting new water meters.
Councilman Winslow, he voted yes on it, so I think it's going to work this time.
All right, next up, we have reports from city officials. Clerk Sinia, amendment to the annual publication amendment notice of meetings.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the clerk to publish the updated annual publication amended notice of meetings, which reflect the amended meeting date, time, and location of the General Government Pension Committee as required under Public Act Number 267, Public Act of 1976, as outlined in nine.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have nine B, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, 2024 Summer Tax Day Extension.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the extension of the summer 2024 tax bill due date as allowed by the General Government Tax Act 206 of 1893 from August 15, 2024 to August 29, 2024. Tax bills will be collected without penalty and interest through Thursday, August 29, 2024, as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair. I'd like to thank the Treasurer to bring this forward. I think this is a great thing for the residents, give them extra time for taxes. I know a lot of people, they're going through a rough time nowadays, especially with this crazy inflation that's going around. But I do thank you for this, and I hope the council body would support this motion to extend the time to give a break for the residents to pay their taxes.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Council Treasurer, Adam Treasurer. She was once Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Next up, we have nine C, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, City Depositors Update Bank Documents.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Treasurer to update the bank signers and include Mayor Bill Bazey, Comptroller Shannon Shepherd, City Clerk Lynn Amcina, and Treasurer Lisa Ann Hicks as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to welcome our new comptroller, Shannon Sinian over there.
Nice.
That's it.
Thank you, Shannon. Congratulations. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. I feel like I'm talking like Mike McCarthy right now. All right, next up, we have nine D, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, Delinquent Personal Property Taxes Striking and Request for Legal Assistance.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with Treasurer Hicks Clayton's recommendation for delinquent property taxes, property tax strike and authorize a treasurer attorney's support in the execution of this effort as outlined in nine D.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Counselor Chair.
Yep, Councilman Constan.
Well, we just received a memo from somebody in the Treasurer's office that stated that the city council has nothing to do with the striking of the delinquent personal property tags.
Well, she's requesting for legal assistance on it.
That would be from the Treasurer to the Corporation Council.
Correct. It's basically, yes.
I will prepare a petition for the ones that were here, forgiving, showing the documentation for each property and the notices that went out and everything, the process and the due diligence done. So the Treasurer and I are talking about it, and we're actually going to meet tomorrow again just to finalize that.
Thank you.
Put my petition in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Great question. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Are any of these people still in business where, with these small amounts, they won't pay them?
That's, I think, what the Rogers is going to figure out tomorrow.
May I add?
Yep.
I had provided all the council members a copy of the Public Act 206 of 1893, where, and in the section is 211.56A, these are property PPT, delinquent PPT, that are over five years. I cannot collect them per that, that law. Some of these go back to 1999. These folks are not in business, or they're, whatever the case may be, but they're beyond the five-year reach. What, respectfully to Attorney Farina, is talking about, we're talking about the five years or less. Those are the ones that we send a letter, we send a certified letter, we call them, we're, we're trying to collect on those because we can. And we also, what we need to talk about is the notice that we post on the door to, you know, the legal process of that, to padlock the doors and take the equipment that they're not paying their taxes on. So that's for five years or less. So this, what I'm talking about, is related to striking, which is five years or older. I've already talked to Wayne County, this is what they actually help us with once we go through before a judge, and they would approve that. That's what we're looking to do, provided by the Public Act 206 of 1893.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome.
All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Next up, we have CDD, Director Jamal, Wayne County Home Interlocal Agreement.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor to sign and notarize the Wayne County Home Interlocal Agreement Not to Participate Form as required by HUD. In addition, authorize CEDD Director Hassan Jamal to submit the form to HUD CPD Detroit Office accordingly, as outlined in nine E.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have nine F, Chief of Staff Hernandez and City Engineer Deeb, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF Engineering Design Proposal.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF Engineering Design Proposal as outlined in nine F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. We all have to engage in those ayes, ladies and gentlemen, please. Chief of Staff Hernandez, next up is nine G, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Renewal of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, Property and Liability Coverage E Proposal of July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2025.
Counselor Chair.
Yep, Councilwoman Breyer. As I figured, they were going to make you read it.
Yep. I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and accept renewal of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, Property and Liability Coverage E Proposal for the period of July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2025. In addition, authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to electronically sign, as may be appropriate on behalf of the city. Additionally, the city approves the payment of $1,599,795 to the MMRMA for the city's annual contribution stemming from the city's approval and acceptance of this proposal. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment amounts toward the city's annual contributions, with the total amount of these payments not to exceed By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charter Section 8.9. Furthermore, with respect to the net asset distribution, $1,019,499, option the city chooses to deposit in its bank account, $500,000 and $519,499 will be rolled into the MMRMA Retention Fund. These transfers will be in the form of an electronic funds transfer. The city council authorizes Chief of Staff Hernandez to complete the net asset distribution option form accordingly, and authorizes Chief of Staff Hernandez to sign this form electronically on behalf of the city as the city's member representative, as outlined in nine G.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constan. Any discussion on this?
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair.
Yep. I'm going to, do you want to ask that question first, Councilman? I think it's.
Yeah, Mary, Chief of Staff, I got a question about the option to deposit the $500,000. What's the deposit for? Is that our bond or what?
So again, we have a pool in our insurance where we pay out for any claims that we receive. So every so often, we put money into it so that it maintains a certain level that's required by our insurance company. So every year, we tend to put about half of what we receive in there. But I also, sorry, do you have any more questions with regards to that?
So I thought our limit was 300,000.
The limit for coverage. So again, our pool has some money in it. Per incident, I believe the, the limit is $300,000, so it can't exceed that per item. But that doesn't mean that we don't have to have a certain amount of money within that pool, which I believe is 10% of what our total coverage is.
And how much money do we currently have in there?
I do not know that, but I can request that from our insurance company. But can I say one more thing? Sorry, before I forget. As Councilwoman Breyer was reading the motion, I noticed that there is a typo in the not to exceed section. It should be the exact same number that was up above. It was slightly below.
Not to exceed 1599795.
Almost 88,000.
1599.
Okay, so do you amend that motion, Councilwoman?
So we're going to the 599795?
Correct.
All right. Both amounts in this should read $1,599,795.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Counselor and Ahmad. Thank you, Counselor Chair. The only thing is, I think Councilman Winslow last time had, had something with the wording, like, I didn't like the wording when it says without prior authorization by city council. Are you okay with that, Councilman?
Well, you know, I'm not. That's one of the things I was going to bring up. Why is it in there? Again, we had, we spent so much time at the last meeting, and we said from now on, we're not going to put that in there.
Yeah, so, Mariana, we are going to have that removed. So, would you like to amend your motion, Councilwoman? To prevent it from saying without authorization of the city council.
Is there a time limit on that?
No, it's just effective immediately. We're just saying that we have to, still have to come before council. This, you know, spending without council's approval or making decisions without council's approval when it comes to funding, it's just violates our charter, and it goes away from giving the power of the body, the legislative body. And just to keep things in perspective, you go to the federal level, that's how it is. You go to the state level, that's how it is.
I apologize.
County level, that's how it is. You come to Dearborn Heights, and for some odd reason, it's different.
I apologize. This was copied from the prior years, and again, it was written, since I started working here, it's been the same language. I just used the same motion. I apologize. I forgot about that one.
It's okay. I know, I, I'm just kind of giving the perspective out there. The Councilman Winslow has brought that up several times.
So we take out.
By doing so.
By doing so. Yeah. Without prior authorization?
I think the clerk knows.
And then adding a section in 8.9?
And adding a section to say that council must approve any other decision, decisions. Councilman, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, Councilman Constan, do you second that?
I do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Winslow, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, in the past, we've gotten money back from MMRMA. Because we put so much in, and because we don't, you know, how come we haven't gotten money back in the last couple of years?
We are getting money back, and we have every single year. So we put, this year, we're choosing to allocate 500,000 or so, about half of it, into our pool fund to continue to self-fund our city, and the other half is coming directly to the general fund. But yeah, in the past three years that I have been here, we have received money every single year.
Is that in the budget? That shows in the budget?
Yes.
Under what?
Under revenues, MMRMA reimbursements.
And it was for how much?
I was just asking that. You said you didn't have that amount.
Sorry, I thought you were asking me for the total fund that we have in MMRMA itself. I don't have that number, but I have.
Doesn't that amount come back to an end of the year?
No. So the money that we receive is from the investments that MMRMA does with their money. So we get a portion of it because we're one of the partners of the organization, so we receive a portion of any investments that they do. So the money we receive is, is from that. And we typically put it into our general fund as a revenue. So I can tell you exactly what, what we had budgeted in the revenue this year.
How much did we receive back that's put into the budget? And where does it show that the money was put in?
So in the motion itself, it tells you this year how much money we're going to receive back. So we're going to receive $500,000.
$519,499.
The 519,499 will be rolled into the MMRMA retention. So we're receiving 500, we're giving them 519,499.
We're receiving half a million dollars back from them, from MMRMA.
Was it robbing Peter to pay Paul?
No, no, I mean, no. You know, it's money supposedly that we paid in that they didn't use supposedly and we're getting it back, sort of. We overpaid.
No.
Is that right?
No.
Well, that's from the investment she was just stating.
Yeah, it's the investments that the company has. We get a share for those investments and we're one of the cities that first originally started with MMRMA, so we get a larger portion than many other cities do. So actually, it's a pretty decent amount of money that we receive back from them and it's one of those benefits of just being long-term partners with the organization.
Is that, is that figure calculated by how many claims you, they work on for us?
No, this is their investments. This has nothing to do with the claims.
Don't we get money back from that, though, normally?
If there are claims where we win the claim, then we would get that money back as well, correct?
So have we got some of that?
But that's separate. We do get some of that sometimes as well.
Where's that at? Where's that shown?
Also, it would be under MMRMA reimbursements. Everything falls into the same area. It is Item 101, 000676 dot 911, reimbursements from MMRMA.
You hear that number amount?
Yes. So, sorry. I want to make sure I give you the correct number. So last year, we received $580,000 in reimbursements as of the date when we did the budget, which was March, I believe. So that was the activity that we were projecting. And we had budgeted this year to receive in revenue $700,000. It's going to be a little bit low if we accept the $500,000 that we're recommending today. In 2022, 2023, we had received $849,849. So yeah, every year, we've been receiving a little bit of money from them.
Counselor Chair.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Chair.
Well, hang on one second. Councilman...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. Okay, I'm going to have to go with this right now.
Chief of Staff, if you don't mind, can you just clarify this for me? So it says here, the net asset distribution is $1,019. So what do they mean by net asset distribution? Is this the money we're getting from them?
Correct. We could get the entire amount if you choose to do so.
Okay.
We can.
So basically, we're saying there's $1,019 coming back. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're taking 5, putting it in the city account, about 519, we're sending it back to them.
We're keeping it in our own fund for future claims that we may receive.
So now the city, so now we did bring 500,000, but we budgeted that we're going to get back 700,000. So we're actually off by 200,000 on the budget.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
220,000.
200, even, 200.
So we're taking 725 and we're bringing back 500 and...
No, we budgeted 700.
Yes.
And I'm recommending that we bring 500,000 back.
Or short.
A little bit, yeah. If you want to amend that to be the 700 that we budgeted, we can do that as well. But again, I was just trying to keep our fund balance in the insurance.
You're saying we budgeted to bring back 700?
Yeah. We estimated that that's what it was going to be, but at the time, I didn't have the proposal from MMRMA and I didn't know what our net asset distribution was. Again, we based it off of what had happened in 2022, which was 849, and what happened in 2023, 2024, which was 579. So we thought 700 was a fair number. It was in between both.
So if we go ahead and do the, bring it up to 700, what would be the disadvantage?
It would mean that we're putting less amount into our retention fund in MMRMA. So if it comes to be that we exhaust our funds there, they will request that we put money back into the fund.
So Counselor Chair.
But we can do that later as well.
So this money going into the general fund, it can be used for anything, correct?
Correct. It's part of our revenues.
Can I put us, put the city at 200,000 in the whole? In fact, realistic.
Correct.
So I think what we should do is we should balance it out at 700.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just to me, and what's the exact number? You gave me the 101, I think Councilman Lonsor wrote down the, what you budgeted for. Can you give me that exact number?
101, 000676 dot 911.
What is the amount that we budgeted exactly for?
700,000.
Exactly.
So yeah, in the motion, the only thing you would need to change is in the net asset distribution, instead of it being 500,000, it would be 700,000 that would be deposited into our bank account.
And 319,499.
And 319,499 for the net asset distribution.
Update that number. Councilwoman, are you okay with amending your motion into leaving...
To Madam Clerk, the city chooses to deposit in its bank account 700,000 and 319,499 will be rolled into the MMRMA retention fund.
You have that?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Constand, do you...
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Counselor Chair, just one quick question. Does the amount of settlement money that the city pays out in lawsuits have anything to do with this amount of money that's worth getting back? I mean, if we paid out $100 million in lawsuits, does that affect this at all?
No. It would affect what we have in our allocation for our retention fund. So again, if all of a sudden, we spend $300,000 in settlements this year, then that's where it would impact it, right? Because then you would have to increase your MMRMA retention fund there.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're going to need a quick study session on MMRMA. Maybe we can bring them in and have them, you know, really break down everything of what's happening so that we, as the body, understand what's happening. Because I feel like there's a lot of miscommunication.
I can schedule that, absolutely.
Let's do that. Maybe, George, let's put that on the list, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Council members, that is 8:38. I just want you guys to keep in mind, we still have a lot more to go through, so I don't want to spend the next, you know, hour on one item. Please, guys. I do give you guys the right to be able to speak and say whatever you guys want, but, you know, I don't mind being here till midnight, but I know that, you know, we have people that I want to go home and people that want us to be able to, that they enjoy these meetings.
Do we want to come in?
No, no breaks, yeah, no breaks, yeah. Next up, we have 9H IT Director Cooper BSNA Contract Execution.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constand. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract with BSNA for online services for the building department, as previously approved by Council Motion 24-256, as outlined in 9H.
Motion made by Councilman Constand.
I second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Saab.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I think two meetings ago, we asked Mr. Cooper to install, give us access, full access to BSNA on our tablets, and he did install, but we were restricted to view only. I don't understand why we got the restricted version when we asked to have full access.
Counselor Chair.
Hang on one second, Mayor. I believe the, Mr. Cooper told myself and Councilwoman Winawski Maxwell that he needed to have permission from the mayor first, and then he sent us an email saying that he would need our IP addresses at home in order for him to be able to install the full access so that you can use it from home and while you're not just here at City Hall. I believe, is that correct?
So I wanted to send that to you to let you know what I was working on. After my discussions with BSNA themselves, with best practices, that IP address is something they are phasing out. So that is why I installed the BSNA Building Department program on your computer so that you could gain the access to what I thought you were looking for. The view-only access is going to allow you to look at everything you need to look at. The edit access, by doing that, again, that is a zero-security practice that, so that there's not any accidental errors, because if there is anything ever happens to that, that's affecting, because that building department affects all, a whole bunch of other programs. A lot of them, they get their information out of it. And again, I'm just going to say, like, what's the edit access needed for compared to the view access?
What's edit access needed for, for the mayor?
He doesn't have, he has you.
We can't, we should be...
By the way, I don't want to edit at all. I told you, I don't even mind having BSNA, because I pick up the phone and call it. I want to know something, I'm picking up the phone and I'm asking the questions. I'm very old school.
Right.
But, you know, you said to me that, no, they have, at the last meeting, you said that they have full access, you're going to give us a temporary access.
So each department kind of is the administrator over their own BSNA, you know, applications. And when a, when a department, for example, the clerk's department needs access to a program, they get view access for it. They don't get edit access for that. It's no different if a resident logged into BSNA online, they don't get to go fill contractor logs into BSNA online because they pay for it. They don't get edit access, they're just viewing the information that's there.
Yes, and I agree with that, but I want you to know, I asked just a nightly friend of mine about the whole BSNA with the whole IP address, and they said that is not something that was actually necessary, you can install the full access.
Correct.
Well, hang on, hang on, because your email that it said that. So I asked my buddy Frank Adoff, who even said, hey, well, say my name, like, you can have access and you don't need to be able to give your IP address to be able to have full access on that.
Correct.
But your email stated otherwise, and so I don't know, did you have the wrong information?
So, no, there, for example, this building itself, when a staff computer goes on, because we have our public IP address, when it goes to BSNA online, they get, we can have the access to BSNA online. Again, trying to explain that there is a difference between BSNA online and the BSNA applications. The BSNA online, going through our IP address of this building, okay, will give them the access without having to log in. That's what I was attempting to do with you, because in my email also, I said I was waiting for the return phone call from BSNA support themselves. After I received that phone call, I directly emailed you guys again to say, hey, that is not what their recommendation is for, and that's why I proceeded to install the BSNA application. So I'm sorry for the confusion. I apologize.
Yeah, Councilman, thank you. Mr. Cooper, so basically, we have two versions, a viewing version and a version that you can edit in, correct?
Correct. BSNA online is only for viewing, correct?
Councilman Saab. I don't know, I don't think we need any edit version here. I mean, what you need it for?
It's just, there's more access to...
Is there more access?
There are multiple BSNA programs, but some of them are, like, cash-receding? Do you really need cash-receding? You know, I was going, I was going through, based on what BSNA online provided you, it's fed from building department. So that's why I gave you building department.
But basically, with the viewing option version, we can see everything everybody sees, but we cannot edit, right?
I'll be honest, you're going to get a little bit more with that.
Madam Clerk, I got a question for you. I know you're familiar with BSNA. You've been around the city for a long time.
A little bit.
Just a little bit. You know, what is your thoughts on that? And I want your honest thought on it.
On access?
Yeah.
Or on the different programs?
Well, both.
Okay, access, I mean, you really only need, you know, you don't, I wouldn't say you want anything to edit.
Yeah, I don't want to edit anything.
But you have a lot of programs that you can choose from. I mean, you have assessing, you have tax, you have delinquent personal property, you have water, you have animal licensing.
You have access to all of that?
No, I didn't do that. I didn't choose those ones, because they're not, that information's not available into BSNA online.
Counselor Chair, respond to...
Hang on one second, Roger, please.
So if you, as a body, directly say, hey, you want all that view-only access, I can go through and, you know, and give that to you. I was feeding you the information, I'm sorry, that's bad terminology.
Yeah. I don't want to feed you or guide you.
I was given the same access because, you know, in that prior meeting, it was stated wanted BSNA online. Building department is what feeds BSNA online. Assessing, the assessment application, I do want to say, there, because that involves with some of the tax and everything, that was one I would like to maybe discuss a little bit deeper, because that provides some private information that's not available to the general public, assessing, because that's taxes and...
I mean, people's taxes can be seen on...
There's extra information behind there for assessing.
I know, but you know what the problem is here? Hang on, Roger.
I'm not trying to hide information, sir.
I know, but I want you to know something. You know, when you say things like, one elected official can have access to it, him and his staff, to say that the seven elected here by the, or I would even include the treasurer and the clerk, who have also been elected by the people, and you're basically saying, well, you know, we want to give, you know, I work for the administration and I can trust the administration, I don't know, I don't really work for you guys, you're a separate entity, I don't feel comfortable giving it to you. I don't think that's your, I just don't feel like that's your role to make that decision, or the mayor for that example, because we are our own entity. We are not the administration, this is the legislative body. And so if the councilwoman, for example, says, I want to have access, or the treasurer or the clerk says, these are elected by the people. 64,000 people are being represented by these, you know, seven, eight, nine individuals. It's not just the administration or the mayor. So I want you to keep in mind, and I understand you're put in a tough position, because also at the last meeting, you said, well, I have to give permission from the mayor, the mayor asked me not to do it. I want you to know that we, as this body here, also make that decision as well. We are not making the decision of what, you know, the executive decisions, but as the legislative decision, yes. I mean, if some of the council members here want access to something, I don't think you're the one to make the decision, or the mayor to say who can and can't have it.
Counselor Chair, to answer your question and what we're discussing...
What a folder, Counselor Chair.
Please, Counselor Chair.
Roger, he didn't even, he didn't even give you the...
May I, Counselor Chair? I spoke to the assessor about that issue that you're discussing now, because I wanted to know the answer, and I didn't know the answer, so I spoke and went through the statute that controls, and it says the requirements of the General Property Tax Act and the confidentiality of real and personal property settlements, statements, allow for access to the assessment database of persons out, cannot, only the persons outside, not persons outside accounting tax or equalization departments. It would be a violation of MCL 211.23 and a violation of Michigan state law, according to the assessor and the evaluation. If some of that tax information is released, now, and the database is, if...
We don't have access to... By the way, if it was released, I can tell you right now, the gentleman's in here, that our officers, our new, our new police chief, if he gives out sensitive information, that's also going to be in violation of MCL or whatever the number that you want to give as well. So I don't, I mean, again, I think, I respect you guys saying things like, hey, if you do this, you can get in trouble. I steal a bike or I steal something from Target, guess what? I'm going to get in trouble. I think we know that information. And so it's saying things like, well, the sensitive information with the assessor's
And so, it's saying things like, well, the sensitive information with the assessor's office, if you leak that information, you know, you can get in trouble. I'm sure that this elected body understands that, and I don't think, you know, the councilwoman or the councilman is gonna come out and say, or the treasurer or the clerk's gonna come out and say, hey, this person's assessed this certain way. Come on, guys. Again, I'm telling you, me personally, if I had, if I want to know something, I'm not checking BSNA. I'm speaking for myself. I'm picking up the phone, I'm calling Rick, I'm calling, uh, Director Comer, I'm calling the IT director. That's just how I operate. Some of these council members say, hey, I don't want to. I wouldn't be able to see it on the computer. They should be able to have that opportunity. That is all.
Unless it violates the state law.
Thanks, Roger. But please, let's, let's keep the comments without going through the council chair, please.
I will. I'm sorry, Council.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, do you want to finish? Do you have access to everything as well as the clerk?
Sorry about that. We have business licenses and animal licensing in our office. But then delinquent personal property, because we have to access that to see if, um, there's any businesses that are delinquent, so.
Do you have that as well, treasurer?
Um, I have access to all the programs that I need for to conduct our business, but it's view only. And I just use it to.
I mean, I don't think anybody needs to be able to edit anything, in my personal opinion. If you want to view something, I think you're entitled to do that, but to be able to once, let's just say, one day, councilman Ahmad wakes up and goes on rampage and says, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and start editing all these things. No, you shouldn't have access. I, I agree.
It's at the end of the day too, and we're responsible for our actions.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I believe that this council member, I think this council body is pretty firm on where they stand. So there is a vote on the table.
There is an audit button too.
What is it?
There is an audit button too, if it wasn't, if it wasn't view only. There's an audit button dropdown that you can find out who changed something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're responsible for, yeah, they have.
But that's why I gave you view only, just because it's how protect that.
Yeah, so I, I think ultimately, uh, if you want to have access to this, I mean, I don't know. We have a vote here. I think we're talking about something completely different. Maybe we could have added a name, you know, and to basically, you know, ask the IT director to give us access, like.
To all departments with the view only.
Yeah.
We said that.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did get off on this a little bit there. Um, the, what, the, the travel expenses for this new, uh, requested contract extension or for three hundred eighty-five dollars? What's, what's travel expenses?
Uh, BSNA online will come down from, uh, Bath, Michigan. So it's their travel expenses to come on down and to, to conduct the in-person training.
So that's, that's all they want for travel expenses is three hundred eighty-five dollars?
That's the contract they did. I'm not dictating how much they want to charge us.
Did they come down last year, in the last, uh?
This is, this is, no, this, this is, again, this is the BSNA online. If you remember during, um, budget hearings, I was tasked by the council chair to say, hey, we've got to be able to let our, our residents to do, to schedule online, uh, building inspections, to be able to do, uh, their work permits online. Um, this is that, right now. So, I literally with, probably within a month, we had, I had that getting to go for it. And actually, along with that, I just want to say, if you, if you actually go through and read it, is actually now we'd be part of the BSNA, uh, pay program that they've implemented, so that if a resident pays their water, their tax, their, any of the permits, the inspections, it's instantly in there for the treasurer department, and the treasurer department is on board with this as one of our payment processors for that. So now they're, they're reduced the task of having to manually import files, now that's all, you know, instantly put in there. So, this is the, this is the training for the building department, because part of what, um, how they're gonna conduct their, their building inspections and their permits about now using online forms. A resident will go to bsnaonline.com, they'll schedule their, their inspection, they can do their building permits, and how we internally handle that now, that's what this training is gonna be for us to help them.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I mean, they're, they're, they're charging, you know, three thousand six hundred for onsite implementation and setup and training. So they're coming down.
Correct. They are coming here.
To come down, they're charging us an additional three hundred eighty-five dollars.
Correct. And, and sir, you actually already approved the, the, the payment for this. This is because, um, I, I didn't put the terminology in there for you to sign, that, that have the mayor and the clerk sign that, so.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Yep. Director, sorry, uh, since you mentioned the building department, when, how long before we go completely online with the building department?
This is, this is part of it. You know, now that, once we can.
After we approve this.
Um, it's conducting, it's conducting the training. Carrie has been working very, very hard um, on some of the things that she knows that she needs to take care of, so that some of the documents can be available, you know, online. Um, it's literally the, the three days of training, and then we click the button once we feel our staff is capable of moving forward with it.
So you're saying, like, within a month, we should be online?
I, I, I can't say that, because we gotta schedule the building department. This is, we have to do three consecutive days with the clerks, so that potentially can impact the building department servicing, uh, the window, I'd say that, servicing the residents. So we have, we have to get this, so I can send it and I can start to schedule between the building department and BSNA, how we're gonna conduct those three days of training.
Thank you, bud.
Any other discussion?
So, are you, do we come to the conclusion that you're gonna give us access to everything?
I, I, I have no problem doing that. That's, that's fine.
Okay, so are we leaving our, I know the mayor's probably going crazy, but can you, can you, can we leave our laptop?
Can I just leave off cash receipting? Do you really need cash receipting? That's where the cash registers.
No.
No, I mean, I don't think, you don't need to hide anything.
Yeah, you said this is under, under the added version. We just, we need the view version for all the department.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, when you, when you log into it, because you log with the same username and password that you're gonna log in with, that you log with on the computers or your email, um, the application launches, like how you, now you have your desk app, you have the folder, you have building department. When I'm done, you'll actually see, there is twelve total.
Okay, let's, let's set that up.
Okay. I will literally go over to my computer, while the computers are here that are connected to the city network, I can actually start the, the installation.
George, set that up, because I'm gonna also have our IT director do a study session with us to, you know, kind of walk us through and teach some of the council members.
So, I'd like, because I, I kinda, I was expecting that. The day-to-day operations of BSNA, I don't really do. I make sure it's connected to the server and it's maintaining. The departments themselves have, know the inner workings of the programs, so they would be the best ones to, to help, help you find the information that you're potentially looking for.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Council Chair, as long as, as Mr. Cooper does not violate the state law.
He's not violating the state law, Roger.
I'm not releasing any information, especially with the assessors that are, that's all. I just want to make sure.
Roger, I, I understand that, and it seems like, you, you know, some departments or some individuals can get, you know, certain access, but you're basically saying that this council can't because it violates state law, and nobody should have any of access. I, I don't, I don't, I don't like that tactic that is several times. You guys can be sued, you guys can be sued, you guys can be, we're being sued everywhere. All over this place, we're getting sued. City, the city has been looked at through this lens of being sued, and we're all over the media. Enough with that, Roger, please. Thank you. You know what else is state law?
Disregard, disregard, Council Chair. It's your responsibility, fiduciary responsibility to take it seriously. If I'm telling you that you're violating a state law, you're risking violating the state's law, please respect my advice. You may choose not to do it and break the state law.
Thank you.
That's your choice.
Thank you, Roger. I appreciate you. I, I respect you tremendously, uh, but I also want you to know, if you went through the council chair, you were telling me you respected me, but you want me to respect state law, but you can't even respect the chambers of this, uh, body. So, I mean, when we talk about respect, let's, let's, please, let's hold ourselves accountable first. Uh, so, Mr. Cooper, are we good with that? I'll go over there and I'll get to work on it.
Thank you. Councilman, let's wrap this up.
You think, uh, BSNA people, when they come in, do you think they can give us a study session?
We'd have to pay for it.
If it's three hundred ninety-five dollars, I think.
That's, that's just their travel. That's just their travel. We'd, we'd have to pay. I think it'd be, I think you'd be better suited for potentially, you know, certain members of, um, of our staff providing some training, you know, for you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Council Chair, they're coming down here for training. Can't you have as many people as you want in the training room?
Well, that's strictly for the, uh, building and engineering department. They're not training you on every other department.
Yes, correct. Okay. Any other discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. A sign of relief. Next up, we have Parks Recreation Director Sauer, purchase and payment of Waddle Park freestanding playscape replacement pieces.
Council Chair? Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the purchase of additional, uh, freestanding playscape pieces for Waddle Park in an amount of seventeen thousand five hundred fifty-three and forty cents, which includes the replacement pieces, installation and removal of broken pieces. In addition, authorize the controller and treasurer to pay for the purchase out of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four parks and recreation budget. Account number six nine one nine eight one is outlined in nine dash I.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I want to thank, thank Director Sauer for taking care of this and, um, listening to council members, including myself and the residents. And, um, I'm a personally thank her for doing this, and it's, I've gotten several calls from the residents that are so happy to see the fence coming down around this pla-, this, this, this park, and, uh, people being able to enjoy it again, and I think this is just a, a first step. I know we don't have the money, but we're gonna keep on it, and I've got a couple of residents that are, uh, interested in having some kind of fundraisers for this park. It's a, it's a local park. It means a lot to the people in that area. It's just, it's not real small. It, it's got a lot of square footage, but, um, it's something that that area enjoys a lot, including, uh, myself and my kids. We go there quite, quite a bit. So, thank, thank you, Director.
Council Chair? Yep. I'm sorry, quick question. Director, I mean, it says here we're getting the money from the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. How does that work? I thought after the budget, the fiscal year is done, all the money goes back in the general fund.
Um, well, generally it does, but if, uh, we have a purchase order, which I've already taken the opportunity to do, we're all set. It's money left that was not spent for the marquee. So, that's what I was using that for.
Basically, you requested that before the end of fiscal year?
I just got a purchase order. If it went through, fine. If it didn't, it was null and void.
So is that okay with the controller, I guess?
That's what we've done in the past.
Thank you very much, Director.
Any other discussion? Thank you, uh, Director Sauer on this. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Sauer, purchase and payment of Waddle Park Engineering wood fiber.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase of two thousand yards of engineered wood fiber surfacing blown in for Waddle Park in an amount of fifty-two hundred dollars. In addition, authorize the controller and treasurer to pay for this purchase out of the twenty-three, twenty-four parks and recreation budget. Account number six nine one nine eight one is outlined in nine dash J.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep.
Thanks again, Director.
Thank you.
This is, this is, that hasn't had that much of a soft bedding in a while. That's gonna be really appreciated.
I also want.
Yeah. There, there was one, at one time.
There is none there than now.
There's none there now, right.
Empty.
I also want to just shed a little bit of light on, uh, you know, our, our, our community activist, uh, Rachel Lapoy, who attends every single meeting, who records every single meeting. I know that this is something that she brought up a little over a year ago. She brought it to your attention and just said, this park really needs some love. It really needs some attention, needs some love. And you know what?
Yep.
Director, you, you took that into consideration. You, you heard from the residents, and, and you delivered. And so, I salute you on that one, and I also thank, uh, our, our community activist, Mrs. Rachel Lapoy as well for that, because she also brought attention to this.
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Director, do you know how long it's gonna take before this project is done?
The first stage of it is done. The ma- major, uh, play structure part, uh, the slides have been replaced, the, um, ladder has been replaced, and a couple of other parts have been replaced. So that was the first thing that you already approved. Um, they actually got this stuff in relatively quickly, so I'm hoping that once this is done, um, it'll be done, hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping a month, month and a half, because I'm having them install the parts as well. So.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, the kids can enjoy it before school.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have ordinance and resolution.
Now, Council Chair, we have nine K now.
Ooh.
We have three more motions.
Okay. Next up, we have nine K, uh, today is the Dearborn Heights Fire Department emergency, uh.
Repairs, remediation.
Re- remediate, I didn't even, I'm sorry.
Remediation and repair.
Mediation and repairs. I have it written down, but it's all scribbles.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I move that, I move to put a motion, uh, to put out for bid, uh, repairs to the fire departments, uh, north and south buildings for mold remediation and roof repairs, and plumbing repairs. Out for bid.
What about HVAC?
HVAC, well, pardon me, uh, mediation.
Well, let's, I want to specify on that.
And HVAC cleaning.
Thank you.
And you got deep cleaning too?
Yeah. Quarterly deep cleanings.
And quarterly deep cleanings.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second, a second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, um, to move forward and getting, uh.
So we have, uh, four different, um, quotes, Council, Council Chair. So we're going for four different estimates. We have the roof, we have the mold, we have the HVAC cleaning and the deep cleaning for the department.
Quarterly deep cleanings. Somebody that can quote us on a quarterly deep cleaning.
Council Chair?
So that we're not just having a quote on getting one cleaning. We should get them to say, maybe, hey, for the next three years, we're gonna charge you for both stations X amount of dollars. Thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, I want to add one thing. You know, you know, if, if a house, uh, a roof is damaged on a house, a tree falls on it or something like that, the insurance company comes out, and the first thing they do is they tarp it off, to prevent any further damage. I think we should look into putting tarping these roofs off, or some kind of temporary tarping or something, to stop the problem right now, even though it might, I don't, I don't know if that's possible on a flat roof.
It's not.
Well, I, I mean, you could make a temporary, uh, gable, keep it off, but I mean, that's.
I got the guy to ask, because I don't know anything about.
I think we should look into, we can talk to, if we get, if we can, I mean, that should be done immediately. Stop the leaking, you know, put, do something to stop it today, instead of, you know, um, going out for bids, that takes two or three weeks. I mean, tonight, it's, I mean, I don't even know if it's raining. I think it's raining right now. Supposed to get three or four inches of rain. And we might get three or four inches of rain next week. And then, we might get three or four inches of rain five more times before we even get all the bids in. This could be months. You know, and it probably will be months, definitely. And so I think we should, first thing we should do is stop the bleeding, right now. Get, get something on there to keep it from, from leaking anymore. A, a tarp, a temporary roof or something. The more it rains, the more damage is done, the more it's gonna cost us in the end.
I, I, I agree.
Council Chair?
Uh, Councilman Saab, who is an expert in roofing.
No, no, I'm just, uh, not roofing. Why can't we file a claim for the building?
Yeah, yeah, good idea, exactly.
I mean, we did, we did on the golf course. Why can't we do it on our fire departments?
Mayor?
Council Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, we already asked them. That's not covered because of the, the way that the building was designed and the way that it was built. You know, so we did approach them before, and, uh, we've actually, when, when we became aware of this issue, you know, we had, uh, the previous attorney to start the process of filing a lawsuit, you know, against that company. But since then, that eve- even that portion is gone, so right now, that, we're on our own. We have to, uh, go to a new station, obviously, but in the meantime, like I said, you know, starting tomorrow morning, I have, uh, somebody's gonna come in, look at that, just to give us, we'll start with the first, at least one or two bids tomorrow, so. But the insurance is not gonna cover that because of the way it was built.
I got a question, real quick. Mayor, hang on, Roger, please. Mayor, my question is, maybe Vaughn, you can answer this. It, it, you know, Wade Trim outsourced, similar to like a lot of the projects we're doing. Wade Trim outsourced this project to somebody that built this fire station, and I don't want to get into the depths of it, but like, so because this company changed their LLC and are no longer in business, we can no longer go after them. All these other businesses that we're working with right now that have an LLC, is there a clause in there, like, even if you close down, like, there's some type of liability that you can be, you know, chased after, or maybe Pat can answer that? Um, because Wade Trim worked, engineered the work that was being done at that fire station. And those are facts, because I, I have the evidence on it. So, I want to know, are we being protected on anything else that we're doing? This was, this, I, I'm, I'm gonna publicly say that Wade Trim dropped the ball on the fire station in nineteen ninety-nine. And now Wade Trim, who's engineering with us still, is doing a large amount of work in the city. What happens when these contractors drop the ball as well?
Yeah, so I can't speak to what happened in, in nineteen ninety-nine. I know that we have, um, on several projects that I've been involved in, we have teamed with architects and where Wade Trim would do the, uh, civil site work, and the architects would oversee and do the building itself. Um, in, in terms of your question directly, which I'm happy to, to, to dig in and, and work with you folks on that as well. Like, uh, there, there's a lot of history there. It's twenty years of, of things that have been happening at the fire station there. In terms of your question about the LLC and protection, I, I can't answer that directly. I know that we make sure that these projects, that there's, like, like all the projects we have on the table here, there's a warranty period. We make sure the bonding's in place, and, and the warranty is in place and insurances are in place. So all that protection is there. Uh, but once we get beyond the warranty period, if, if the, if the, if the contractor goes, you know, dissolves or goes bankrupt, I don't, I don't know the recourse. But I can, I can get the answer to the question.
Council Chair, if I, if I may respond to answer the question. Um, the study I mentioned that was done in two thousand twenty-two tracks the history, uh, from nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, when the, when the property was built. There were a lot, the problem ensuing the, um, the contractor at the time is that there have been a lot of repairs to the building itself, so it becomes convoluted, who caused what damage. Now, the building, the, the, the foundation or the landfill had defects in it, but the problem that the report shows, the hundred seventy-five page report prepared, is that there was so much interference, so much other projects done, it confuses the liability issue that, that, that pertains to it. But one thing Mr. Dibb did say is he asked for an assessor to do exactly what you're saying to do, to, to review when we do projects, to make sure they're in compliance, and that there's oversight, because that, that building, two thousand three, when they, when they, when they did a first study, two thousand four, nineteen ninety-nine, they should have been checking to see what that contractor was putting into the landfill and into the ground.
Yeah.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
While, while Mr. Martin's still up there, um, the, I don't believe that this roof is due to, uh, this problem with this roof is due to poor workmanship. It's twenty years old. I mean, and, and that's a long lifespan for a flat roof, twenty years. So, to, to, to say that this is because, you know, it is poor work quality twenty years ago, I, I don't think that's the truth. The problem is, it was neglected, and, and it was Band-Aids put on it all over. And, and we, we need to, we need to take care of this right now. I mean, I don't know if you know people, somebody like roofers, like roofing company that you could, you know, turn us on to, that, that can tarp it. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of tarping this thing. I see it all the time. I, I have family that live in Florida, and during these hurricanes, they send me to pitch it all the time. Commercial buildings, homes, they're all tarped off. Emergency fix. Put the tarp on it, I don't care how big, the Walmarts have tarps on them. You know, they want to stop the problem. We go in there this week, tomorrow, and we get a company, okay, we're gonna take away the mold. We take away all the mold in this one area, and then next week it rains again, gets all wet, and then, oh, we gotta get them in again. We gotta dry this place out and not let it get wet again, immediately. So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of, first thing, get a, get a temporary cover on this thing to stop it right now. I don't know if you can help us with that or not, but. I don't know if you can help us with that or not, but I think that in the motion, we should put that in. This, you know, you don't let it keep happening again and again and then fixing it again and again. You stop it and it's a temporary stop until we get in there and redo the whole roof or whatever it takes to do it. I mean, that, that's, my fellow council members up here, I think that's the way we should go. I mean, we should get some kind of temporary protection right now for this roof.
We can, we can support you in any way. I can, I mean, we can.
I don't know how we would go about it as a body, who's going to oversee it? Is that something through the administration, is it something through the building department? But I think this is some, this is a serious issue, this is people's health. I mean, you can play around all you want with a golf course or, you know, business here and there, but the, this is people's lives. And these, these are things that are not detectable right now by you sitting right there. You could be affected today and not notice these problems until five years from now. So we got to stop this right now. Or we could get a lot, we could get 100 lawsuits in the future because of problems we had with people working in this building. So we got to stop, we got to stop the problem. I don't know, what do you think as far as, you know, your, your expertise in this situation? You think a temporary tarping or something else would be a good idea or not?
Well, you'd have to look at, so, so. I think it'd be a function of what the cost was versus how much, you know, like you, because you were, you were talking earlier about going out to bid for an actual replacement of the roof. And if it was, if it was a function of you could get the roof temporarily covered that would be functional for a few months at a cost of 5% of your replacement cost, you know, I think that's, that's, that's a feasible approach. If it's like 50% or whatever, 20%, 25, that starts to lose its, you know, the cost benefit value there. But I can work with Bob of the DPW and also Ali when he returns, and I don't know when he's returning.
I think the council is saying like, we want it covered in the next two, three days.
Yeah.
Horrible.
Right, so we, well, we can support, you know, working on that and, and seeing what we can come up with.
Well, can you keep communication with the chair here and you can keep us updated on that? I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have councilwoman and then Councilman Saab. Councilwoman.
I have a possible suggestion. On mobile homes that tend to be kind of flat on the roof, they have a coating you can put on it that will stop any seepage.
I just want to keep in mind, I know the mitts here was like very adamant, they did not want to be in trailers or staying inside trailers amongst firefighters. And you got to keep in mind the firefighters all like really stick together. If you've ever toured one of the stations, they all sit around together, they watch movies together, they eat together. It seemed like he, he said like, we don't want to be put in trailers, so.
Councilor, two, two things, number one, to Councilman Wonsell. Problem is with a flat roof is it's got, it's got drains right in the center of the roof, you know, it's tapered to it. So by us covering a tarp over it, where's that water going to go? It's going to go somewhere else, water's going to always win.
The weakest point.
Uh, second thing is, even as old as the roof is, there's new silicone coatings that you can put on. It's about a half an inch thick and it prolongs the life of the roof for about 15 years. It's just got to be, you got to bid it out, there's options there. The problem is, is that trying to tarp a flat roof, what are you going to do with the water? It's going to sit on the roof, it's going to cause more problems.
You have to pitch it, pitch the tarp.
Yeah, but that means you got to build a gable or a hip for it and that's wasting, wasting, but again, with.
If it like.
The tarp, the tarp can only hold so much weight. Yeah, you got to be like.
You could pitch it toward the drain.
No, no, the drains are in the center of the roofs.
I mean, you can, you can do that.
And then you got exhaust vents that go up on the roof and the fire department trucks.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can look into if it's 5% of the total cost and that can be put in. But I mean, now it's going to be, I mean, two months is probably a pipe dream to get a roof started.
So what I, I would honestly recommend for the department, since we are looking at a new department and, and this is a permanent fix and a long-term fix would be to overlay it with a, you know, like a Brits, uh, firestone or like a silicone for it that goes over that roof.
You have to strip it?
No, 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 it goes, it goes where they prime it and goes right over and it's about a half an inch thick.
Is it stone?
No, no, it's, it's thick, it's silicone, it's about a half.
It's just, it's just a membrane.
It's a new layer right over it.
It's just a membrane right now with no stone or nothing on it.
No, no, you just lay it over, they spray it or roll it, one of the two. And it's this thick, it's about a half an inch thick.
Well, you got, you got insulation damage probably, that has to be addressed.
But if you take out the insulation and then you're dealing with the metal, the, the, no roofer is going to come in and just say, hey, you can fix it because you got to go to the core of the problem. So if you're going to rip off the roof, you're going to rip off the insulation, you're going to have to rip off the metal. And now you're digging yourself into deeper, deeper.
What do you think a roof like that would cost to do?
It's all based on squares and damage.
Let me see, we did a whole replacement on both, roughly.
It's just not to give numbers.
No, I, I would, honestly, I think the best way to do is they'll do any repair areas that need to be repaired before they seal it and seal it over. I mean, there's businesses that are worth a million, you know, a couple million dollars that just do overcoats. And I think honestly that's the best way to go with the fire stations, for both of them.
Well, I, 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 I respect all your opinions and they mean a lot to me. I think we should get someone in there right now and say, hey, what can we do?
A repair, a repair would be the best thing right now. And then we, I, I would recommend the city bid out for, get it just overlaid. It's, it's a fraction of the cost, fraction of it. It's about 40% of overall roof replacement, it gives you the same lifespan. It's a whole new coating on the roof, it's warranted and everything. And once it's put, it's solid, it's about a half an inch thick, it's, it's strong materials, it's, it's, it's a PVC product. But that way, for even the south station, we got until this year for, to get this money, the administration requested, it would hold until then and beyond. So we can do permanent work and adjustments to whatever the department needs. Us just replacing the roofs temporarily or doing a tarp or things is just wasting time.
Do we have any idea how many areas are questioned or causing these leaks?
I don't think, I don't know if he on good.
So any, any legitimate roofing company, Councilman Wonsell, that would go out there, they would have infrared and moisture cameras and they pinpoint every single leak.
Might only be two, two locations, you know, water travels.
Going down to the lowest point. But I mean, any legitimate, real commercial roofer would have infrared and moisture imaging cameras to pinpoint exactly where the leaks are.
I mean, do roofing companies to give estimates, like we start calling them tomorrow and we get a, you know, by the end of the week, we have a couple of companies, they don't, they don't charge for estimates, do they?
Most don't.
Free estimates, right?
Most don't.
Yeah. Let's just put it out there, let's get them out there, start working.
Okay, so that's what this motion is for, so. Let's, let's get, we got nine K and we have nine L, we have nine M, and then we have 10 more other things that we're voting on tonight, guys.
I know, we need to.
Yep, we're doing that, so nine K, I don't know if you wrote this out, ma'am.
So you go out, go out for bid for roof overlay?
Roof overlay, temporary repair, overlay.
You went, wait a minute, we got roof overlay.
With, with including your temporary repairs.
First of all, temporary repair.
Okay, okay, wait a minute. Are we going out for bid to get it fixed?
Yes.
But then we're also wanting to get it fixed immediately before the bids come back.
So, so.
Right, so you got two different, you got two, I'm sorry, you have two different scenarios, two different requests.
If there's a hole, they're going to fix those holes and then they're going to put the, the overlay on top.
So we're going to go out for bid for the four things and we'll go over that.
Yep.
But then you also want to fix the leaking immediately, right?
Yes.
Remediate the mold.
Yes.
Because you can't fix the mold until you fix the leaks.
Right, exactly.
You can't fix the mold until you fix the leaks and it's not worth cleaning out the ductwork because the mold spores are in the air, it's going to circulate way back in the ductwork. You got to get them re-sanitized.
So it's got to be repaired first and foremost.
Repair the roof, so you want to, first of all, repair the roof, that has nothing to do with bidding, right? You just want to.
Well, yes, we have to go for bidding to fix the roof.
It's got to be, it's got to be a roofing company that does this.
I mean, let's leave it for the professionals.
Who's going to be in charge of this?
DPW.
Who make, DPW?
Yeah. He left.
Len?
These are directed to him.
Could we repair prior to replacing? That's what I'm thinking, you guys, that's, do you want to repair and then replace? I mean, like.
We can.
He was saying whether or not.
To be honest, Councilor, we don't even know if it's going to be repaired or replaced. They need to send somebody to see exactly what's going on, whether it's repaired or replaced.
So do we want to authorize the reme- remediation company come out like the mayor was planning on it?
No, you can't, you can't work backwards.
Okay, okay.
You got to have, obviously leave it to Director Conrad, maybe the administration and one of the councilmembers. It could be, it could be Councilman Wonsell and Councilman Saab for that matter. Since they're more understanding and more familiar with roofing. I, I'll have a go to myself, it's okay. I'm just thinking now out loud.
No, 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 that's fine, we just need to get it into the motion so we have it right.
But they have to kill the mold.
Can we, like the mayor was going to have an emergency guy come out tomorrow. Can we put this stat, this somehow, put this as an emergency thing where we can get someone to look at it tomorrow?
They're doing the mold tomorrow, it would be a waste to do it.
No, 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 I'm not saying the mold. I don't care, the mold is, the mold is, mold is done after you fix the roof. There's no sense in redoing the mold every, all the time.
Correct, we're not doing the mold tomorrow.
We want to get the roof repaired, I mean, the mayor said he wanted, he had an emergency situation to get the guy out to do the mold. Why, can we have emergencies, have emergency situation, have the roof repaired? That's what I'm saying.
He's not here?
All right.
It's okay, let's, let's go with a roof repair.
Direct.
Direct, the Conrad and the administration to move forward.
You guys are going to have to repeat this word. Because right now we have.
I will contact Mr. Conrad in the morning.
Right now we have on the table the motion.
Okay.
To go out for bid.
Direct.
Councilor.
Right now we have on the table a motion to go out for bid for the four items.
Yes, including.
So roof, overlay and repair?
Roof, repair, dash, replace, whatever, mold remediation, HVAC cleaning and quarterly deep cleaning for the department. Quarterly deep cleaning.
Quarterly deep cleaning, HVAC cleaning and what did you say about the mold? That was the remediation.
Well, actually, it's mitigation.
Councilor.
What is it? Mitigation.
Councilor.
Yes.
I think the first word should be, city council.
Authorizes.
Auth, no, the.
Request.
Request the bill, Director Conrad immediately to do this. Okay, from, you know, make that into motion.
You got it, Madam Clerk, can you add that?
The comptroller's the one that goes out for bids.
Okay, well, see, there we go.
Okay, they have, so the comptroller's the one.
She's right here.
The com, I'm sorry. It's the comptroller's office that is responsible for going out for bid.
Okay, so then it would be to say.
To authorize the comptroller's office to go out for bid immediately.
Thank you.
Regardless of any, I mean, this is, this will be a city council, hopefully passed motion that they have to abide by. Right?
So we're going to authorize the comptroller's office to go out for bid for the four.
Immediately.
Immediately.
The word immediately is very important to Councilman Wonsell.
You have that there.
Oh, yeah, because you know how immediate.
He has it tattooed.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Just read me that motion one more time, please.
Be ready, have patience with me, okay? To authorize, to authorize the comptroller's office to go out for bid immediately.
Okay.
For.
Hang on, hang on.
One.
Okay, all right.
Roof.
Let her finish.
Overlay slash repair, mold remediation, HVAC cleaning and quarterly deep cleaning.
And, and, and add to that, nothing is to be done until the roof is repaired.
Councilor, I think instead of immediately, we should put by July 12th or something.
But it takes, it takes, it takes time to go out for bid.
You can, no, post it, put it out for bid, I mean, you can post it on bid night.
And then you have to have it out.
Have it done by the end of the week.
But then you have to have so much time to have all the companies to bid.
To come out and bid it.
I mean, we have to post it though, we can post it.
Yeah, but you need the specs, you have to.
Are you happy with the specs, you say?
Yes, if, if, I mean, we need authorization from the city to get somebody up on the roof, well, yes. Honestly, I.
We got to get the ball rolling, you know, we got to get, we can't.
I mean, guys, look, let's, let's just call it for what it is. I know we all want, want to snap our fingers and have this repaired and put up tarps and do it, no. But just, you know, this.
Council, Councilor, I'm sorry, I'm running.
Well, hang on, one second, one second, Councilman, hang on. You got to remember something, we, we want to be able to do this where one, the city's not liable, right? We have to make sure we're doing this accurately and properly. We can't just tell somebody immediately go put up the tarp, but we don't even have specs. We don't, we don't have anything before us. As much as we want to get this done immediately, we have to do it the right way. Okay, so like, and so to say we want this done by July 12th and today's July 9th.
No, I mean, the bid night, post it.
Well, we have to get the specs before we can put up a bid night.
You can't tomorrow, it's pouring, it's raining all day.
You could have people come out, I mean, insurance companies, they don't go out for, they, they don't get specs and stuff before they put a tarp on it. They come out, they got, they got.
You can't tarp it, Mr. Wonsell.
Seal the problem.
Nobody's an expert here on this.
I mean, insurance companies, they don't do that. And I think we should double check and see if MMR doesn't cover this, I can't believe they wouldn't. And that's like, there's insurance claim. What are we paying insurance for?
I agree. Okay, guys, we, we have nine K and a bunch more to go over. What else do you want to add on there? I mean, July 12th is just not doable, we put the word immediately.
Immediately.
It's, it's, you know, I can tell you this, every couple of days I'll send out an email to the administration, CCing all the council, just to get an update on this, how does that sound? I mean, really, I, they, they have to be, you know, realistic, dates and times.
We're going to have to put in there that the, the DPW director come up with specs or, or Wade Trim come up with specs immediately. You know?
Can, can you get a specs on, on that, on those roofs?
I'll get you the specs.
He can do the specs.
I, I don't, I don't want you to pick on that burden, Councilman, and things are just.
We can work to come up with specifications that would apply.
Immediately?
Immediately.
Thank you. Can we get a pro bono for once out of this, out of, out of Wade Trim?
So.
Can we get a, hang on one second, councilmembers, please. Can we, can we, you know, can we honor, can you help out our firefighters? Can you, can you say Wade Trim today was, you know, they're going to give us a pro bono on just these specs? We're trying to work things out over here.
Yes.
Thank you, you know, you've never done that, today's history was made, thank you for supporting our fire department. There you go, Von. So now we're going to have immediately specs done on, on Wade Trim at zero dollars. Who said I don't fight for our taxpayers?
So it's roof overlay slash repair.
Yes, and specs to be done immediately by Wade Trim at zero cost. Thank you, Von.
How about lunch? I have lunch.
Is that okay with you, Councilman Hassan?
Yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Von, thank you for the pro bono. Next up, we have, again, guys, I don't want to spend the next 45 minutes on just one thing. Next up, we have nine IB Electric bill to be paid. I know, Councilwoman.
Councilor, Councilor, I can, I can do the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Are, are you okay, Councilwoman, that's fine?
Uh, sure.
Yeah.
I have details.
I'd like, I'd like, I would like to motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the treasurer to pay IB Electric $23,106 once a release of all claims against the city or anyone or city employee allegedly affiliated with it and an order of dismissal with, with prejudice is received by the city.
Second.
Against the city. When they release, like, from against the city.
The order to be received by the.
What about the other portion?
What is that?
Additional work that was done.
I think that's the only check that we have.
That's all.
Well, there's actually two invoices.
There is another one, guys.
For the record, Dennis Harris, P35791, appearing on behalf of IB Electric. Yeah, there's actually two invoices. $23,106 and a, and a second invoice of $7,000, both for the same premises.
Seven even, sir, seven even?
7,000 even, yes. The 7,000 even was approved after the first, the first work was done. Mr. Vanderplow had some objections to it, we had interviews, we had investigation, we jumped through all kinds of hoops, he finally understood. He attempted to hand me a check that the, that the DTE had made payable to the, to the city of Dearborn Heights. I couldn't accept that check, he gave it to the treasurer, the treasurer deposited the check and now council apparently wouldn't authorize the check to be made payable to IB electric.
Let me just interrupt you for a second, Dennis, and why the council didn't authorize it. And there's a few things that you need to keep in mind. We have a budget. A budget is X amount of dollars, we don't exceed that budget. If a random amount of money gets added into this, into this general fund that we have not awarded this money to come in and now we're saying awarding it to send it out, technically, we're not adding in faith of the charter. So, what initially happened was an employee of the city of Dearborn Heights authorized DTE to send it to, to write a check out to the city of Dearborn Heights and then asked the treasurer to go out and make this deposit. The treasurer reached out to us and said, hey, I received this check and I'm being asked to deposit it. We had kinda said like, hold on, we, we don't have any information on this. And then we find out that there's litigation going on and that you guys are filed in court, circuit court. And then we're being told that we're not filed in circuit court, but then a resident went back to this, you know, went downtown and was able to pull that to show that we did. So, what we wanna make sure is that we're doing here, sir, is we wanna make sure that IB electric gets their money. The city and its employees wanna be protected. Because, because in your original hearing, you had the city of Dearborn Heights and one of our employees that were potentially being sued. And so we wanna make sure that, you know, IB electric is not coming back before us and until there's proper release that the city and the employee are protected, you know, we don't feel comfortable releasing this check. So you, you, in reality, you'd have to give us that information before we can go ahead and release the check.
Okay. I have no problem with that. So basically, the, the, the twenty, the twenty-three one oh six was for part of the work. The other seven thousand was work that was, because then the lights didn't match. So basically, there were some addition, twenty additional lights that were done at three hundred and fifty dollars per light that was in fact auth, that was authorized, I believe, by Mr. Vanderplow, okay? And basically, that's the other outstanding invoice. Chairman, I did send both those invoices to your email the other day.
I did, I received them.
Okay? I also shared with you a dismissal without, we went through this once and I had some involvement with the mayor's office. The mayor said dismiss the lawsuit, I'll get you the check. I said, fine, I dismissed the lawsuit without prejudice. There's the dismissal. It was entered by Judge, Judge Gillis on June fifth. I subsequently sat, and the understanding was, once the lawsuit was dismissed, the check would be forthcoming.
I, I understand, but you gotta also keep in mind, this was not done by this body.
I understand.
So keep that in mind, Dennis.
I will represent to you today that all I need is either, either one check for thirty thousand one oh six or two checks, one for twenty-three one oh six and one for seven thousand. I will represent to this body on the record that I will, that, that, there is no lawsuit pending now, but I can certainly file another dismissal, it is a dismissal with prejudice.
Thank you.
I filed the original lawsuits.
And we, and we list of all claims.
That's exact, yeah, whatever kind of release you want, I'm fine. The only thing we're looking for is payment.
Thank you. Councilman Saab first.
Council chair, the last time this came up, we made it very clear, we had the treasurer's office issue the check back to DTE to issue it back to IB electric.
DTE won't do that.
DTE would do that, but they need an authorization from the mayor and the mayor's refused to send that authorization.
Oh, well, I was, I was told, I was.
We're gonna go back and forth, I know what you were told.
Yeah.
I know what we were told.
Mariana, hang on, Mariana, please.
And just so we enter, because we had two previous jobs that were, that before this, the DTE cut the check directly to IB electric and everything was fine. Mr. Vanderplow reached out and told DTE not to cut the check to, to IB electric, which is why the check.
And the administration, not the council.
Right, okay.
Well, madam, madam treasurer, you have another check for seven thousand?
No, that, I should come up with.
Please.
Hang on.
Okay, so I'll be real brief. The only check that we have issued through accounts payable is for twenty-three thousand one hundred and six dollars, which was based on the council's motion. That check, because DTE called me and said, hey, we want you to hold it, because we had talked about it. They said, we don't know if we can, we can do that, meaning what the second part issuing to IB electric. That check is sitting in my vault locked up.
Which one, the seven thousand or the twenty-three?
No, the twenty-three one oh six.
You've never seen a check for seven thousand?
I have not.
Yeah, so, so Dennis, whatever that is.
All right, and if we, if, so to clarify, to clarify, the seven thousand was not, DTE was not involved in the work for the seven thousand.
Seven thousand was involved by the city that didn't go out for bid and said to go out and finish the work?
The seven thousand was authorized by Mr. Vanderplow for additional lights at the same, at the same twenty-five, six, six thirty-seven Michigan.
Hold on, timeout, timeout, guys, point of order, guys. Point of order, so, hold on, so Vanderplow didn't allow us to, DT to pay you guys the twenty-three thousand. And Vanderplow said, hey, well, come back, I'm gonna hire you again, because these lights don't match. And but, and, and, and we're gonna pay you seven thousand and they didn't come before the council?
There were twen, there were, there were, my understanding, and, and, and council's right. My understanding, based on representations to me by Mr. Vanderplow, is as to that building. And I, I, I'll be the first to admit, I do not understand the inner workings of the city of Dearborn Heights.
Yeah.
I've watched three hours worth of it, I don't want any part of it. So, but I was told. It was represented to me by Mr. Vanderplow that with respect to twenty-five, six thirty-seven Michigan Avenue, that he's the end-all and be-all and basically he had authority with respect to the seven thousand. I'm telling you, that's what I was told.
Yeah, well, let me put it for the record straight, he's not the end-all, be-all. He does not determine how the city spends its money.
He can't pay the money.
Uh, and if that's the case, he could pay the money, but, uh, I can tell you right now, I'm okay that if you put a dismissal with prejudice of the twenty-three thousand and whatever that's, that's from IB electric, we can figure out. You, 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 you know, Mr. IB electric, the owner, can figure out with the administration and Mariana, because they never went out for bids. They didn't come before us. We were always told, one of the reasons why we said okay to IB was, it was gonna cost the taxpayers zero dollars. This was coming from a reimbursement from IB electric, which is why we got the twenty-two thousand.
Which was all true, yeah.
Correct. Now the seven thousand dollars, because the lights didn't match, now they're saying to the taxpayers, well, I didn't like the aesthetics of things, I'm gonna charge the taxpayers.
I think there was more to it than that, but basically, the decision was made.
That was never brought to us, I mean, neither was even, I mean, none of this was ever brought to us. And so we're going to work here hand in hand.
I'll acknowledge all that.
Thank you, Dennis. So can you tell us that you're gonna, you know, you know?
Well, let's, once we, I mean, the motion says, once we have a release of all claims and a dismissal with prejudice, treasurer will authorize to write that check.
But for the twenty-three thousand, not for the seven thousand?
Yeah, twenty-three one oh six.
Council chair, we already, we would have to amend this motion to resend the one authorizing the treasurer to issue that check back to DTE.
Council chair?
Okay, because we have that motion, right?
The motion read, and I'm going to put that motion forward.
You didn't have an amount on there?
No, not the amount. The motion read that whatever, whatever the amount was, the twenty-three or twenty, whatever thousand it was, that it would be sent back to DT as soon as the mayor authorized and told DTE that we're sending the money back.
Right, I have it right here.
I know, I know, I know.
Do you want me to, do you want me to tell you what that one was, because, okay?
Hang on, so we can add to this motion to say we're sending that other one.
Okay, let me just read what this one has, because we already have directions for the treasurer.
I know, but councilman, like, what do you want us to think, you're going back and forth on this?
Not going back, it was, it's not, the council did.
Yeah, it is, it is, this guy's, he's, he's telling you right here, he's ending all prejudice. Basically, IB electric is getting the money that they did the work for. They're not suing any of our employees, they're not suing the city. Whatever happens with that seven thousand dollars, that's between him and Vanderplow. I mean, I, I don't understand, like.
Like, council, council chair, I, I think there's a.
By who?
I, I don't think Vanderplow.
Roger, point of order, come on, please. I don't, guys, this meeting is getting way, way too long. And all I'm asking is, madam clerk, as far as the rescinding one, I'd like to add it to this motion to be able to rescind the councilman's last one. Removing the seven thousand dollars, because Mariana, you need to figure that one out. I'm telling you right now, that seven thousand dollars, they didn't go out for bids, didn't come to the council and we're not just gonna spend money the way, based on the way the administration wants to spend money. All this spending without coming before the council, it's kind of way over, it's kind of way over everybody's head. Same thing with that motion that you guys brought forward on MMRMA today, saying, without any more approval of the council. That's, this stuff needs to come to an end, it's gotta stop. Because look, we're here at nine forty, we have residents all sitting here waiting around, people, you have over seventy viewers online, council members going back and forth. This is all because you didn't, nobody's respecting this body. It's gotta stop, so that seven thousand dollars, sir, figure out what you wanna do with that. But I'm gonna tell you right now, Roger, hang on. That seven thousand dollars, don't bring it before us, councilman, I know you wanted the mayor to go back and call DTE. Let's be realistic for a second, let's take our foot off the gas a little bit. Let's just all relax for a second, realize that we, we can't keep this bickering back and forth, oh, well, I want the mayor to do, I want the mayor to do it. Forget the mayor. At the end of the day, IB electric did the work, he wants his, he wants his reimbursement. The twenty-three thousand dollars did not come from the taxpayers. The twenty-three thou, hang on, the twenty-three thousand dollars came from DTE. Let DTE give it to the man who did the work. The seven thousand dollars, that's a whole different discussion.
That's what I'm saying, let DTE give them the money.
But they already gave them the money. Vanderplow went around it and contacted DT and said, give it to the city of Dearborn Heights. He's wrong, he shouldn't have done that, but guess what, we're here to make the, we're here to make the fixes.
Council chair, that is not correct. Paul Vanderplow did not hire, um, IB electric to do the work to begin with. What happened is, we couldn't find out who hired them directly to bring, and to do the work at the justice center.
Was, was.
Now Vanderplow investigated to find out who did the original agreement and contract with them and that's what the investigation, that's how he got involved. Now the seven thousand, I don't know about him authorizing anything else, but the lights were wrong.
I don't think the man's lying on the record.
He did a full investigation to figure out who started this.
Right, your, your statement is true. Vander, Mr. Vanderplow had no involvement in the initial contract for the twenty, for the twenty-three one oh three. To, and I don't think you're gonna be able to send the check back to DTE.
I know you're not.
You already have the check, it's made payable to you, it's, it's in the vault. Just write us your check for the twen, for the twenty-three one oh, one oh three.
I, listen, I, I got, I got wait trim to waive us today on specs. Are you gonna waive the seven thousand dollars?
I'm not waiving seven thousand dollars. They do a lot more work for you guys than I, than I do for IB electric.
Okay, all right.
Hold on, send the money to them.
Look, hang on, so I also wanna make, just a few corrections with Roger. IB electric has done work for the city without any prior authorization. When the mayor asked them to do city hall, this is before you were here. I remember this, because I made the vote, this is before many of the council members were on here as well. Um, and then we also had, um, them do the library also without prior investigation. Just hang on, Roger, for a second. This additional seven thousand dollars, if we're not getting reimbursement and it's costing the taxpayers, then it should've went out for bids. And if, please hang on, Roger. And if this gentleman is telling me that Director Vanderplow told him he was the end-all, be-all when it comes to the spending and, and what's happening on Michigan Avenue, well, let's, let's remind him and, and chief, I'm asking you, but that's not how that works when it comes to spending the money.
Council chair, but I said there was an investigation, is who did the contract? Nobody can identify.
Why, why did we wait, why did we wait till the job was done to investigate?
Council chair, please.
Was Vanderplow not there for three weeks when the lights were being installed?
It was not identified who signed the contract or authorized to begin with. Nothing to do with anything in the past.
Okay.
Nothing to do with anything before I got here.
Roger, my question.
On this, on this contract, there was no identification who authorized it, exactly what you're saying.
Okay, great.
It never went to council, it never went to the administration, it never went to the police department, it never went within the people who have authority to make the decision.
Roger, okay, let me speak for a second.
That's my point.
We are not in a court.
Vanderplow can come in here and you can ask him.
Come on, Roger, point of order, man. Come on, Roger, come on, we're not in a court, stop raising your voice.
No disrespect, nothing else to say.
Please stop, I just wanna ask you, my question is, and I don't need you to respond to me, but I will tell you this. Director Vanderplow was working inside the facility while these individuals from IB electric were doing the work and he watched them. He waited till the job was done and when it was ready to be paid, he then contacted DTE and said, hey, don't cut the check to IB electric, cut the check to the city hall. Because, hang on, because we are doing an investigation. He should've, he should've stopped, looked at the workers and said, who brought you guys?
The lights were not matching, every employee was complaining about it.
Why are you guys here? Come on.
That's why it had to be done, because we were all going blind, looking at this light, no one knew where it came from or how it came by. We talked to Judge Turfee, they did a full investigation, we can figure out who authorized it. Because it was the wrong lights that came in. So that's why it had to be redone. There's no about and control, and that's, that's what you can do, that's what the chief ordered him to do, to find out.
I'm gonna tell you guys. Twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars, I'm all for supporting, the seven thousand dollars, you can, you can.
We'll, we'll get that.
Whatever you gotta do to figure it out, you can figure that out. Councilman, amend that motion, resend, uh, uh.
Motion twenty-four two five zero.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four dash two five zero.
Two five zero.
So you want me to amend, amend it first? Okay, I'd like to motion to amend, uh, motion twenty-four dash two five zero.
To resend.
To resend, motion two four dash two five zero. And motion that Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the treasurer to pay IB electric twenty-three thousand one oh six dollars once a release of all claims against the city and anyone or city employee, allegedly affiliated with it and an order of dismissal with prejudice is received.
Just wanna make this clear, you're, you're leaving the city council, I mean, the city alone and any employees that are involved in the city, including Mr. Vanderplow.
That's, that's fine.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by? Council, councilwoman Breyer?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Council chair?
Yes.
Can council chair, Colonel, kindly give us his verbiage?
Yes, we'll give you that verbiage.
Thank you.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, madam clerk, please take roll call.
Um, sure. Sorry. Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Sam Wanso?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Robert Hansen?
Yes.
Inmo Beijing?
Yes.
Motion carries six.
Thank you. Next up, we have nine AM CDBG, uh, uh, CDBG, uh, department raises. I believe this is like our third time asking them for the raises, I don't wanna spend too much time, but they're supposed to go from thirty-five dollars to forty dollars. Madam clerk, can you find that same motion?
I got the figures.
You got it.
I got the numbers.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I re, I recommend that they make a motion that city council approve and distribute raises that were voted on at several prior meetings to the CDB department, CDB, CDBG department. Um, the, uh, the director, ninety-five thousand dollars annual salary. The grant coordinator, thirty-eight dollars an hour, part-time position. The project coordinator, thirty-five dollars an hour, part-time position. And the program coordinator, twenty-five dollars an hour, part-time position. And I'd like to also include that this pay be paid retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-three, when this was originally approved by city council.
Second. Motion made by councilman Wanso, seconded by?
Councilman Ahmad.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Council chair?
Yes.
There was, you know, eight, eight A was removed, there was a budget item and I, I had two things I wrote on my notes to talk about on eight A and this was CDBG was one of them.
We can, we can get to it right before, uh, public comments from council members, I'll let you speak on it then.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have ordinance and resolutions. Treasurer Hicks Clay in resolution establishing a city donation policy, I love this.
Council chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution establishing a city donation policy per the Michigan Community Foundation Act, Public Act thirty-eight of two thousand seventeen, providing MCL, uh, one twenty-three dot nine oh five one, that a municipality may receive and own a donation that is made for public purpose as outlined eleven dash eight.
Second. Motion made by councilman Ahmad, seconded by councilman Saab. Uh, any discussion?
Council chair? Uh, per, uh, recommendation from madam treasurer, would like to table this.
Well, I was gonna say, may I, council chair?
Go ahead, please.
Um, you can refer it back to me, but I'd like to put it on the agenda for seven twenty-three, twenty-four meeting. If that's okay.
Madam Clerk, can we put it on the agenda for next meeting, please?
Just carry it over.
Did you, you want to refer it back to?
So we're, so we're, we're tabled, can we just table it till seven twenty-three?
But then you need to remember to make a motion to bring it on, to not, yeah.
Or you can refer it back to the treasurer if you want, and then it's up to her to put it back.
Okay, so we need a motion to refer it back to?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion to refer this, uh, eleven A back to Madam Tre, to the Treasury Department?
You have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor, so you want to amend that motion to refer that back to?
So I, I did the motion, so should I amend it? So I would like to amend the motion to refer it back, uh, to the Treasury Department.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by myself and seconded by Councilwoman Linowski Maxwell.
No.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Council. May I just share that the reason we, this is a policy that we really need to have. So I do want to bring it back on July 23rd, council meeting. Uh, this is something that, um, to respect to our counselor, wanted to discuss with me. We will, and we'll have it ready for you then.
Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. Uh, moving on to eleven B, Council Chairman Baydun, resolution regarding sending information requisition from Michigan Department of Tre, to Michigan Department of Treasury.
Council Chair?
Uh, Councilman Saab?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution regarding sending information requi- I'm so sorry, this is reprinted over.
Requisition.
Let me. Requisition form to Michigan Department of Treasury. Um, resolving that, A, that the City Council of Dearborn Heights adopt a resolution regarding sending information requisite form to the state, to the Michigan Department of Treasury. B, the city con, that, B, the city council authorize and direct special legal counsel Gary T. Miyake to, uh, want to assist with the city council in this matter. Two, to perform all necessary legal services of the city council to send information requisite form to all related information and the documents to the Michigan Department of Treasury, of local audit and finance division. And to perform all necessary legal services that are otherwise consistent with this information. Requisition form resolution, the city council also has previously poorly retained special legal counsel that this information recognitions.
Requisition.
Requisition form resolution shall be deemed and treated as a further independent act of, is that retention?
Yes.
Of special legal counsel by the city council pursuant to the city charter section five one three.
J.
I can't tell if that's J or I.
It's a J.
I, J?
Yes.
And the unlikely event that any previous act or retention may be ruled to be ineffective.
As outlined in eleven B.
As out, as outlined in eleven B.
A motion by Councilman Saab, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Chair Baydun. Uh, whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, hold on. We're gonna watch the discussion.
Any discussion? Yeah, any discussion on this? Well, since I brought this, since I brought this forward, Roger, hang on for a second, please. Thank you. Since I brought this forward, uh, I want to make, you know, something very clear here. One, nobody's above the law, and nobody should be spending taxpayers' money without the approval of this legislative body. And if for too long and for too many times, we've allowed it to kind of slip away and we're just like, you know, churning the cheek on this one, it's not happening no more. Um, you know, most recently, we asked for redacted information from, uh, our directors. And our HR director had a five thousand dollar bonus, which was never approved by this council. These are the facts. Um, it was told to us by the temporary or the, yeah, it was, it was, what was his name, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, intern.
The intern comptroller, who actually told us this information. And look, I'm, I'm no attorney, but, uh, you know, I know that I've reached out to the Treasury Department who has said if this is, uh, any factual, send that information and get the approval by this body. And if it is true, they will investigate and send it over to the Wayne County and then have Wayne County look into this, or prosecutor's office. Um, I know that we, this body did not approve any raises. This body did not approve any bonuses. This body, this body actually denied everything until the police and our TPOAM employees received their budget, even though they were, we said we were being, you know, negotiating. In reality, we weren't. We know that the police department and our TPOM, our union employees did not receive any raise, and they were offered a one percent raise for that. Um, and so we churned away all raises and bonuses. Just somehow through the, I don't know, somehow through the way a five thousand dollar bonus was given. Um, there are other ones I believe that are also out there. Um, but I think this is the first step in just making sure that everybody's being held accountable. And we have the right proper policy and procedures that, uh, everybody is following. Any other discussion on this?
Council Chair?
Roger?
Thank you, Council Chair. Under, um, five point one three F, it says, "Corporation councils shall be charged with the responsibility of calling to the attention of the council and the mayor, all matters of law and changes of developments therein affecting the city." On the J, it says, "A special counsel is for a special matter, but he is of counsel to the corporation counsel, does not act independently, and this has not been discussed with me. I would not approve it for these reasons, with all due respect." First of all, we did give five hundred dollar bonuses in December to the TPOM because of the contract issues and the collective bargaining. All those employees got the five hundred dollars around Christmas. Secondly, on the HR two-two-six, which is the general ledger for salaries, on the one oh one two-two-six seven oh six zero zero zero, the budget for the HR department was initially a hundred ninety thousand. You reduced it to a hundred sixty thousand. On the BSNA, they actually used one hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars and five cents. That was, so it was a surplus of thirty-six thousand. Now, the HR director, per the mayor, negotiated seven contracts, eight actually, that were lingering for two to three years and resolved them and settled them.
Council Chair, that's irrelevant, that's whatever.
That's where the bonus came in for the, for the five hundred dollars that problems in December for TPOM. Now, the mayor has the authority to reward or give bonuses to people. It's within the budget. So that language, no such bonus was ever authorized in the city budget. That's written on the document. That details of complaint is incorrect, misleading, and deceptive. And it opens the city for liability if the HR director chooses to sue us or go after us. So I'm just putting for the record that this is defective. It's, it's contrary to the charter, and it does not, cannot be authorized by someone that designated Mr. Miyake, who has no authority or standing to do so. This is not a contradiction between the council and the mayor. The mayor has the authority to do it by the city charter, and it's being violated by this document.
Thank you.
There is no wrongdoing.
Are you done? Thank you so much.
I'm, sir, thank you.
Do you know how much money the president makes annually? Do you know how much money the President of the United States, do you know how much money he makes annually?
Six hundred thousand.
Thank you, Councilman Kasten. He makes four hundred thousand dollars. You know what he cannot do? Get a five thousand dollar bonus. The President of the United States of America can't get a four, five thousand dollar bonus. Hang on, Roger, point of order, I let you speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Come on, please. No, 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 I'm not asking you a question, I'm giving you a rhetorical question. Okay, so I want you to know, if the President of the United States can't get a five thousand dollar bonus, our HR director, who is no longer with the city of Dearborn Heights, should have never gotten a five thousand dollar bonus without the authorization of this legislative body. Plain and simple. Any other discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
Uh, Roger brought up a point where it, the money was in the budget. So anytime our, our Parks and Rec Department, they have the money in the budget, they come before us and ask us how to spend that money.
Correct.
So just because in the budget doesn't give you the authority to spend it any way you want.
One hundred percent. I agree, Councilman. Guys, I don't want to go too much into this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please take roll call. I just do want to say to the Councilwoman, uh, this is, you are saying basically that the mayor should make an authorization without you as a legislator, where you should give up your powers, uh, to the administration, then what is the point of having this legislative body?
There was something involved in one of our closed sessions regarding.
Nothing ever said five thousand dollars, madam. And I can tell you something, if that's the case, then we should open up those, uh, comments that were happening in a closed session to deem us, uh, being mistaken. But I can tell you right now, nothing in a closed session has ever been said, "We're gonna give five thousand dollars for a close, to a," and if they, we did, that would be violating the Open Meetings Act. Yeah. Cause, cause nothing was ever supposed to be talked about, somebody's, uh, pay inside of a closed session. That'd be violating the Open Meetings Act, Councilman. I just wanted to give those last comments. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Sam Wenzel?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Kasten?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Inmo Beidu?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Okay. All right. Next up on the agenda, we have Councilman Saab, resolution regarding purchase of additional flock cameras.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab?
My papers are all chewed up by the printer. Thank you, uh, Councilman. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution to purchase fifteen additional flock cameras funded through the forfeiture fund. Um, so I just want to make a change just before I start. I actually had a, a couple emails between me and Chief Swope. We're gonna go up to twenty cameras on them. That's the recommendation by the police department. So we're gonna change that to twenty cameras. Um, one is the Dearborn Heights City Department, uh, Police Department is hereby directed to purchase and install twenty additional flock cameras at strategic locations throughout the city. Uh, the cost associated with the purchase and installation of these cameras shall be covered by the forfeiture fund. All this directive is to be executed with urgency and prop, and prop, properly enhance the city's public safety measures. Uh, the police, number four, the police department is, is to give, uh, city council an update with thirty days on the passing of this resolution. Uh, the clerk is hereby instructed to certify and sign this resolution upon passage and ensure the immediate implement, impla, implementation as outlined in eleven C.
Motion made by Councilman Saab?
Support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell?
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
Uh, for the residents here and on Zoom, can, can, uh, we describe exactly what the flock cameras are?
Sure. And Mr. Chief?
Well, before the chief gets up there, I don't know if you've ever seen that video in Dearborn where the guy was doing, uh, he was doing, um, donuts inside the parking structure of the garage of the city of Dearborn. A flock camera caught the camera. The next day, the mayor and the police chief came out and said, "We've got, we've identified the individual. We've got on our flag camera, we've impounded the car, and the man has been, you know, charged and put in jail." You know, that would be an example of what you can use with the flock cameras.
Yeah, so the, um, the flock cameras are a great tool, as Councilman, um, Saab says, for, uh, for law enforcement. We currently have a few, um, up in our city. I think we, we might have four. Agencies around us have, you know, an additional hundreds, right? You know, with Westland and I think, uh, Livonia, I believe might have some. But, um, Dearborn has a ton, Garden City. Um, so with the addition of our twenty, um, we're able to, um, place them in strategic positions based off of data, and then we're able to, um, obtain information on when a certain vehicle, um, passed a certain location, right? Then we're able to, um, solve crimes, especially there's, especially helpful, like, uh, you know, after robberies or after, um, you know, after robberies or hit-and-run accidents. All we need is a little bit of, um, data on what color the car was, uh, maybe what kind of car, and then we compare it to the license plate information. Um, there's no pictures of, um, of people or anything like that. It's just license plates. Um, and then it will actually tell us, we actually have them in our police cars. Every single police car has a, um, a flock, uh, or I'm sorry, a camera that, um, that obtains license plate information, and it alerts us to stolen cars. So if a stolen car drives by, a flock camera, the San Van Born, it'll, all our officers get a notification that says, "Hey, this green stolen car just drove by this camera." And then we can deploy officers to that location.
So it would like, you could program, say if there was a bank robbery and they got away with a blue Mustang with license plates one, two, three, four, ABC. You could program that in there and then it could pick up that and then notify you.
Yes.
It just doesn't, I mean, it doesn't read, it, it's just like a license plate reader sort of?
That's exactly what it is. It's a camera, and as license plates, you, you pass a car, you know, the license plate will be, um, identified by the camera. Um, or if cars are parked in driveways, it identifies those too as our dri, our officers drive by. But in regards to these twenty, they're stationary, so they're gonna be on poles.
Are you gonna have someone warn, you know, cause all the ones that are?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have them strategically placed. They're all throughout the city. I think Councilman Saab, I showed him some of the locations. Um, so he, um, I think he sort of knows some of the spots. I think he can probably share that with you. Um, and we're gonna put them all over the city. Cause right now we have them, you know, up Telegraph, and I think we might have a couple on Van Born. But, uh, we need them on the northeast section of the city, on northwest section of the city, um, so we can get people coming in and out. Because our residents, as we all know, are, are normally great people. Um, a lot of the crime that's come into our city is coming from people who are ending or entering our city. So it's great to have these cameras.
Council Chair?
That's Councilman.
I'd like to take this time to congratulate Chief Swope in your new position.
Thank you.
And this is, this is, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure people might have the misconception that this will take video of cars speeding and then you can look at it. It doesn't do that, right?
That's correct. It does not. So if, let's say a robbery happens and we have the plate number, or even a partial plate, um, we could go into, uh, the system and, and just type in the plate. Um, it doesn't have to be like a stolen car. It can be a hit-and-run accident where that's something we normally wouldn't put into our law enforcement information system, where officers wouldn't be notified if we type in a plate like, "Hey, that's a wanted car." But in flock, we can do that. So if there was a hit-and-run vehicle that took off, we can actually put a plate in there, um, from our department. And agencies all across the land will be able to see it and tell us when they.
Hooked up altogether.
Yep, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Council Chair? Just wanted to add, I got a few emails from residents about privacy. So as everybody knows, there's no expectation of privacy in public car parties. And these only pick up plates. I mean, if, uh, it's a crime deterrent, it's not for us to collect information or see what you're eating in your car if you're texting. Strictly license plates and, uh, you know, if somebody's driving recklessly, hits a kid on the street, the cars go in east, and there's a flock camera heading, you know, he's going the opposite of it. It'll pick up the plate and it'll tell the department which way he's going or what part of the city he left or came in from. So I believe they're very helpful. And I think the detective bureau could use these the most.
Thank you.
Council Chair, I just had one thing. We've spoken with the auto theft unit. I used to run the auto theft unit, prosecutors. They're very excited about this with the stolen cars and you, uh, work in conjunction with Dearborn and the other cities as well.
Thank you. And again, I think also, uh, Chief, you can use this, you know, like other communities can be able to use their resources, like if somebody's stealing a car out of, say, Redford, and they bring it through Dearborn Heights, like, will we be able to be, say, "Hey, this stolen car that was out of Redford"? Will they, or no?
Yeah, no, I, it works great because, um, a lot of times when people steal a car in our city, they have already stolen a car from another city. They drive it to our city, dump it, and pick up another stolen car.
Really? Is that how they do it? I always wondered.
Yeah, yeah, so they do do that sometimes.
I always wondered, how, okay, how'd you get there?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, that happens, right? So, um, so yeah, so we'd be able to sort of track that stolen car as it drove down Telegraph from maybe, you know, Redford's cameras or Dearborn's cameras and our cameras, and sort of, play-by-play all the way until they dumped our car. And then we watch our car go back out of the city and we track it back out. So it's, it's great.
Yeah, that's good. Um, seeing that this is late and long, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, next up, Councilman Saab, resolution regarding city council oversight and approval of Dearborn Heights Police Department budget changes.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution regarding the city council oversight and approval of the Dearborn Heights Police Department's budget changes as follows. On the city, uh, the council approval for budget changes, any proposed changes to Dearborn Heights Police Department budget must be presented to and approved by city council. This includes but is not limited to adjustments in funding, reallocation, resources, modification to financial plans. Two, programs, divisions, units, and overtime modification. Any removal or significant modification of programs, division, units, or overtime within the Dearborn Heights Police Department must be brought before city council for approval. In such cases, a budget amendment must be submitted to ensure that the funds can be appropriately relocated, reallocated, and accounted for. Three, prohibit and unauthorized fund movement. The Dearborn Heights Police Department is prohibited from reallocating funds to any other purposes without the explicit approval of the city council. Any proposed movement of funds within the department must be submitted to city council for review and approval. Uh, number four, quarterly budget reports. The Dearborn Heights Police Department shall produce and submit a quarterly budget report to the, to the city council every ninety days to ensure ongoing transparency and accountability. Effective date this resolution shall take effective immediately upon approval. And let the city clerk authorize and sign, uh, this resolution as outlined in eleven D.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.
Council Chair?
Any discussion?
Yes, this is just for the past couple weeks, there's been, there's been such miss, like, false information about we removed millions of dollars from the budget and took away overtime and units and everything like that. This is not true. And, uh, I want to make this resolution, actually, if we can, uh, retrodate it back, um.
Can't retrodate it back, it's been done.
Okay. Well, then I would like to add another, um, revision of this.
Amend it.
Amend it and add that anything that's been removed in the past fifteen days be, be implemented and added back.
Well, let's, let's hang on for a second, Councilman. And since we're here for discussion, let's have a little quick discussion. And I, I want to just make a few things, Chief, and I know you probably want to speak for a second. We also all have to know our roles, right? Like I said earlier, like we gotta let our foot off the gas. Sometimes we gotta let our foot off the gas and kind of just remember what our role is. Our role isn't to say, you know, you know, that what, what the chief does as far as his implementation happens. You can give a recommendation. You can say, "I'd like to see more TSA or TSP, whatever you guys call it, I'm sorry." Or, or all these different, you know, detectives, or anything of that nature. What we cannot be the one to do is say, "Chief, you have to do this. Under our, under our supervision, you have to do this." There needs to be a, a separation of power to some degree. We are not the, you know, all-in-seal. Like, that's not our job. We are not the, you know, all in seal, like, that's not our job. Our job is when it comes to money, it comes before us. If, if the chief wants more money, he can't spend more, like those three positions that were happening during the budget that everybody said we defunded the police department, no, we said bring it back before us, because that's, you know, according to our former police chief Jared Hart said, in, in an email, or in a press release to everybody, which I felt, and I'm gonna say to myself, it was extremely cowardly, by saying things like the council is defunding the police department, that is a complete lie. The council asked the fire department and the police department, can you help the mayor get $75,000, $75,000 each of our, your budgets? If you want these positions, come before us, apply for those positions, go through civil service, and have those positions. Nobody ever defunded the police department, nobody ever said, we don't want school resource officers, but if the police chief at the time, or our current police chief feels that, hey, I have to work amongst the amendsment of my budget, I only have X amount of dollars, I have to spread it equally, I have to spread it thinly, well, that's the role of the police chief, that's not the role of the Councilman Sob, or Councilman Bedun, or any of, or the mayor. It's, that's not our role, that is the police chief's role. Nobody can tell the fire chief how he needs to operate his department, nobody should be telling Director Conrad how he operates his department. I think there's, I appreciate this, I think there are some things that we have to take out of it, but I do agree that the, like, some of the things that you have in here, if they want to spend more money, they have to come before us, because in the past, chief, and I, and oh, you and I have had this conversation, that we said we were gonna work hand in hand so that we don't fall into these kind of rabbit holes, that if you guys need more money, or you have to spend more money, you either do a budget amendment, or you come before us and you request it.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, having the conversation with the chief yesterday, he has some future realistic things that he could do where, hey, if I can, if I can, you know, take X amount of dollars, we can maybe renovate, you know, bring in some more money to the city, then he can use that extra money so they can afford more overtime, or afford resource officers, or afford things so that like the churches and the mosque and the synagogues can all have protection at these places of worship. So we've had this discussion yesterday, but I think we also have to keep in mind, our role is to stay in our lane to a certain degree. The chief can't come and tell this, you know, like, for example, what just happened with Vanderplough, where he said, you know, supposedly the allegation is Vanderplough told him, spend the $7,000, said spend the $7,000 in lighting, which I don't know if it's true or not.
It's not true, but...
But, but this is what was said, that is not Vanderplough's position. But the same way, I can't come and tell, you know, Chief Swope, hey, you know what, you need to arrest this guy, no, that's not my role, I'm not a police officer, I'm not, I'm code certified, I am not the police chief, I have zero experience on that. So I think we need to be careful what our role is as legislators, and what roles are as each director, chief, and officers, and firefighters, and things of that nature. So we have to be careful on that. To say things like, well, I want amended to go back and he can't eliminate any of these positions, that's, that's their budget, they have to make certain decisions.
Councils.
And I think you have to agree to that as well, Councilman, you want some of these things, I agree, but to say things like, they can't get our school resource officers, it bothered me, it bothered, and to be honest with you, I got a phone call from every superintendent that said that was cowardly, that, that he picked up and said to everybody they were limiting school resource officers, because really, the school pays 50% of that, now you're, you're putting children, thousands of children's lives in jeopardy, when Chief Hart knows specifically how we felt about our schools and how we wanted more officers at our school, because he showed up to the schools. But I think that was really a political tactic that was being done by, by the former chief, but I don't want to, you know, leave him with any hardship, so I wish him the best in all his future.
Council Chair, the purpose of this resolution was because a lot of the stuff that was put out was never touched in the budget. It was more of a retaliation for the budget being passed with a...
It was, 100%, I said it was cowardly.
So all this is, is bringing back the, I mean, I just want to know where we discussed resource officers during the budget, where did we remove them? Where did we defund the positions?
The good news is, we have, we have a different chief at this point.
And I respect that, but I'm, and what I'm saying is that who defund, who moved those positions out?
Moved what positions?
The resource officers, or told to bring back the DEA officer, or the traffic unit, or the traffic theft unit, who, who moved that?
That was done by the former police chief, you know, we have a new police chief.
I, I respect that.
Yes.
But those positions are not there right now.
Have you had a conversation with the police chief?
I have not, I know, I had an email.
I'm standing right here if you have a question.
I had a conversation with the police chief.
So is this, is this...
I mean, this was, this was put a week ago.
So, yeah, so I mean, I've been, I've been in this, in this position for 36 hours, 36 hours, right? Going on a little bit more now, right? So first of all, I just want to put on the record that, you know, Chief Hart, former Chief Hart is, is not a coward, all right? And I guess everyone has their own opinion, but I think a lot of people that know him across 33 years of, of great law enforcement activities, that he demonstrated that he is not a coward, he's actually a hero, and I think he's done a fantastic job throughout his career, all right, and he should be commended for his service. So, you know, with that being said, there are some, some things that, you know, with that budget we're given, that we had, you know, we had to make moves on, right? When I say we, you know, it's, it's the police department administration, okay? When we're talking about, you know, a $75,000 cut, it's truly not a $75,000 cut, because our, our budget, we spent 1.7 million dollars in overtime last year, right? And I think the comptroller made some, you know, some amendments, budget amendments throughout the year. But with that being said, the way it was done, it was, it was different. So at the beginning of last budget year, we had 103.5 full-time equivalents, so FTEs, like 103.5 employees, right? So we only had so many employees, so therefore, there was a lot of money left in the salaries portion of our, of our budget. So the comptroller made some adjustments to pay different things from the salaries, right? So that, that made that overtime budget from 1.7 go down a little bit, right? So truly, when you look at it, and, you know, a lot of, and I don't expect everyone, you know, to, to understand our numbers all the time, right? You guys have a lot of numbers to look at, but when you're looking at 1.7 million, right, and then you compare it to that 914,000 where our budget currently is, I think that number comes up to like 7...
Can you give me that number again, that you said you used in overtime?
It was like 1.7 something million.
In overtime?
Yeah.
In overtime, yeah. Yeah, and, and the reason why you know that is we, we keep track of every dollar spent, Janet Lucas does, the confidential secretary at the police department, and every time overtime comes in, it gets documented, and we also categorize it. Okay, so 1.7 million dollars in overtime, okay? And that overtime includes all types of things, and I can go over what that includes, but just, you know, so we can talk about the, the difference in that 1.7 and the 914,000, that comes up to like 780 something thousand dollars, right? So if we have 914,000 budgeted, we spent 1.7 million last year, there's a gap of 780 something thousand dollars that we now have to make adjustments on. And that's why, I know Councilman Sob asked this question, so that's why we had to maneuver and move officers from certain assignments to the road, because we anticipate our overtime being the same, our, even though we have hired recently, they're in the academy, then they have to go through FTO, so they don't count as manpower until they complete all those training days, right? And then we do have three more people to offer jobs to, but they also have to go through all their training. So we anticipate that overtime is gonna be, it's gonna be high again, right? We have, you know, we also noticed that, that we are under budgeted for some positions, like this...
So Chief, do you know what it was before the overtime? 989,000?
No, no, that's what we budgeted for, it was like, it was less than that before.
No, 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 I know that, what I'm saying is...
So what do you mean?
What I'm saying is what, what the comptroller and, and the chief of staff and the administration presented to the council.
Yeah.
We didn't know that you guys asked 1.7.
Yeah.
They brought us 989,000.
All right.
And we said, sure, like, can you give us 75,000? We didn't know you needed 1.7 and you spent it less, didn't even tell us what you spent less.
So another part, another part of that was the fact that, and I know this is a touchy subject here, but is the fact that, you know, we lost our, we now lost our civilian positions, right?
You didn't lose them, you just come back before.
So, so we don't have them right now, okay? So what we had to do is, once we, we did lose them, maybe we get them back, but, you know, we, we temporarily hopefully lost them, right, just temporarily. So what we have to do is cover their work with sworn officer work, right? So a lieutenant with overtime, I think, you know, the public, public information, a lieutenant with overtime makes almost $200,000, right? That lieutenant making $200,000 is gonna sit and do FOIA's clerical work that our FOIA coordinator did for $65,000. So that $200,000 lieutenant could be out there fighting crime, administrating police department policy and procedure, doing great things for the community, but instead, he's gonna be relegated to a, you know, eight by 10 office doing FOIA for $200,000 a year. That's a really expensive FOIA coordinator, and that's where we're at right now.
And I agree with you, Chief.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Look, I, I know you and I had a good conversation, we're gonna work things out.
Yeah.
And, and I believe, Councilman, we said to set the meeting, bring it before us, I don't think anybody here wants to pay a FOIA coordinator $100,000, like you're saying, like you said, it's common sense to pay somebody 55,000 or 65,000.
Yeah.
But all we want to remember is, right proper policy and procedures to just bring it before us. And maybe they felt like, hey, we had this extra money, so we used it there to save money, and I get, I love that. That, that, see like, right there, and I'm trying to explain to Councilman Sob, that is your role to make, that is not our role to make, but if you want to implement these extra additional employees, you'll have to come before the council.
Okay, so, so when we talk about, talk about last year's, the way they did the budget with the 103, the 103.5 full-time equivalents, you know, so that's salaries, right? And, you know, when the budget was made, and I know what you're gonna say, but I just want to explain to you, you know, what, what I think the thinking was when that was done, is they placed those positions in the budget, right? The salary amount was available, right? And then you guys approved it in the 23, 24 budget, so, and also, those positions were hired through civil service, and our other unions, I don't know if anyone's in here from, from those unions, but they actually benefited from those hires, because they got, I think they got another superintendent, and they also got clerk threes, and they also got additional clerks in, in certain areas of the city. So it was good faith bargaining, it was done under para, right? And, you know, which means that that in itself is good, right? It's good faith, right? Civil service process, everyone tested, they took tests, they did interviews, then they got hired, so the process was done. So I guess if we can, you know, bring those back in, in front of you, and hopefully get those approved, I think that would be, I think, a good step forward for everybody. Yeah, and...
That's all we ask for, by the way.
I understand that you guys have a job to do, but I also understand that some of our positions, the civilian ones, help us keep sworn officers on our road, which means we're not pulling back school resource officers, we're not pulling back the DEA guy who helps us stop, you know, people from overdosing in our city, meaning we're, we're arresting the bad guys and bringing the, the fentanyl dealer to jail. And it's important for us to not only have our sworn staff, but our civilian staff, if not, and I'll be honest with you, if we can't have civilian staff, and we have to take our sworn staff and put it in the police department, it's gonna be tough.
That's not financially responsible. And, and, you know, to say that we're gonna pay a police officer an additional 100K a year to do that position where we could have paid somebody 55 or 65.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I think, I think everybody here can agree to that. But, but everybody also here, and I think yourself, and after the discussion going ahead, was, you also agree that if you want these positions, you'll come before the council, and we'll say, go out and, okay, sure, you want, you need these positions to make things more effective and efficient for you? Absolutely do it.
Yeah, and I would just, can I, one second, while, just to respond to something that you said at the beginning, Council Chair, we talked about cost recovery efforts.
Yes.
The ticket one is not a cost recovery effort, right? So, so writing a ticket to somebody is just enforcement actions, right? The court ends up giving them fines and whatnot. We don't please for, for those fines, we, we please to make things safe, right? The court will then take that money and pay their salary, you know, get, you know, send money to the state, but then money goes to the general fund, that's all on the court. But cost recovery for the police department means some things like, you know, if we can get an ordinance to, to do tow administration fees, where we can charge people, you know, they're in our city, they caused an accident, we tow their car, they take up our time, we can recover money and get, get some of that money back, so we can put, dump it back in the general fund and eventually put it back into salaries or programs. Another thing would be, and I know there's some, some talk about trash day parking and possible resolutions and a way we can fix that, but another thing would be, you know, we're gonna come and, and ask this, the body here, if we can have some of our cadets, our civilians, write trash day parking tickets, so we can clean up our city and make sure that people are abiding by, you know, the laws and the rules. Well, those fines would go to, to the court, but there's also a cost recover there too, these, you know, people are, are bringing us to an area where they shouldn't be creating a nuisance, a public nuisance, and our, our cadets will, will get, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll go back to the general fund, and they'll get paid, you know, a salary to, to go out and write these tickets, but the city will, will benefit from that as well, okay?
Hey, Chief, I, I believe in, in your future here, and I think you're gonna do great things, I mean, I love that, you know, cost recovery, I love the fact that you want to get our cadets in here, get them more involved, getting our community more involved, I love that idea, really. And I think, again, those extra money, like you said, will now be able to make it easier for having, covering that 75,000 for overtime, covering to make sure that you have those FOIA coordinator and crime analyst and things of that nature.
Okay, and I would add, I'm, go ahead.
Okay, so Council Chair, I mean, I want to make a motion right now to amend the budget, police officers' budget, to reinstate the FOIA coordinator, logistics coordinator, and the crime analyst coordinator, because you, like, like you, I got several calls about the, the school resource officers, and what the chief just said makes sense. These positions were positions already budgeted for previous years, and they were held by union members in the police department, but if we hire these as civilian positions, the police union cannot represent them, but I talked to the president of the TPOM, and he said they'd be glad to represent these people as union positions.
That understands, you want to give the union positions these positions?
Yeah, these positions, these civil, these civilian positions for FOIA coordinator, logistics coordinator, and crime analyst.
Council, first of all, we have, we have a motion on the table, second of all, I'm gonna let the chief do his role in, in determining these things, and if he wants to have those positions to be union or whatnot, he can bring that to the next meeting, we can talk on by the 23rd.
They were, they were bargaining under para as a non-union position.
Yeah, that's, that's different, I mean, I'm saying get these positions back on the budget.
Let's give them to the next meeting. Again, I've had this conversation with him where I said, he said, hey, Mo, I need these, and I said, I believe the council wants to give them to you as well. However he goes about it, let's bring it to the next meeting.
These were all union positions in the past.
No, yeah, in the past.
Yeah, they were all in the past.
Chief, can you...
I mean, they're police officers.
Yeah, they're, they're represented by the POM.
Yeah, they're police officers, police union positions, and we worked out with the police union that they didn't want them anymore. So we, we bargained with the police union, and that's another place where they said we could have our civilian staff.
Carrie was one of them, she was one of them, and she, she retired.
She just re, Hatton? Yeah, she just recently retired, June 5th.
Yeah, she was one of the elderly positions.
No, she didn't, she didn't have that position.
I thought she was the analyst?
No, she was not, no, she was not an analyst.
What was she, the...
I think a crime prevention, maybe?
Guys, we're going back and forth, we're gonna, we're a fresh start right now.
Yeah.
I mean, do you want these three positions back?
They gotta come for council approval.
Do you want, do you want these?
I do.
Okay, can you bring some to us at the next meeting, requesting it?
I think that, I think there's a plan for that already.
Chief, we, we can have that discussion as well.
Yeah. Can I ask one question to Councilman Sob, maybe? In regards to some of these oversight matters, right? You know, I noticed that, you know, like FD is not, you know, going through the same thing that we're going through, and then the DPW, and, you know, everyone else, we're the only ones, right? So I would ask that maybe that this, we reconsider this particular motion, and we can sit down and we can have a conversation, you and I and others, and we can go through and see, because I understand what the expectations are in regards to money and spending money and whatnot, and I don't think I have a track record of spending money that, that shouldn't have been spent. As a matter of fact, I got denied many, 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 many times on, on something I really wanted to do, and I didn't go out and, and find a way to spend that money, I took it like a man, and I think I'm gonna run the police department the same type of way, so I was just wondering if this is something when we can explore further to make sure that we do it, we do it right and responsible, and we have the right information before we, we go forward.
So Chief.
Yes, sir.
With respect to you, this was not put 36 hours ago, I put this, the day the notice came out with all the stuff, the false information that was presented to the public.
Okay.
That's why I put this out. I have no problem tabling this until we can talk and sit, but a few things I wanted to just clarify with you, knowing you were here, during the last budget meeting we had, and we're working out numbers for the police department, did you folks know that your numbers were completely off, from lieutenants to sergeants to patrol officers, everything was completely off?
See, I know, I know my numbers, and, you know, I was sitting, I was sitting in the back, I actually didn't do the budget session, but with that being said, we supplied HR with numbers, I actually put way more numbers than, than we actually, because we have a strategic plan of how many people we're gonna put certain places. So when I heard those numbers last week, I was sort of, I was like, eight dispatchers? We already have 10 and a half, you know what I mean? We already have 10 and a half, you know what I mean? So I mean, I know, I'm acknowledging that those numbers weren't accurate, and I do know that we have like 20, we have 20 supervisors. We have...
No, 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 not the supervisors. What with us is you folks had 12 sergeants when the department...
That's what I was gonna add, officers.
Yeah, no, it was...
I think someone was confused when they put those numbers down, because we do have 12 sergeants in patrol, right? But we have additional sergeants that they didn't include, because we have sergeants in the detective bureau, we have a training sergeant, we have a sergeant on leave, medical leave. So those other things weren't, they just weren't, someone didn't add them, right? And it's not from being non-transparent, because I'll tell you, everyone in our department right now, but it was just a matter of, it must've been a record-keeping thing, it didn't come from me, because my, my plan was a lot bigger than what you guys got.
Chief, what I think needs to happen, Councilman, I think you should table this, you should call the chief.
I will.
I had a good conversation with him, I think you'll have a good conversation, you'll give his idea and his vision.
That's not a problem at all. But my thing is, is that, again, I asked on the record about the dispatchers. We had 13, but she settled for eight, and I asked, and you guys said you were fully staffed.
There was nobody here, it was the chief's staff.
The chief's staff, they said they was fully staffed.
We're not fully staffed, so, yeah, so their contract is, their contract is 13, and we currently have 10, and they allow, in their contract, they allow part-time, so we have 10 plus a part-time. We do have a bunch of applications, so we will be fully staffed within a month or so. I know Cameron Egley's doing a great job in his new position, so I think we can, we can fill that, fill that pretty quickly if we had the proper, you know, authority and approval to do so, you know, from you guys.
Just one more thing about, because of this resolution. You stated that at the budget meeting that I had some email that I didn't want to hire public safety officials. Would you make that email public?
That's correct. So, you know, the email's not gonna be made public, obviously, because of reasons, but I, you know, will tell you exactly what the circumstances behind this email is.
Because I don't have no record of this email.
All right. And I can't tell, I honestly couldn't tell you if what this person says is true or not, but what I can tell you, police work...
So did this email come from me or a person said that?
No, it came from, and I even, if you look at that video, it doesn't say it came from you. It said, "I have an email," okay, that hiring was stopped due to Councilman Sob. So that email I got from the HR director, not the current one, okay, stating that she received email from you, which talked about pausing, because I wanted more bodies, I wanted to hire more police officers. And she says she couldn't do it because she had information from you stating that it was inappropriate to continue with the hiring process while we're going through budgeting issues.
So just for Mr. Cooper, is there anywhere you can pull up this email by any chance or make it public? Because it doesn't exist, I don't have such email.
Why do you want the council?
I'm gonna table this resolution.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sit with you, I just wanna see this email that I never sent.
I think this email, whether it is, I have the email, right? So I will personally, I think that that email is subject to, you know, possibly, you know, FOIA exemptions, but since, you know, it involves you, I will personally show you the email, right? Since it has your name in it, but I think that there's exemptions there that would protect that email from...
Make it public, I'm okay with it.
Guys, come on, come on, we're way over, it's 10:33. We are tabling this, Madam Chair, Chief, you can stay up there, because I believe Councilman Sob's got another resolution over here.
Yeah, I'm gonna table this to the next meeting, and I'll make any adjustments that needs to be made.
Thank you.
Able to the next meeting?
Yep.
Well, let's just table it right now, if he wants to bring it back, he would reach out.
I'll bring it back.
If he needs me, he'll send me an email. So do we have to make any votes on this or not?
We're gonna amend it?
Yeah, amend the motion to...
And then second that, and then you're gonna have to vote on it.
But do we have to also make the record that Councilwoman Menelowski left?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Just note it, just let us know, 10:30.
10:30, thank you. So, motion to amend was, Councilman Sob, will you amend your motion to table this?
I do.
Councilman Ahmad, you second that? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 11E, Councilman Sob, resolution regarding GPS installation request requirements for city vehicles.
Council Chair?
Go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve a resolution regarding GPS installation requirement for city vehicles. GPS installation requirement, all vehicles owned by the city that are taken home by any city employee or elected official must be equipped with GPS devices. To implement this, the timeline is to mandate, this mandate must be completed within 45 days of this resolution. Any city-owned vehicle not equipped with GPS by this deadline shall not be taken home unless the installation is completed. A mileage log is required, a detailed mileage log is required for each vehicle, including the start and end mileage, must be maintained and made available every two weeks for review. Compliance, all departments are required to comply with this resolution, ensuring that GPS devices are installed and mileage logs are accurately kept and submitted in time. Upon this resolution, the clerk is requested to certify and sign all necessary paperwork and submit the appropriate departments for implementation as outlined in 11E.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on this?
Yes, Council...
I'll give you the table on this.
Council Chair, so I know, I believe Officer Brian Sneer was talking about this. This does not include undercover vehicles or officers that drive undercover vehicles take home on business. This is all directors in the city, by everybody that takes a car home from any department. Every other city has GPSs on their vehicles, and when all of these vehicles are, what they're being used for. This is not an, this is not like based on one person or one individual or one department, this is across the city. For example, Mr. Cooper just bought a vehicle, that should have GPS, and that vehicle should have a logo on it also, just like any other vehicle should be taken home. And this should be implemented across the city. It's more of a, you know, accountability, transparency, and...
Councilman, can we add to this, to removing any under, any detective, or undercover, I'm sorry, any vehicles that are associated with our undercover police officers?
Yes.
Thank you.
We can amend this to add any, any police officer that is taking this home for work or undercover units, or anyone that belongs to any task force that takes a car, or our K-9 officer, for example, has a vehicle that goes home.
Does that work for you, Chief?
Yeah, so I wanna make sure that we covered everybody. So anyone who takes a car home, usually, it's either administration, or it is, you know, like some of our, I can't point to certain people because, but it's certain people that are in the police department that, you know, work, you know, undercover or something, okay? Currently, you know, whether, the way our department currently operates is, is all hands on deck, right? You know, if there's a shooting, there's a home invasion or something, you know, the chief of police, I'm out there doing surveillance, right? As a director, because obviously I haven't done it in the 36 hours I've been here. But I did on Saturday night, drive around the city, I came in and worked from 9:00 PM to 3:00, 3:00 AM to get the temperature of the city, and everything was good, and I think everyone was happy to see me out there. But with that being said, I am an active member of the police department, meaning I do police work, and I think our guys appreciate that. I assist with these, these other types of events like surveillance and whatnot. So I just wanna make sure that we make sure that everyone who needs to be excluded from that is, and I don't know exactly what I just heard, but I just wanna make sure that that's covered.
Your exempt from that.
Hang on.
I just wanna make sure that I heard that correctly.
Well, hang on, I have a question, and I appreciate you doing, you know, being all hands on deck and everything with that, Chief. But I know chiefs also that take vehicles home. My brother-in-law's homeland security, my brother-in-law's brother, under sheriff, they take cars home as vehicles as well, but they're also, mileages are tracked, and their vehicle also has a tracker on them. And I don't think it's like, I don't think anybody on the city council or anybody's gonna come hack, you know, the police chief's vehicle to see where he's going, and I don't think anybody on the city council should have the authority to see where you're going, but if they needed to be, if one may FOIA'd, to say like, let's just say there's a rumor out there that Moby Doom, I gotta say, is the police chief, and he's hanging out in Sterling Heights, I think that was the example that I gave you.
Yeah.
When we talked. And let's just say Moby Doom was work hour, was at the bar, and somebody said they seen him getting drunk, and Moby Doom said, "No, I wasn't there." Well, you can FOIA that to see if Moby Doom was really there or not.
Right. So I guess I would, I would sort of give you the same example you gave earlier with BSNA, is we're responsible for our own actions, right? So if I go to Target and I steal something, you know what I mean, I'm held responsible. If I go to Sterling Heights and drink beer in my work car, I'm held responsible. So I think we're, I think we're on the same page here, right?
But BSNA can tell you who edited that.
But let me also, you know, explain something, let me also explain something, is in, in police work, you know, contrary to what, you know, I've heard from council, I know there's a lot of stuff back and forth back in the day, I'm not going, I'm not gonna go there, but we, police officers do, especially high integrity with ethics and morals, we do investigate other police officers. So let's say we have people in our own department, they have access to logging into the GPS system, but let's say I have to investigate them, or guess what? Maybe they have to investigate me, right? So therefore, if we have GPS on our cars, I know who's been around me, I know, you know, who's been around them.
You know what, you got me sold.
Yeah. And I'm not, and I'm not trying to hide anything, you know what I mean? Like, you can follow me around all you want.
You don't become the police chief overnight in a great city like Dearborn Heights if you don't have...
This is, Council Chair, this is not directed at the police chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was asking the question, I was asking.
You know, I think a lot of this is, we wanted to clear up some things, because our officers are nervous about it, because that's how we are as police officers. We ask a lot of questions and we need answers, right? And I appreciate you clarifying that for us.
Every city has GPS devices, logos, if you're not a police officer, although you work for the department, your car should have a city logo on it. It's plain and simple. And GPS...
Sterling Heights has that, we have that when Pollock was in office, Mayor Bill Bazey put in that resolution.
Yeah, and it's still, it's still, it's still active.
Very much.
Yeah, it's still, the city seal still has to go on all these cars, and we're not, we're not changing anything from the past.
So just to make clarification, Chief, this has nothing to do with you.
So I don't have to stand here. But one thing I would, would say, I don't know if it would make it better for, for, you know, like Officer, I'm sorry, Union President Sneer, you know how they are with their grievances, right? So, and that's a, that's a joke, but maybe since we're coming back on the other one, maybe we have a conversation with him just so he, you know, it's clarified exactly what isn't, isn't concerning with, with that resolution, since we're gonna do it anyways?
I clearly said, and I added on there, that this exempts any undercover officers using vehicles.
Okay.
Or on any unit or task force. This is not, this is not, this is not a police...
Are you talking about like the clerk, the treasurer?
Clerk, any director that's not a police officer, and I mean no offense to the director here, it's a police vehicle that goes, or the clerk takes a car, or the treasurer takes a car, it's just, it's, it's publicly owned vehicles.
Okay.
We should know where they're at, or if anything happens. It's just a standard that we set, and I mean, it's, I'm not saying anybody violated anything. It's, your police vehicles have GPS, right? The, currently, are all police vehicles have GPS, right?
We got denied for our GPS through, through this body a few months ago. I'll put them forward.
No, no, the GPS you put were license plates.
So we have, we have access to some, some GPS through Clemis, but we don't have access to it ourselves for investigation, that's correct.
But, like, you know, all our DPW trucks that they have, this includes everything. This is not the resolution for the police department or the police department administration.
And I thought it was, because I was told to stay up here, so I just wanted to clarify.
No. No, because the comment that was made earlier, that's it.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
Um, this, this data about tracking, who would keep track of it?
So there's, Council Chair, I actually...
I would assume IT.
Yeah, so, yeah, so actually, no, the GP, there's, there's companies out there, for example Verizon, or whoever, whoever monitors them actually keeps everything on a cloud. And if ever the information's requested, it's, there's an audit of who requests it, who looks into it, or any, stuff like that. This is not something that you can log in and just say, here, I wanna look at what...
It's gonna be a third party, it's, there's nothing in, no finances in this resolution.
Right, but this is something they gotta bring back with cost and everything, to us to prove it.
So that's something you have to look at.
So this is pretty much with the IT department then?
Yeah.
Council Chair, also, the...
Hold on, he's coming up, so I think, Chief, you're all set, thank you.
The...
Chief, this said again, this wasn't for you.
City logos on its cars, I tried, I seen some of the cars that are owned by the city, they're supposed to have the city logo on them. I couldn't find it, but it was in the back window, little tiny thing.
That's the mayor's car.
No, I, but anyway, shouldn't they be specified that they're on the side of the vehicle?
Yes.
I mean, because what's the sense of having something you have to look for? I mean, it's to show that this is a city vehicle. We gotta amend, amend that.
I agree, that ordinance. I've got no problem with this, I just wanna say, but my one, I'll say my one issue, that 45 days is a pretty tight schedule. I came from a school district, and we, it took about six months to put them on buses, because we vetted the process, we actually got vendors to give us some so we could test them out. So all I would, all I would ask is, can you stretch out that 45 days?
90 days?
A little bit there. I gotta, you know, gotta contact the vendors, because, again, we're a government entity, I've gotta make sure that that data is securely protected.
Thank you.
So, to, just to make sure, we are amending this motion to make sure that no police vehicles on the undercover task force, vehicles are to be tracked, this, and then, I guess, request IT director to find us something in 90 days with cost. Do you, do you want them installed in 90 days, or I just try to find a solution? I want a solution and cost in 90 days. Thank you, thank you.
Fair. How long does it take to install them?
Again, it's usually a company that comes and installs that kind of stuff, but again, it took me six months to go through the whole, full, full of that process and get them installed on buses, so...
Is it, is it something you hook up electronically, or is it a magnet you stick underneath the car?
They do have those, but those aren't the ones I would, I would go and, you know...
But it's something, is it elaborate setup, there's the...
It's usually installed in discreet locations in the car so that someone can't try to get into it and disable it.
I mean, is it like, for one car, does it take 10 minutes or two hours?
I didn't do the installation, we had the, we had the vendor do it. Yeah, guys, come on, let's wrap this one up. Any other discussion on this?
Oh, Council Chair, just to make sure, it's excluding police officer task force undercover in K-9 vehicles?
And, and police chief.
And police chief.
And then, number two, we're gonna change that to 90 days.
Correct. And, and...
Council Chair, do you want it to say on or about 90 days?
Sure.
Just give them 90 days, guys, give them the three months. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Councilman. All right, next up, we have Chief of Staff, Hernandez City Engineer, Deib Ban, authorizing resolution for drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF. This guy's been, has been waiting all day. Is this daughter, is that your daughter?
It is.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we are sorry, but read the resolution first, Councilman. One of you guys, Councilman Constant.
Okay, Council Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the resolution for, for the drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF project as outlined in 11-F.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Pat, you wanna give us a quick synopsis, and I don't want you to be too long, I feel bad, I'm sorry to your daughter for being here with you.
I will give a quick synopsis.
You better be buying your dinner and giving her extra $100.
Very good, just...
So a couple hours ago, you approved the bid for the lead service line replacements. This is actually the resolution for the financing, so the earlier action items were the bid. So this is actually the last resolution for council related to the drinking water program. So this essentially authorizes the $13,805,000 loan from the state, which is paying for the lead service lines. Now of that 13,805, 51% is gonna be a loan and 49% is gonna be forgiven. Councilman Wensel, you asked a couple months ago, how do we know the state's gonna really forgive it? The answer is that when the city signs the purchase contract...
Is it 49 or 50? Pat, 49 or 50%?
So the loan will be 51% and forgiveness is 49.
So we're not even getting 50%?
You're not.
You see, you witnessed that.
Did I say 50? I apologize. My letter says 49, so...
You've been saying you, you and Ali Deib and Ba...
Hold, hold, no, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on.
No, the grant is fifty percent, grant fifty percent other funds. This particular loan is forty-nine percent forgiveness. So we got three different funding sources.
First time I hear forty-nine.
It is the first time you heard forty-nine.
Did you finish that, that your statement you were making?
Yeah, so Councilman Wensel, you had asked, how do we know it's really gonna be forgiven? The answer is that when the city signs the purchase contract committing to borrowing the money, it's gonna have the schedule that shows the amount that is being forgiven. So that's written right into the purchase contract.
Like an amortization, like an amortization, uh, schedule?
Exactly, yes. Yes. So, so basically, this is a resolution to authorize the full amount of thirteen eight oh five, of which the city is responsible for paying back fifty-one percent. Over forty years, we stretched it to the longest maturity allowed at two percent per year. So this is essentially paying for the lead service lines. Just going back a second, the other projects that you approved, the water main and the water meters are being funded from the state grants and city grants and things. And those are the ones that are fifty percent. So this-
Thank you so much. All right. I want, I want your daughter to go home.
Okay. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Two percent over fifty years, that's a hundred percent?
No, no, two percent interest over forty years.
Over forty years, so that's eighty percent interest, eighty percent.
No, no, it's not. It doesn't work out that way.
Two percent a year?
Two percent on what's unpaid principal.
Oh, unpaid principal.
Yeah, so it ends up being about two hundred eighty thousand dollars a year, is what that works out to.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations to your daughter. I am so, so sorry, Pat. Thank you for everything. All right. Next up, we have business license renewal for Go-To Motors, Motor City LLC.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wensel.
Uh, Councilman Constan. I'm sorry, guys, it's late.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Go-To Motor City LLC at two nine five five South Beach Daily as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this?
Uh, Council Chair?
Councilman Wensel.
Um, we, this, this came before us before. And, I mean, we turned it down before. What's, what's changed since we turned it down last?
Did they pay their taxes?
Council Chair, it wasn't their taxes. It was ordinance, and I got a phone call from Ordinance Officer Bunker that it, whatever it was, was resolved. So that's why we put it back on.
Yeah, I went by there and it's, they're still, they're, they're double parking their cars. I mean, it's, it's-
You know what? Director Dishum's on, I don't know if he-
Is he? Okay.
Well, I mean, if Councilman's saying that, and they're still double parking.
I'm gonna take the Councilman's word.
What's it cost?
Huh? I mean, yeah, like, well, guys, the motion on here-
The Director Dishum's on here now. I mean, this, you know, this is a touchy subject to me and the residents. They live, they live by here, there. I mean-
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilman.
Let, let me rephrase the motion. Or let me move to, uh, table the motion pending information from ordinance and Councilman Wensel as far as compliance with our city codes and ordinances.
Because it's eleven o'clock.
Dr. Dishum, is he still on?
Yeah. Yes, he's on there.
I mean, I'm seeing bubbles now.
Council Chair can hear it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dishum.
Uh, the issues that we had were resolved. I'm unaware of what Councilman Wensel is referring to. Yes, there's probably times when you go by there and they might be parked inappropriately, but I haven't observed any of that recently. So I'm not exactly sure what Councilman Wensel is referring to. What were the issues that, that caused us not to, uh, do this last time? Uh, there was an issue with the building, but that is not something that the occupant is responsible for. So we're gonna work with the owner of the building to resolve that issue.
I think we should table this until that issue's resolved. The issues have not been resolved.
Stopping the business owner, though, from operating that has always been licensed. If, 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 let's just say I bought a business, right, and the landlord's failing to comply, why am I, why am I losing money?
Well, you know, he should, he should force the landlord to fix it. What happens if it's something that's dangerous?
Well, that's what Mr. Dishum is supposed to be doing. Like, that's not our role.
Well, he's saying that's, that's-
Is it dangerous, Mr. Dishum?
Uh, for that opinion, I would defer that or refer that to, uh, Rick Watland, the Director of, uh, the Building Department.
Is Rick on?
He is.
He is.
He's on too.
Ricky?
Let me, let me find it.
Rick Building, right there. He's probably, he's probably sleeping.
Council Chair, Director Watland, Building Director Watland is, is our, our pit master for Family Field Day Saturday. He'll be doing all the grilling.
He's, he's-
I'm worried he's grilling too late now. I might not be able to cook today.
I want you to know, I, I swear, I appreciate Mr. Watland so much. He does such a good job, and he is truly a good asset to the city of Dearborn Heights. Go ahead, Director.
So, over here, the problem is, is the screen wall, it's been there for thirty years. The man did not know that he owned five feet of the back alley. So when ordinance rolled up for the weeds and stuff, he did not know that he owned it. So it would cost him about ninety thousand dollars to move the wall back five feet. Now that he knows that he has to clean the weeds up, he is cleaning the weeds. So it is not a safety issue or anything.
Thank you, Director.
Council Chair? What's the cross street for this?
What's the co, well, South Beach Daily, it's two nine five five South Beach Daily would be- Between, between Michigan and Vanmore. Yeah.
I'm trying, I, I know the one near Andover and Colgate, but that's not its name.
I'll take it to a vote.
Let's take it to a vote.
Okay. Director, are you okay with this? Are you saying?
Yes.
So I, I move that the City Council approve the business license. All right, motion made by Councilman, uh, Constan, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Moby Doan?
Yes.
Tim Wensel?
No.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, thirteen B temporary food truck tent cart license application, Juicer Connect LLC.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck tent cart license application for Juicers Connect LLC as outlined in thirteen B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Yes.
I thought we had a moratorium on food trucks.
We don't.
No, we don't.
We don't?
No. We definitely don't.
What do we, uh, don't we have a limit on the amount of food trucks we have, the licenses to?
No, we're waiting on, uh-
They sell temporary licenses, Councilman, so this, it's not forever, every six months.
Does they, I mean, I didn't look at their backup. Do they have a spot they want to park at?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
I believe it was on, I seen it was on Gully and Warren. This is not a, uh, Council Chair, just a, or Council, uh, Councilman Wensel. This is actually, I think, a first in our city. It's not a food truck.
It's a juice, uh-
It's a juice, fresh juice and, uh-
Isn't it a temporary trailer vehicle?
Guys, it's, it's, it's not a food truck, it's a juice truck.
Well, that's a food truck.
They're selling fresh juices, so there's no grease, there's no dumping.
But I mean, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna state how I feel about food trucks not paying property taxes, taking business away. I mean, I'm opposed to them, you know, only on special occasions, maybe for carnival or something, or festival. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this ahead of time.
That's fine.
Next up, uh, the motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by, I'm sorry, is there any other discussion on that?
No.
Forgive me. Any other discussion? Uh, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, ma'am clerk, please take roll call.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Tim Wensel?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
And Moby Doan?
Yes.
Motion carries five more.
Next up is thirteen C temporary food truck cart license application for Tish Chai LLC.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck tent cart license application for Tish Chai LLC as outlined in thirteen dash C.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? I will tell you, our very good friend, Greenland, not Greenland Market, Greenland?
Yeah.
Is a good man to this community. He contacted me and said, you know, my parking lot, this is, now I'm talking to you guys and as an owner of Brick and Motor, an owner of, of, of a successful business, said, I would love to be able to have a food truck in my parking lot. I've been watching the city council meetings. I see some of your council members have been opposing it. This guy's selling tea. He's gonna sell different types of tea, herbal teas, and he said, if, if it all works out for this gentleman, he's actually gonna take that food truck, sell it, and then open up inside of his market. So, but it's a trial and error. And so he asked me to specifically kind of advocate for this. So I asked his body to give us a shop. It's, it's simply tea. We don't have any tea stores other than Starbucks. Uh, well, it's not even, it's a coffee shop, but it's a tea shop. So they're not selling coffees, they're selling chai tea. Uh, so motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman-
Council Chair?
Greenland, uh, right there on Fort North of Meade State.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Have you ever been in that parking lot during business hours?
It's busy.
There's no parking spots in there. It plays a jam pack all the time, because Greenland is such a popular place. When I go there, or if I go to Todd's Pharmacy, something right in there, you can't find a parking spot there.
I mean, unless if you park right on, I mean, to others, like the south side- If you're parking by the dance store, I believe that's where it's at. By the donut shop. I live right around the block of-
Well-
Again, you're, you're right, that these are serious concerns, but you know, the-
The thing is, this is something that Director Watland made approval for. So like, I mean, he and his team have went out there, they've inspected, they've collected a bond. And there's a resolution that says that we allow temporary food truck tent cart licenses.
I know, but he's just doing his job. Because if he didn't, he would, you know, be open for legal action.
Council Chair, who the Council Chair just, you know, we're waiting on this ordinance to be finalized, it's run in front of us, so limit and taxes and everything else we could do. It's just a waiting game.
What's the temp, what's the temporary time? How, how long's temporary?
They do a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days?
Yeah. And you know, you wanna know another fact, Councilman? Almost half of them that come to our city do either, don't finish the hundred and eighty days or don't renew after that hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, that's another point. Now, what's wrong with that? That's true. What was the show yet there?
They're not successful. But I mean, it's a risk. They're risk takers. Still, we're making money, I mean, applications.
Council Chair, I mean, have we scheduled a study session to go over the ordinance?
Yep, yep. Well, we will have that in July. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Councilman, are you all done?
Yes, I am.
All right. Take this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Ma'am clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Tim Wensel?
No.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Moby Doan?
Yeah.
Motion carries five more.
Council Chair? Councilman Wensel, no, it wasn't like, I don't know, it wasn't from the heart.
I'm, I'm a beaten down man.
You're a good man. Next up, we have members of the public, comments from council members. Ask the council members, it is late, just be respectful.
Council Chair?
Go ahead, Council.
I am sorry. Uh, thank you, Council Chair. I'm compelled to address a recent statement made by city administration regarding the departure of Chief of Police Jared Hart. Let me be absolutely clear. The accusations made against the city council are false and unfounded. Throughout Chief Hart's tenure, the city council has consistently supported and worked with the Police Department to ensure public safety and uphold our community's interests. Our commitment to the safety and well-being of our residents has always been our top priority. Any decision regarding the budget were based on necessary adjustment to address any discrepancies in the policy, in the police budget and to maintain fiscal responsibility. These decisions were made transparently, with careful consideration, and in accordance with our city charter. We have always aimed to balance the needs of our police force with the fiscal health of our city, ensuring that our community remains safe while also being mindful of our financial responsibilities. Furthermore, I'm frankly fed up with the ongoing barrage of false accusations directed at the city council. It is time to put an end to this baseless finger pointing. Effective governance requires mutual respect, open communication, and teamwork. Our city administration must acknowledge that governing our city is a collective effort, not a one-person show. We cannot afford to allow misinformation to hinder our progress. The challenges we face as a city can only be overcome through unity and cooperation. I extend my congratulations to Mr. Swop, Chief Swop, on his appointment as the new Chief of Police. I stand ready to support him as he leads the Dearborn Heights Police Department forward. His experience and dedication to public service will undoubtedly be an asset to our community, and we have full confidence in his ability to continue the important work of ensuring the safety and security of our residents. Our community deserves accurate information and transparency from its leaders. We remain committed to working with city administration and all stakeholders to ensure that Dearborn Heights continues to thrive and serve its residents effectively. My vision for Dearborn Heights is one of collaboration, transparency, and progress. I urge all members of our community, including our city officials, to join me in the endeavor. Together, we can build a stronger, safer, and more prosperous Dearborn Heights for all. And after listening to the fire department today presentation, understanding what's currently happening at the fire station, both fire stations, we are beyond frustrated. The administration need to move quickly in finding our firefighters a new home, or make the appropriate repairs for their well-being before we lose the state funding allocated for that, for this purpose. The safety and morale of our firefighters are of utmost importance, and we must ensure they have the safe, safe facilities they need to perform their critical duties effectively. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members?
Council Chair?
Councilman Wensel.
Go briefly, uh, you know, I always want to say something about the family. It was a family fun day, uh, Saturday, July thirteenth at Swopka Park on the south end of Dearborn Heights, fifty-four hundred McKinley Street. It's for Dearborn Heights families, so we encourage, you know, everybody to come out. The police, the police fight, the police and firefighters, baseball games, softball games, it's gonna be really cool. And so, but I just want to urge that this is for Dearborn Heights families. We're gonna kind of limit it to Dearborn Heights families, not, you know, I'm not saying we don't need other people from other cities, but I'd like to keep it in Dearborn Heights. And we were expecting upward of five hundred people there, hopefully. And I talked to the chief, and he's gonna make sure that we have some kind of police representation there during, during the day. I want to say sorry to Maggie for broke her arm skateboarding. She, she, all Facebook posted her skateboarding and, you know, poor thing. And I want to look into, I don't know who to direct this to, but I'd like to reestablish our disability commission. We used to have one, and, and I think it might be mandated by the state. I mean, but I, you know, we've gotta get, we gotta get that back. I, I've talked to several people that are really interested, some that have been on it before, some people that are on it in other cities that have a lot of experience. I'm thinking it's really important, and I'd like to, you know, put this on the agenda for the next meeting to talk, to discuss it.
All right. Thank you. Any other council, Councilman Constan?
Thank you, Council Chair, and just thank you, Councilman Ahmad, for your words. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about positions, but those positions were not against the, the persons holding the positions. There were concern, amongst other things, about following Act seventy-eight civil service and, and compliance with that, and in the hiring of those positions. It was not, nothing personal against any, any individual. I can, I can speak to that. But I really hope, moving forward, we've got a lot of important work to get done, and we, we really need to cooperate and have lively discussion and make a decision and move on.
Any other council members? Any other council members?
Announcement.
Announcements from administration.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
All right, my usual two. The E. Course Creek meeting is the twenty-third at six o'clock, and hopefully by then we'll know whether or not they've reached Dearborn Heights with the ten million dollars they're spending to work on, on the creek area. So we're areas three through seven. Last I heard, they, they were in Allen Park, so we'll have information for you then. And then the following evening at seven PM, both of these locations are at three three, three five, South Beach Daily, the admin building for Westwood. And we will announce your speaker at the next meeting, but please feel free to come to any of our meetings. Thank you.
Madam Treasurer?
Thank you, Council Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'll be really quick, because it's been a really long night. First, just a real quick joke. I've never driven a city car, so I just want to make a note of that.
Just use an example.
Okay. I'm trying to make you smile. It's kind of late. I did want to tell you, back to your eleven D, which was tabled, you know, the charter does provide for you to get a monthly budget to actual report, so you should be getting that. I know we have our new comm controller, not to throw this at you, but it does come under the comm controller, and that would help you keep, keep a check and balance. The last thing I wanted to share is, taxes have been mailed. Everybody should have them. If you haven't received your taxes, summer twenty-four, please contact our office. We have lots of ways to pay. I'm not gonna go over that, because you can find that information on the website under the Treasurers page. But I did want to talk about the tax deferment application for summer taxes. This is, there are qualifiers, and that, this application is found online under the Treasurers page, under the different forms. And it is a fillable form. Thank you to our IT Director, who's not here, but he helped create that. So we have a fillable form, but we also have hard copies at the Treasurers office. And again, you can look at that and see if you, if somebody qualifies, like sixty-two years of age, different disabilities, whatnot. But just take a look at the application and get it into us, so that way we can defer your taxes for summer till February fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I think my taxes have a typo.
Madam Treasurer?
Madam Treasurer, I'm sorry.
Any other announcements from administration? Any other announcements from Administration? Seeing none, we're going to move it over, open it up to public comments. Uh, you have three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
You have one left. Two.
Steve?
My name is Steve Vale. I work, I live on East Pleasant Ridge and Warren Avenue in Dearborn Heights. Um, again, here, I want to keep it in front of everybody's mind in regards to the, uh, various cars that are racing down Warren Avenue. Well, and I'm sure, yes, it is everywhere, uh, most major streets. Um, I did see, of course, uh, the approval for the ten extra or twenty extra cameras. Um, I'm sure that will come in handy once they get up and running and everybody gets trained in them, uh, and used by the Police Department. Um, I would like to, I guess, make a recommendation in regards to once those systems are up and running, that may be a soft procedure, uh, that can be released to the citizens and how best to, or could be used by those that live on these busy roads to maybe utilize this new technique to help out the Police Department, whether it's taking videos on phones or able to call the non-emergency number and give a description of the vehicle. Um, you know, timeframe, description, even if they can give a plate or partial, that would probably help the police out. Uh, and there are further investigations once these cameras get up and running. Um, but it's, uh, we've definitely gotten a step forward. That's great to hear, great to see. Um, this past weekend, uh, activity, uh, did seem to falter a little bit, but, uh, I think that was more due to the holiday. People traveling, not being around. Um, but, uh, like I say, I'll keep coming in and keep putting this in front of your face.
Thanks, Steve. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? Missed you.
Missed you.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street. Um, can you give some explanations about the SRO officers? Are they back?
I've, uh, I can tell you that I had a conversation with, uh, Chief Swope. Um, he did, uh, tell me that him and I are going to work on something, and
Okay.
he said it from his heart. He said, there's no way I would let this school year start without having.
Thank you, Swope, and congratulations.
To the, to our chief.
Thank you.
I didn't want to give that out. I want him to be the one to, to be able to break the news.
It just, like, it just, I heard it. I wasn't sure if it was a rumor. I wanted to do, address it to make sure, so that everybody's on the same page. But like, that was just a dagger to my heart. I'm like, I had conversations with Chief Swope on it. We've worked together, and it's just, it's been amazing, and please just, yeah, no.
I think it's a great program, and I, I don't think, uh, no.
The kids deserve it.
And I'll let him speak on it when that time comes around the fall, so I can tell you, go, you can go to sleep with an open heart.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go to sleep with an open heart, uh, open heart. Our poli-, our police chief has our back. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh, congratulations to Commander Swope on becoming chief. Good luck, and, uh, Godspeed with you. Um, one question I have, as Mary had mentioned, and during the conversation over the fire department. There's two locations. Where exactly are these locations?
You mean the, the new possibility?
New possibilities are where the locations are for the fire station.
We don't, we don't have an answer. We are meeting up with the County Commissioner and the few people from the county to discuss what options are available for the city, because the initial, uh, spot I believe that the mayor wanted was, was a flood place and was not eligible. So, I guess they are, we are to sit in this meeting to propose something. I will tell you that, uh, we, we are all working around the clock on this. Is that meeting open to the public? Uh, it was, I was invited by, by Commissioner Kinesik, I believe. Private meeting, or do you know or not? No, I was invited by Commissioner Kinesik regarding potential positions that could be, or, or locations, but there's nothing that's guaranteed. And I think it's more just hearing from the mayor, like, what, or, or the administration, what are you, what would the, this city want to see, right?
But what is the potential then?
When is the meeting? I, I am, I don't remember from the top of my head, but I can send you the, or you can reach out to the commissioner. I will. Thank you. He's a tough guy to get hold of. Really? Thank you. I am?
So, there's no indication of where these possibly might be?
I, I have not been told any information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it?
Council Chair, you said that one, one of the places was a flood plain. Are you referring to the golf course? No, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was where, uh, the kids play football, Field of Dreams, Field, no, not Field of Dreams, off of Beach Gate.
Uh, old, uh, tennis courts.
All those old tennis courts are flood?
Yeah.
Very low.
Somewhere on Beach.
Anyone else, uh, in the audience? Okay, we have one on Zoom, can, and I asked, I believe Mr. Parrish asked for an additional minute, Madam Clerk. So, I will go ahead and get him there for four minutes.
Hopefully, it won't take that long. Dan Parrish, Dearborn Heights.
I don't even got to tell them. Heaven's over here, they know it.
Yeah. Um, want to say something about, uh, overtime. It's something we, everybody's talked about. Um, there's a couple of errors I want to, I want to point out real quick. Um, the police and fire department budgets were talked about a lot about, uh, hi- having high overtime. Uh, the numbers I looked at on the budget, the police is about twenty-six percent, the fire department's about twenty-one percent. However, the biggest overtime budget compared to the payroll, believe it or not, is building maintenance. There's a thirty-four point five eight percent when you compare it to their payroll. In twenty twenty-three, their salaries were five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Their overtime budget was two hundred thousand dollars. That's thirty-four point five eight percent of their total budget was overtime. I know probably you hadn't looked at it in that, in that regard, and that's what I wanted to do, is bring that up to your attention. Now, there are two building maintenance superintendents in our city. Their sal-, I'm not going to spring any names up. Their salaries are sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Now, that's twenty twenty-three salaries. One of them made one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and three dollars, or a hundred and ninety-nine percent of this person's salary. The second person made a hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, or two hundred and twenty percent of this person's salary. Now, given the overtime budget, which is two hundred and tw- two hundred thousand dollars even, that was a total of, two people made a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in building maintenance overtime pay for two thousand twenty-three. That's sixty-five percent of the department's overtime budget. Sixty-five percent. Now, last month, we got a, a lady, Angie, who I know very well, um, who complained about city properties, talking about the city hall area, veterans area, so forth, being a mess. That's building maintenance. Tonight, we got a prize of our fire stations, which I'm sure everybody was like, what the heck? Uh, building maintenance issues. Two hundred thousand dollar budget, and we've got two supervi-, excuse me, superintendents last year who made sixty-five percent of the overtime budget for that department. Now, either we have one problem, which is not enough employees, or number two, we've got a heck of a problem with mismanagement in that department, or number three, um, we don't know what we're doing to maintain our properties outside and inside, and we're literally endangering our employees' lives. But we need to take a look at building maintenance department and our two building maintenance supervisors, because they're making a lot of money off the backs of our residents. And last thing I wanted to say was regarding my initial, uh, thing that I said earlier, and that was that, um, regarding the, the, uh, June twenty-fourth meeting, uh, Mariana suggested that the numbers, uh, they get together on the numbers. There was actually Special Legal Counsel at one fifty-one oh nine who suggested that they have, uh, a recess and get together with members of the council and, uh, and, uh, other, other people. So, it was not Mariana that suggested that. I looked at the video, uh, three times. So, thank you very much. Everyone, have a good evening, okay?
Dana, for a second, before, before you unmute yourself.
Yes, yes.
It was the both of them. It was him that said, let's go into recess, but early on, she said, can we take a break on this? Can we take a break on this? And so, it was, and I, and I wasn't saying it to correct you. I was saying that it was, that's why I went into it, because she felt like she needed it. She was being overwhelmed. Really, I was, it was being done out of good faith. It was saying, she was sitting up there, she didn't have the information. And I said, let's go through the numbers together, the numbers that we initially gave in the public. And so, she was just putting them in.
Yeah, she did want to go through the numbers. I totally agree with you, sir. I, I just think that the words of, uh, of, uh, going out of the session was, was brought up by Special Counsel. But thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Anytime, anytime.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for always, you know, putting in the check and balances for our city. And thank you to all the residents that stayed in here today with us until eleven-thirty. We still have Tim Emery.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dana. God bless you. Tim?
Okay, this Saturday, the thirteenth, they have the Wooded Warrior Ride down Van Borne between Little Football Rotary sponsors it. And it's going, we're going to be at, uh, in front of Fortis Legion on Van Borne. So, if you can get out, it's a motorcycle ride. They start over at the Motor City Harley Davidson. They have a loop that they do. So, if you can join us, come on out. Go home.
Asking for the appointment time.
Thank, Tim, can you give us the time in, uh, for that?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
Actually, get there a little bit before, just in case it come early.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate you also for all that you do for our great city of Dearborn Heights.
Just another one I do.
All right, guys. Anyone else on Zoom or anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, all of, uh, well, can I get a motion to a chair?
Motion to a chair.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by?
Seconded.
Everybody.
By Councilman Constance. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.